9:00 AM, so why don't we go ahead and get started with the May 22nd, 2024 meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors. I'll turn to the clerk for a roll call.
Certainly Supervisor Konik, friend Hernandez, McPherson, and Chair Cummings.
Here. Second item on our agenda is consideration of late additions, revisions, and deletions for today. I'll turn it over to County Minister of Officer Carlos Placius.
Yes, Chair Cummings and members of the board, we do have several corrections on the regular agenda. Item number seven, there's additional materials. There's a revised attachment E. Page 18, which is replaced. Two sub-points were added to Slide 7. The last bullet point on Slide 7 should read forensic evidence, collections, and analysis successfully employed on 89 of 107 case-related digital devices. Eighty-three percent success rate. On the item number nine, there's additional material. There's a revised attachment F. Pages 48 to 64 is replaced. Corrections to various slides. On the consent agenda, item number 19, there's a revised attachment A. Pages 195 through 215 are replaced. The finalized resolution is included. The new attachment inserted after page 215. That concludes correction to today's agenda.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is moment of silence and pledge of allegiance to any board members who'd like to dedicate today's moment of silence. Seeing none, we will just observe a moment of silence. You all, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, or to the Senate.
Okay, at this time, we will have a general public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address us on items that are not on the board's agenda. Items on consent, and if you wish to speak to an item on our regular agenda, you will not be able to speak when that item is heard, but you're able to speak to it now if you're not able to stay for that item. So with that, I'll invite up the first member of the public here in person. We'll have two minutes.
I don't think this is on the regular agenda. My name, um, thank you for your hard work on all this. My name is Laura Chatham, and I'm a member of the County Mental Health Advisory Board, but I'm speaking for myself here today. I am also a retired math teacher, and I have some numbers for you. I went to visit the main jail a couple of weeks ago with a small group of concerned citizens, the main jail.
That we would also like to see, we would all like to.
Thank, thank you so much. Thank you.
Chair, I'm so sorry to interrupt. We're experiencing a technical difficulty.
Okay.
We would need to pause the meeting for a moment to resolve this.
Okay, well then let's take a quick break until we can resolve this technical issue.
Could I ask if my, if my statement was recorded properly?
We can ask the clerk.
Testing Zoom, is Zoom able to hear testing?
Zoom can hear you.
So much, Chair, we've resolved the issue.
Okay, we can resume public comment for folks who are here in person. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good morning. My name is Julie Missusovic. I'm a licensed psychologist and executive director at Walnut Avenue Family and Women's Center, but more importantly, I'm a mother. I'm also a commissioner on the Justice and Gender Commission. So first, I'd like to express gratitude for the reopening of Blaine Street and designating funding for education and therapeutic opportunities for incarcerated folks. We know from data that the majority of women in jail are survivors of crime themselves, and their trauma has likely contributed to the reason that they're incarcerated. Walnut Avenue provides support groups focused on healthy relationships in Blaine Street, also at the juvenile halls in Monterey and Santa Cruz. The reason we facilitate healthy relationship groups is to break cycles of intergenerational violence, relationship abuse, and the associated trauma. During these groups, the women are talking about their families, their kids, and other relationships, and how important these relationships are to creating a sense of hope, a drive to get out of jail and to stay out of jail. My point is that contact visits with family are crucial for inmate mental health. They're also a driving force for reducing recidivism. My second point is that in my experience of over three decades of working with children who have experienced trauma, including residential facilities for foster youth, I've witnessed all too often the suffering and the multitude of side effects that result from separating a child from their parent. In fact, children who are separated from their parent, that separation and connection can be the determining factor for that child's mental and physical health, as well as their ability to develop the resilience and the self-regulation skills that are needed to keep them out of the same cycle of trauma, crime, and incarceration. If the intended outcomes of incarceration include rehabilitation and real, genuine accountability, and if we want to stop these cycles of violence, mental illness, and intergenerational trauma, and if the end goal is keeping families together in safe and loving environments, we must do everything to reinforce healthy bonds, teach parenting skills, and encourage safe interactions between parents and children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello supervisors, thank you so much for letting us talk. I am Lynn. I'm the Executive Director of Casa of Santa Cruz, and I am also a member of the Justice and Gender Task Force, like my colleague Julie, who so elegantly talked about what I'm here to talk about today, which is the most obvious essential childhood right, and that's the right to run into the arms of your mother when you are hurt and scared. And right now, in our jails, we don't have contact visits. And we know that when kids fall, right, you can all picture this. When a toddler falls, what happens? They look up, they run into their mother's arms, right, or their father, their person, right? They run into them. Sometimes all they need to do is get close to them physically. We are stopping that from happen, happening in our jails. And make no mistake about it, when we unfortunately have to imprison somebody, that is a trauma for the person's child. That is traumatic. And we know, there's bodies and bodies of research, which Julie alluded to, that when children are traumatized, they will have better outcomes for the rest of their life. If they have the right to that thing which comforts them, which is their parents. Yeah, it is touching and hugging and running into the arms of their parents. So when you're thinking about budget issues today, it's a very serious issue in front of you all today. Please, please, let's try to ensure that our children have the most basic thing, which is the right to a hug. Thank you. Thank you for all that you do for our children.
Hi, my name is Mace. I also do volunteer at Blaine Street every week and doing rehabilitation. And I have seen, not one woman has been in my class that has not dealt with some sort of physical, mental, or childhood abuse. All of them are driven to be able to see their families again, to be able to see their children most of all. I've seen such great progress in them having their knitting program, having a rehabilitation program, and they're soaring. From when they came in, they were lost, they were struggling. I had a woman tell me, I'd rather walk the streets of San Francisco than ever be back and walk the streets of Santa Cruz again. The amount of brutality that the women are having, and they're scared and are alone on the streets, and half the time, more than half the time, they're scared to be released because their medications, they won't have their medications, or being able to have their, um, the medication be able to help them with their cravings. And I think that we really need to put more programs into Blaine Street because it is working. What we have is working. And I really know Santa Cruz County really doesn't want to put more money into the jails, and it's really hard. But we have to because we, these, well, these women will be out in the streets and causing more harm to themselves and other people if we don't figure out more programs and getting them more help and being able to connect them with their children. I really appreciate you guys for listening to me. I'm on the Board of Directors, Santa Cruz Community Health. I'm also CRC, and I do neighborhood courts and restorative justice. And I am seeing these programs work, and I'm hoping that we can put more into the budget of helping these women in the jails. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board and staff. My name is Sarah Newkirk, and I'm the Executive Director of the Land Trust of Santa Cruz County and the President of the Campaign for the Water and Wildfire Protection Act. And I'd like to just quickly speak to you on Agenda Item Number 19 on the Consent Agenda. We received notification from the county clerk last night that the signatures that we have submitted in support of advancing the measure to the ballot in November were deemed sufficient. You have that in front of you, and I'm very, very grateful that you have taken or you're about to take the action to call for an election on the measure. I'm also grateful to all five of you for your expressions of personal support for the measure, which will do incredible good in our county, for our community, by helping us do, accomplish projects that will protect from water quality impairment, reduce fire risk, provide for wildlife habitat, and connect our citizens and their children to open spaces throughout Santa Cruz County. I look forward to coming back before you sometime in the future in hopes of having a resolution of support from the whole board in support of the measure. But with that, I just want to thank you for your actions today.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mabel Rodriguez. This is my first time speaking, so I am a member of the IHSS SEIU 2015, and I'm also a preschool teacher. And in both categories, I see that we're required by training, special, you know, to address a high expectation of our performance and knowledge to how to take care of our client. So I'm asking you to please, our contract's coming up, and when you do your budget, you think about us. I've been doing caregiving for 25 years to a non-verbal mentally and physical client. And I need to be CPR trained. Actually, all of us are required CPR training, know how to care for our client, whether it's medication, how to bathe them, how to emergency, how to process their food, all that to enable our client to be, uh, feel like they're just one of the member of society, to feel included, loved, and inclusive. But it's hard for us because Santa Cruz County is the highest, you know, cost of living. And to see someone with all our expectation from us, to see someone, all they have to know how to do is that, you know, that basket of fries in that oil, and they get $20 an hour. We are, with all this expectation, is only getting 1,875. So the temptation of us and need is high for us to leave what we're doing, which we don't want to because we do it because we, we care and we love what we do to make a difference.
Thank you very much.
Hi, um, this is my first time speaking too. My name is Nicole Brantley, and I'm coming to you with lived experience. I want to start by saying next year, or next month, on June 13th, I'll be celebrating nine years of sobriety. I've also dealt with the FCS system and have been in jail and prison. And now I'm currently working at the Parent Center as a parent mentor for other parents that struggle with addiction. And I want to strongly encourage the Board of Supervisors to support contact visits with parents in jail. I know what it's like not being able to see your children. When I was in jail, my daughter was not even two years old, and it killed me not to be able to see her. I wrote her letters every day, hoping that her caregivers would read them to her and that she would know that I was thinking of her. When you're in jail, you don't have a lot else to do, so you're always thinking about what is happening on the outside. Is she sleeping okay? Did she start saying words? Does she know that I love her? So many people that go into jail struggle with addiction. I personally want to help them. But even if we are going to punish them, jail is enough punishment. We don't also need to keep their children from them. My kids were my biggest motivator and are still my motivator today to stay sober and to keep me from going to jail. When you are on the inside, you need things to anchor and motivate you and to connect you to the outside, to remember why you don't want to end up back in jail. Being able to see and hold your kids gives people that reminder and motivates them to get out and stay out. I will close with this. I hope that the Board of Supervisors will do the right thing and ask the Sheriff's Office to bring back contact visits for parents and children. The families in this community deserve it and need it, and I honestly believe that it will be a better change for our community in the long run and have people living an honest and true life and be productive members of society, just like me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Eva Atkins. I am here on behalf of the Parent Center, a nonprofit agency in Santa Cruz that serves families involved with child protective services, including providing family time, visits between parents and children that have been placed in foster care. Our agency's mission is to support reunification of parents and children, as all research demonstrates that children do best when they are with their parents or have strong connections to their parents and families. In line with that ethos, we strongly urge the Board of Supervisors and the Sheriff's Department to again allow parents in jail to have contact visits with their children. For those of you that may not know, prior to 2020, contact visits happened regularly. Our agency even helped to supervise the visits of families that were involved at Child Protective Services. Now, parents, even those who have not been found guilty of a crime, are only able to see their children through a glass wall or through a tablet with inconsistent connection that costs $15 an hour. Those of you that are not, that are parents, we invite you to imagine about what it would be like to not be able to hug, kiss, or smell your babies. Imagine your kiddos not knowing what happened to you or why they weren't able to see you, or when they would see you again. Research shows that keeping families separated is not only detrimental and traumatic for children and families, it is bad for society as a whole. Parents that have contact with their children have more success with reentry when released from jail and are less likely to return to jail, and children who have contact with their parents have better outcomes in nearly every measure. We understand that reinstating contact visits brings challenges. We also understand that this is not impossible. Nearly every county around us allows contact visits, and we have had, and we have had them here in our county prior to 2020. Our Board of Supervisors even approved a bill of rights for children of incarcerated parents in 2019, guaranteeing children the right to speak with, see, and touch their parents. The value of these visits is indisputable, and we all know and feel that it is the right thing to do. We simply need to make it a priority. We think that our children and families are worth prioritizing. Don't you?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Becky Steinbrenner. I scored the last two speakers, and I hope that you all allow parent contact in the jails with their children. I want to speak to you this morning about two items that are amazingly on the consent agenda. The first one is item number 19. These are budget hearings, right? So why is the Board of Supervisors hiding the land trust ballot measure in the consent agenda for your approval today? And as Ms. Newkirk said, the certification wasn't even given until last night. This is wrong. Please take it off this budget hearing, where people may not have even seen it, and put it on the June 4th regular agenda ballot, regular agenda. This is a tax measure that is going to be on the ballot. It is not a budget hearing matter, so please take it off. This is not transparent at all. The next item I want to speak to is item Consent Agenda, item 23, County Fire Budget. County Fire is a public service safety agency, just like the sheriff, like the probation. Why are they being relegated to the consent agenda yet again? Please, next year, please do better and put County Fire Budget on a regular agenda during budget hearings. I really take exception and protest to the very vague information in general that is being presented to the public during these budget hearings. The drill, line item, drill down is nothing like that at all, and nothing like what budget hearings included in terms of information to the public and to you in the past. A pie chart is drill down? I don't think so. Now, there are charts that show very vague expenses, but in the instance of County Fire, there's no allocation of Prop 172 money. None of the public service budgets show Prop 172 public service money. Please, we can do better, and I ask that you give better level of information to the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for your service, Commissioners. My name is Beth Friedman. I'm representing IHSS Service Providers and the SEIU 2015 Union, and just here representing and encouraging you all to consider when you renew our contract, to consider the pay raise that was quoted, like a $20 an hour pay raise. The, the health benefits are really wonderful, and I'm a particular proponent of keeping those, very grateful for those. Of course, cost of living is something that people have addressed with Santa Cruz, but I want to speak to something, I've spoken to this before, is about retention. I have been doing this caregiving. I've been in Santa Cruz for 20 years. I've been caregiving for five. And I have been with the same client for that time, but I've seen everyone else come and go, and sometimes very quickly. And it's actually a stressor on people who already have, like, their nervous systems are often in fight or flight. They, they need, like, to be supported and for their own, like, self-healing. That's kind of one of the areas of expertise, because I also teach qigong. And I just see the stress of having to always hire new people because the retention issue with the pay is, you know, not sufficient for a lot of people. So I'd like you to consider this when you look at our contract. And yeah, thanks for your consideration. All right, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, is there any other person who is present here in chambers who'd like to speak to us on items on consent? Items not on the agenda or items on the regular agenda that you're unable to stay for? Seeing none, we'll see if there's people online who'd like to speak to us on public comment.
Yes, Chair, we do have speakers. Katie, your microphone's now available.
Hi, my name is Katie Maeta, and I am a clinical social worker who works in Santa Cruz County, um, doing social change. And I want to start out, uh, start off by saying that I really appreciate how much work the Sheriff's Department has been doing over the last year with really kind of diving in deep on implementing Cal Ames, developing a MAT program, getting the sober living, or the Sobering Center up and running again, and all the efforts that the sheriff has done to be committed to implementing Cal Ames throughout our system in Santa Cruz. But I want to come and talk to you as a child of incarcerated parents. And it's not my story that I want to tell. It's my brother's story. My brother is eight years younger than me, and he was present when my mother was arrested. And him and I kind of fell out of touch over the years, and I haven't really talked to him. And it wasn't until last year that his wife informed me that every time my brother at 32 ends up going to, or getting drunk, he talks about that week that my mother was in jail. It was one week, and he drinks a lot, let me tell you. So that story comes up for him years and years later. He was four or five years old when this happened. And in his mind, it was his fault that his mother got arrested. In his mind, it was because of him that this has happened. And so years later, this has still affected him. What we know about trauma is that trauma is not an event that happens. It's an experience that someone goes through. And we know that with trauma, we have to talk out the story, and we need to do it fast, or else children do not interpret the right things. My husband always says that children are the best observers but the worst interpreters. And so their stories that they create when their parents are in jail hurt. So I'm asking to really just focus on the children because those scars run deep and they're real. Thank you so much for your consideration and your time.
Thank you.
Stephanie, your microphone is now available.
Testing, testing.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Stephanie Bronleu. I represent Positive Discipline as their Executive Director. I'm also a local parent to a nine and one and a half-year-old baby daughter. Positive Discipline pre-pandemic had the ability to support our incarcerated population of parents and family members. Currently, we support our adult probation population of families looking to reenter their homes and feel effective in their parenting without the use of punishments or punitive bribes. Coming home, re-entering, and resuming a parenting relationship, it is a great source of hope, and it is a great motivator. It is also a great source of anxiety. We know that contact visits for parents who are incarcerated supports a sense of belonging and reduces recidivism rates and allows for smoother reentry into their homes and communities. We've seen the power of connection to mitigate the toxic environment and feeling of disconnection and self-hatred. Connection to a loved one and preserving a positive relationship with your child and co-parent? Oh, my gosh, it is, it's crucial. It is crucial to rehabilitate, and it would mean that you're able to be the mother or father or caregiver that your child deserves, as opposed to not even knowing whether you should make that phone call or attempt that virtual visit, or even tell them about what it, what it has meant for you to not be in the home with them. Small but meaningful changes can mean the difference between becoming systematically a part of the system to understanding that this is just one moment in your child's life and to reinvigorate that commitment to well-being and seeking resources to be your best healed self. I trust that the advocacy that you've heard today on behalf of our community of parents, caregivers, and service providers can really support reinstating and investing in contact visits. Thank you so much.
Bernie, your microphone's now available.
Yeah, Buenos dias, Chair and Board. I want to foremost just kind of congratulate one of the speakers on her sobriety, you know, keep up the good work. I am Bernie Gomez with Milpa, and I also want to continue to irritate, irritate the, the need for contact visits, right? I know that this board may feel like you don't have a say-so in it. But I strongly encourage you to believe that you do. I strongly encourage you to, uh, press the sheriff to do his duty, right? And not relegate, um, to saying that he's understaffed or that he's, uh, not able to because understaffing, or whatever it is that, that the. understaffing or whatever it is that, that the Sheriff's Department is going to express. I read about it. I heard about it. However, this is a, I'll bring up this, again, I'll bring up the, the issue of the jail is about forty percent empty, you know? So there's something, something needs to happen in this department at this time, right? There needs to be a restructuring and a readjustment. And I'll just, I'll save my, the rest of my comments around the Sheriff's Department for his presentation. But I do encourage you to think about the families that have kids, right? You might think, well, we shouldn't be in jail. They should have gotten locked up. We shouldn't gotten in trouble. Well, that's beyond the fact, you know, the fact here is that we gotta try to continue to keep these families together. Continue to as a children to, to just be in contact. It might not be the best place, but touch, physical touch, the voice, the feeling of the love, it just helps everybody all around. Thank you.
Charlie, your microphone is now available.
Hi there. This is Charlie Edie, Edie Consultants. I'm the consultant for Power of Dooms and I'm speaking on item number twenty-three, the CSA four budget. We did get a chance to review the budget at the, kind of the last minute last week with Chief Armstrong and we appreciated that opportunity. At this point, as you know, we're in the middle of an election to change the assessment level to have a higher service level. And so we're hoping that this budget that you approved today will simply be an interim budget and then we'll be back in August to redo the budget for CSA four. So fingers crossed on that. And then I would like to say that in the past, we've gotten these very detailed spreadsheets well in advance and it's been really useful for the Power of Dooms people to understand the budget. We find that so far at least, the new system is kind of difficult to really get the detail that we're looking for. And so I would hope that you could spend a little time with your administrative staff in, in thinking how we could get more to the process we had in the past where we could get the detailed spreadsheets on that. But again, we support the budget and again, looking forward to a successful election and revising the budget later. Thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
All right. And thank you very much and thank you to all the members of the public who made comments today. I will just say as a matter of process, the second item on our regular agenda today is going to be a presentation of the sheriff's budget. So we will be hearing from the sheriff and he's here today and I'm sure he's heard all the comments that were brought up. So we won't have any response to those questions and comments at this point in time. We'll take those up during the sheriff's presentation. I guess I will ask if staff as we're going into the budget manager's overview of today, maybe you could speak with Director Pimentel, maybe if you could speak to some of the questions about details in the budget. So I know there's, you know, what's, what's in the packet and there's a lot of other stuff online. And so maybe if you can kind of help people understand where they can find some of the finer details, maybe you can speak to that as part of your presentation. And so with that, we will move on to item number five, which is the budget manager's overview. And so I'll turn it over to Marcus Pimentel to kick us off today.
Good morning, Chair Cummings and Board members. Marcus Pimentel, you're County Budget Manager. Let me just speak to that right off our April ninth, the proposed budget presentation. The slide deck had about four or five slides with some quick tips about how to navigate our website, including we have over ninety preset reports that could all be customized and modified to look at revenues or departments. And, and once you clear, click down on any pie chart or bar chart, it drills down all the way to the line item of, of department budget. So it's really dynamic and flexible. You can then pivot that to say, well, I'm looking at one revenue item in a department and you can see that revenue item across all departments. So it's really dynamic in how it works. And maybe in the future, we can spend a little bit more time when we're not working on disaster recovery and everything like that. And these budget hearings that allow for a little bit more time to help the public understand that or even be able to offer some more online or a, 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 a budget study sessions or presentations to the members of the public. Be happy to do that in the future. So good morning, Chair Cummings. I'm going to start with the first, this slide deck, you're going to say, wait a second, didn't we just hear that? Yes, I'm repeating the first twelve, fourteen slides or so. I'll get through them a little bit faster from yesterday. We're expecting that there's newer members of the audience in the community watching and presenting today. So I don't want to just presume that I'll go back and watch the tapes. So we'll, we'll quickly review the overview of the budget and then we'll get down, I'll get down into overviewing the department categories that you'll see today. But we're going to continue public safety. We're going to move into land use, community development, community services, which are parks, public works, planning, housing and such. And then we'll finish with capital projects today. Where we're at in our budget cycle, we sort of started our budget hearing planning on, with the major report on February thirteenth. That did the first forecast and update to the board on where this coming fiscal year was going to look and where our challenges were at. One of the new developments we've seen is certainly the storm disaster response, certainly our federal disaster recovery in this, in the broken federal system that is impacting our, our need to issue last Tuesday, board action. With already up to a hundred and five million dollars in new debt for the county. So we understand that disasters are a big issue. It's going to cost this county taxpayers thirty-three million dollars in issuing that debt over the life of the debt. And that's new costs that we hadn't incurred and that are not claimable. We're issuing debt because of the slowness in the federal reimbursement system. It's going to cost us thirty-three million dollars in new costs and none of that is eligible for reimbursement. So that's, that's the challenges we face. But what we've also seen, and one of the new things we're diving deeper into are unfunded mandates by the state and the state's continual programs where they're shifting services to us or reducing our funding to the county while still expecting us to maintain certain mandates. And we appreciate the board and all the staff who are working collectively on this. This board has been leading the charge and asking us to keep pushing harder. And we appreciate all those efforts with board members who are actively participating on the state mandated committees as well as working behind the scenes. So today's is our third budget hearing. We're going to, after today, we'll continue the budget hearings to our fourth on June fourth. That's our last day in concluding actions and then we bring back the budget on September twenty-fourth. That budget on September twenty-fourth is modified to include the projected year-end results as well as the final format of the budget as presented to the State Controller's Office. The budget is prepared largely by our friends in the Autor of Control of Treasury Tax Collector's Office. They do a lot of work over the summer and we, we, we partner with that development. So that'll be the last element of this year's budget cycles on September twenty-fourth. As we talked about yesterday and you'll hear probably a little bit more today. We also have the state budget that's presenting some challenges to us. We expect there might be some conversations more mature in August with this board about the impacts of the budget. Before the doom and gloom, this county is doing a lot of amazing work and we continue to, and we will continue to do a lot of incredible work. These are just highlights of the countywide achievements, but you'll hear specific departmental achievements that are already contained in the board reports in today's packet, but will be highlighted as well with presentations today. Safe to say, opening of the new South County Government Services Center in Watsonville will, is a huge multifaceted benefit to our community, reducing commute times, providing services to the bulk of the community where the services are needed, while we're also saving the county money over the life of, of that asset. Instead of leasing, having five independent leases with different landlords and different rates of escalation. We now are a property owner and those lease rates are, are paying for the debt service to maintain and own that, that building. So we're really grateful for that economic savings to the general, general fund and county funds. Unveiling and developing the new Child's Crisis Center, that's in development now. That's a huge improvement in our community and already HSA in partnership with local providers will be providing a resource for our youth to open a partnership with the Watson Community Hospital. An option and a resource for youth in crisis, where they'll be able to have treatment and support services coming soon. And of course, much of these achievements are, were highlighted in our April ninth budget presentation. We encourage the public to really watch that segment. CA Blossis did a really nice job diving into the details and all that, but we're really proud of all the success we have. And we do have in front of you a proposed balanced budget with the supplemental changes. The problem with the balanced budget is that we balance it on the back of having to take some pretty big reductions. You heard about the reductions in health services yesterday. We've talked about the reductions in our general fund contingency. Typically, that's a one percent contingency available to respond quickly during the fiscal year to new, new demands. We've been able to budget that, that at one percent of the general fund in, over the last many years. That would have been seven point five million. We dropped it to one point two million this year. So over a six million dollar reduction in that contingency, we have very little ability to respond to significant events in this next budget cycle. We also eliminated all general fund funding to the capital projects last year. There's just over five million dollars. There is no funding to that and we've, we've talked about and we'll continue to talk about. And you'll hear a little bit later today about the capital projects for our county. And that what we're essentially doing is going back to the great recession times when we've had to stop collectively agencies across the country had to stop investments in capital projects, which increased their deferred maintenance cost and increased the cost of, of doing capital projects in the future just to maintain operations. And unfortunately, we're having to do that in this budget cycle. I feel like if folks want to spend a lot of time in our natural disaster financing, the last Tuesday's May fourteenth Board agenda item really does in the details. But again, I want to reiterate, we've had to issue up to a hundred and five million dollars in authority for debt. We expect the actual number in disaster findings to be about eighty million dollars for, for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two storm disasters as well as the twenty twenty CZU disaster that we're still waiting on nearly ten million dollars of unpaid claims. So we've had to finance and issue debt. It's going to cost taxpayers in the county thirty-three million dollars of a life of bonds because of the delays in the federal reimbursement system. Again, the, the board presentation and materials from last Tuesday dive into this a lot of greater detail. As this board has known and helped us frame discussions around just the complications and the uniqueness of our particular county. We are unlike most counties. Most counties might have twenty percent of their population that they provide direct services for. Half of this county's population is relying on the county to be a city. So we function as the biggest city in the county, providing direct municipal-like services to over half of the county's population. That's atypical. Counties are typically in around the twenty percent range or smaller. So we, we have to spread tax dollars over a greater base to provide municipal services as well as county mandated services. In addition to that, we're systematically unfunded, underfunded. We've talked about that. We are in the bottom right quadrant of the per capita funding levels and the population served. Most communities have a higher per capita property tax allocation. This isn't the rate that taxpayers pay, it's just how much comes back to the counties. In our county, we get about thirteen cents on the dollar in total. Most counties on average are twenty cents on the dollar. That swing, if we just got a different allocation for them, they're not the same tax, the same rate and the same payments by taxpayers. But if we got just the county's average across the state of California, that's thirty-six million dollars more every year the general fund would have to support programs and services. Our friends in Monterey County, if we had their allocation methodology, that's eighty million dollars more a year. And, you know, we've talked about sales tax. We're losing at least five million a year in sales tax that our residents are paying online and that, that has been diverted to other counties due to discrepancies and, and anomalies in, in the state's regulations about how sales tax is allocated. So we continue to get a lost revenues. We are underfunded. We are, these are allocation rates, not what taxpayers are paying. We're not, this wouldn't be a scenario where taxpayers would pay more. It's just we get our fair share and we're certainly underfunded for that. And a lot of the states backed in the nineteen seventies with Prop thirteen. We've talked a lot about that. Within, moving into the proposed budget, we have a proposed with supplemental changes at one point one five billion. That sounds like a big number and I appreciate the questions yesterday, just trying to understand the size of our budget. And really, when you peel back all the federal programs and mandated service areas that we must fund and the special restricted revenues we receive, this really dives all the way down to about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year or excuse me, two hundred and twenty million a year that the board has discretion over of our general property tax base. The one point one five billion dollar county budget is less than last year's budget by a hundred and thirty-five million. So we are, we are, we are declining and decreasing the size of our budget across the entire county. A few of these slides in here are more for reference perspective to help to just get a quick summary. This is a busy slide, but it tends, it captures our revenues as expenditures, expenditures. How much is supported by the, the county budgets across categories? And these are the categories that we bundle department. So general government, health and human services and such. It also shows the changes with staffing levels. We are proposing a budget, recommending a budget that reduces county positions by twenty-five positions, twenty-five point three over last year's adopted budget. Diving down into a little bit more into which departments are seeing position changes of the schedule highlights in yellow, the proposed and supplemental position changes in total, again, reducing the county's workforce position by twenty-five point three positions. And you'll see the, the variances, the, the biggest reduction is Health and Health Services Agency, who in yesterday really dived into the details of what is driving their need to reduce the workforce by thirty-nine point five positions, twenty-eight of those are COVID positions that we knew were going to end and were hired with expectation that this is their last year of funding. But that's still twenty-eight positions that are gone. That still leaves eleven positions that were reduced that the county was unable to help sustain. That's due to shifts in ten million dollars worth of funding that went from the county to the state to allocate through the CalAim process. So again, just another, another example of how we're being asked to, to do more with less resources. The general fund forecast in our out years, we recognize needs to be updated. This last model was updated in March on, assuming the general fund was going to have some higher allocation of debt service cost for the disaster debts funding. Fortunately, with the package presented to the board last Tuesday, we'll be able to reduce and defer the general fund's portion of debt service over these next couple of years. That's one point five and four point four million dollars. We still have projected cash flow deficits in those years, but at least the, the gap is shrinking a little bit. And we'll update the schedule following the state budget. When we get into a deeper dive of what are the impacts of the state budget? What does it mean for the county and what types of loss for revenue programs we have to impact? So we'll update that, the schedule by September twenty-fourth as well as factor in the new debt service model when we issue the debt next month. As a reflection where our reserves stand, so we talked about our contingency being shrunk. Fortunately, we're able to keep our ten and a half percent reserve level. It's the, in my career, it's the lowest reserve target I've ever been around typically. You know, in, in cities, you'll see that level at fifteen percent, a twenty percent as high as twenty-four percent. For us, a ten and a half percent is still a decent reserve. It's above our seven percent minimum reserve. But we're dependent on Medi-Cal funded programming for capital expansion in that reserve. And if we take out those health services directed funding, that's a general fund department, cash flows available for Medi-Cal projects. If we take that out, we're left about five percent available reserve and that equates to two and a half payroll cycles. And we've talked about this quite a bit. Our general fund expenditures, again, I'll move quickly through these. We're proposing a revised general fund budget at seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand. The supplemental increased our size of our general fund budget by twenty-four point two million dollars. You heard nineteen million of that was related to the health services with some grant funding and federal Medi-Cal funding that is being recognized in next year's budget. These are not expansion of programs, just recognizing revenue and supporting programs and service delivery. Outside of that, there are smaller changes that are detailed in the supplemental budget as a separate PDF. And each department's board letter and presentations today will identify those supplemental changes. So let me get into public safety and justice. We preview the category as a whole and then you'll have presentations today by the district attorney, public administrator and the sheriff coroner. Yesterday, you, you concluded yesterday's budget hearings with presentations by the Public Defender Office and Probation Department. Our public safety and justice category has a total countywide budget of almost two hundred million, one hundred and ninety-eight point one million. I'm sorry, two hundred and fourteen million of the two hundred and fourteen point eight million, one hundred and ninety-eight is general funds. So in this next chart, you can see that top right pie chart. This, this category of departments and services are really dependent on the general fund to help maintain their operations. Whereas most other categories, you've seen they're, you know, eighty to ninety percent funded from other resources and dependent on the general fund, ten to twenty percent. Public safety has a sixty percent need, sixty percent of the budgets are covered by the general fund directly. The largest allocation to the sheriff coroner's operations. The largest allocation to the sheriff coroner's operations. The position changes within the public safety category largely status quo. There's two positions being added in the sheriff coroner's department for the DNA lab and some other grant funded programs. The DNA lab is a, a new innovative project that has funding and this is a long term plan to provide support and expansion of DNA, DNA services. The public defender has, is adding six positions, you heard the presentation yesterday. Three of those positions are converting contracting positions to in-house staff. So we're adding positions, but we're saving on the contract side. And three of the, three of their six positions are added through the care act implementation program. When we're done with the district attorney and sheriff officer presentations, we'll move into land use and community services category. You'll have presentations by parks department and then our combined community development infrastructure department. Community development and infrastructure were the former planning and public works departments, which will cover planning, housing, public works, operations. CSAs as well as road and infrastructure projects. So that will move into those departments. In total, that's 277 million in countywide funding budget authority, of which only 36.7 million is the general fund. So you've seen community development infrastructure is the biggest part of this budget and a lot of their funding comes from CSAs. And special revenues as well as enterprise funded revenue. So they're, they're largely leveraged with other funding sources. And again, looking at their allocation of how much these departments depend on the general fund. Much smaller allocations and like most of the other county departments, almost entirely funded with other revenue sources. They're only as a category using 6% of the general fund to maintain their operations. From a position count standpoint, the community development infrastructure department is being reduced by 6.8 of that amount. 10 positions are being shifted from community development infrastructure into the general government category for capital projects and real property. So you heard some of that information yesterday. So it's not a reduction of workforce as it is a shifting from one department to the next. They're adding some additional positions to the department that you'll hear about later today. Cannabis licensing, we're reducing that department by one, this, the, the complexity and revenue streams of cannabis licensing have changed since the beginning. We've talked about that in the last couple of years. The revenues have dropped in half, they've stabilized, but they're nowhere near the funded level that we, we had expected or had seen in the first couple of years of operations. You'll finish today with a review of the capital projects program. While the pie chart is full, it's very small. If I were to compare the funding in last year's budget to this year, there's only $431,000 in new projects. Last year, we had, I think well north of $7 million in projects and, and capital facility projects. Most of these projects are being funded through parks restricted funding sources. So we're really seeing new projects for our parks and not much else, really nothing else going on in new projects for county, other county facilities. But you'll get more of that information later today and some of the impacts or, or concerns about that. With that, I'll, in my presentation and available for any comments. And then following my presentation, we'll move into the public safety presentations by the district attorney, community development, infrastructure. Categories in the capital projects.
Great, thank you for that presentation. Before we come to the board for questions, I also just want to give our CEO Carlos Palacios an opportunity to speak to Measure K. And how the county is being impacted currently by Measure K.
Yes, Chair Cummings, members of the board. We recently received some very important information regarding Measure K, which is the absent sales tax, which was approved by the voters on March 5th ballot. Recently, an individual has indicated that he intends to pursue an existing lawsuit over Measure K. This individual would prefer that, would have preferred that only voters in the unincorporated areas vote on it. Despite Measure K's benefits going to the whole county. And despite having lost a preliminary injunction prior to the election. And despite voters in the unincorporated areas, supporting the measure, approving it as well as every jurisdiction in the county approving the measure. The funds would have been generated by Measure K would have been seven and a half million dollars in this next year's budget. Because it would, we would only start collecting, actually receiving funds from it in October. On an annual basis, Measure K will generate about $10 million a year. Earlier, when the board put this Measure K ballot on, on Measure K on the ballot. The board indicated that it was going to allocate funds from Measure K to support homeless services. Housing, road and infrastructure projects and parks. And there's a whole list of projects that have been listed by the board as potential recipients of Measure K funding. Unfortunately, state law says that if there's a lawsuit on the, on, on a sales tax measure. The funds would be collected, would, but would be frozen. Therefore, we wouldn't be able to spend any of those funds until the lawsuit is resolved. The lawsuit, if it is filed, could take anywhere from six months to two years to resolve. During that time, the Measure K funds would be frozen and not be able to be spent. So I just wanted to make sure that the board and the community are aware of that very important issue that's confronted us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open up to the board to see if there's any questions, comments on the presentation.
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of points. Thank you again for the presentation and all, and I think you said 778,000 one time, and I think you meant million, but whatever, you know, numbers. But, you know, in Prop 13, I think it's difficult for some people to understand it, that I think the board supervisors back in 1978 with Prop 13 were very frugal. And they set a low bar, so people wouldn't be hammered with their property taxes. And to change that, I think we'd have to go through a whole state operation to say, everybody else, the other 57 counties, you give to us so we can up it from 13% to, I don't know, 30 or. I guess we, we lose 30% of what the average is in the state. Is that basically correct?
Yeah, for us, we probably feel more within the county. So it, it wouldn't be taking funds from other counties, it's just how the allocation is done within counties. And typically what, what would happen is the state would, the state has a responsibility to fund schools. So any, any losses that you might see going to schools would be picked up by the state. So it, you know, we, we recognize the political challenges in it. We're just trying to articulate why it's, why we're so limited in our abilities. And some of it is just structurally built that we have very little control and.
Unlikely path to correction or to increase that. Okay, thank you.
So Hernandez. All right, well, thank you for that presentation. With that, I'm going to.
By the way, I want to just say too, that as was mentioned really in this presentation, we have an award winning budget presentation in the package. That Mr. Pimentel and under the CEO Carlos Palacios has got that said statewide and CSAC. You, you're doing the best job of anybody in the state, so people can find out how your money is being spent. And I think that should be recognized and congratulations to you and the whole staff, administrative staff.
All right, thank you very much for those comments. So with that, we'll move on to item number six on our agenda, which is consent. And so I'll go to supervisor friend to see if you have any questions or comments on consent. No comments on consent, supervisor Conig. Supervisor Hernandez.
Supervisor, I'm going to ruin this, but I just a couple of things. An item 19 that was referred to with the budget, the ballot measure on wildlife protection and wildfire protection. It was clear that there was adequate number of signatures to qualify for the ballot, although it was just qualified officially yesterday. So I think we're taking the appropriate action now to let people know what this is, this measure is about. It doesn't, in the end, it's not that the board of supervisors is going to say yes or no, you can put this on the ballot. They got the signatures to get it on the ballot and that's why it's going to be there in November. So I just want to make that clear. Tooth and second thing on item number 25, the office of response, recovery and resilience. I want to thank OR three director, Dave Reed and the staff for this budget and thank him for working so closely with my office and the CZU fires. I know he was with others, but I've had big basin water and a variety of other issues in the last several years too, because of the storms and fires and so forth. We, we appreciate his ongoing efforts to put it, pull down some grants. Amazing what he has been able to accomplish is really something. And with climate action and adaptation also on his plate and the office's plate, there's a great deal of vision that will be required with his work. In addition to organizing emergency response and recovery. And I, I would like to add some additional direction and I, I don't want to make this a habit. We had something like this yesterday as well, but we still have hundreds of property owners going through the recovery and rebuilding process related to the CZU fire. And I'd like to explore the possibility of providing some extended case management support for those property owners through the long-term recovery group. Which now is a standalone nonprofit dedicated to continue working with disaster survivors. So I'd like to ask that the county provide or consider in the future, not, I'm not recommending that we do this. But provide $40,000 for part-time case management in fiscal, fiscal year 24, five. The private funding that used to underwrite that position is drying up and that's why it's going to be needed if it's going to be continued. So the additional direction would be to have the staff explore how we could add $40,000. And believe me, we've just got a, a dire budget message, I know, to the last day actions for the office of response, recovery and resilience. For the disaster case management and depending on what we learn, the future Measure K funding and the other, what the state's going to be doing and its unfunded mandates. Or how it's going to address its deficit. I, we need to get that as a foundation, but I would like to have us consider just how we could get more funding to that office if, if we could.
Great. So I'll return to supervisor McPherson for a motion.
I'd, I'd like to make the, the motion to accept the consent agenda with the additional direction on the long-term recovery effort.
Motion second. Okay, so we have a motion by supervisor McPherson with the additional direction by supervisor Hernandez. And I'll just make some brief comments as well. I, I do also want to just reiterate what was said about item number 19, the land trust initiative. I just want to congratulate all the people who were able to go out and get the signatures to put this on the ballot. It's an opportunity for the community to weigh in and to determine whether or not they would like to further contribute to our parks and open spaces throughout the entire county. And, you know, approving this today is, you know, one step in the democratic process. You know, we, the group went out and got the signatures, signatures were validated. And it's the job of the board to then put this on the ballot, given that they successfully were able to meet the number of signatures to get gathered. So this is not us trying to, you know, sidestep any form, any part of the process. It's really us trying to support the, the democratic processes before us. And so it will be up to the voters to make the final decision as to whether or not we would like to contribute to this effort. As it relates to the, to the additional direction, I'm very supportive of that. You know, a lot of people are trying to rebuild and I will say that the long-term disaster recovery group has been really instrumental in trying to help connect people to resources and services that they need to rebuild their homes. They have just launched a partnership with the Mennonite Disaster Services and they're planning on building five to six homes annually, using volunteer labor from across, across the nation for the vulnerable families. Without, in our districts who haven't been able to rebuild. And I think it's been a, a very, you know, we've been the district three office, my predecessor and myself and the district five office have been extremely committed to trying to help people rebuild as quickly as possible, knowing that some people don't have the necessary resources. And I believe that, you know, with the uncertainty with Measure K and with, you know, support from the board. It's providing an opportunity for our OR three director, working with our county CAO's office and other staff to try to see if we can find funds that would be able to contribute to this. And 40,000 is a very small amount that can go a very long way for many people who were victims of a devastating disaster in our community. And so I'm supportive of the recommendation that's been made by supervisor McPherson. Any other questions or comments on this item?
So just as clarification, so that would be in the June 4th, the last day budget, there'd be whether it's possible and how it would be possible and what cuts would be needed if, like we did for the other items yesterday. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions or comments on consent? Seeing none, I'll turn to the clerk for a roll call vote.
Supervisor Conig.
Aye.
Friend.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson.
Aye.
And Cummings.
Aye. The item passes unanimously. Okay, so with that, that's our consent items, we will move on to our regular agenda. We're going to continue with public safety and justice. And so item number seven on our agenda is consider approval of the 2024, 25 proposed budget for district attorney, public administrator, including any supplemental materials and take related actions as outlined in the reference budget documents. And I'll turn it over to our DA Jeff Rozell, welcome.
Can you hear me now? Good morning, Chairperson Cummings and board members. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today and talk about our proposed budget and ask for the approval. Before we get started, I would like to thank the CAO's office. I would specifically like to say, thank Mr. Palacios, Carlos Palacios, the CAO, Nicole Coburn. Marcus Pimental and more specifically our analyst Sven Stafford, who has been instrumental in helping us get our proposed budget together. So the first thing that we'd like to talk about is our mission statement. It literally guides everything that we do in the DA's office. And that is to promote and ensure public safety through ethical and just prosecution. And similarly, the vision that we have is to foster a community where justice is served. Public safety is paramount and victims' voices are heard and valued. The guiding principles for us, and we would also submit for, for this board, come from the California constitution, article 13, section 35. That states public safety is the first responsibility of local government. And local officials have an obligation to give priority to the provision of adequate public safety services. We in the DA's office follow various bodies of law and mandates. Those are the United States constitution, the constitution of the state of California, California statutes, as well as the rules of professional conduct. Our duties are to protect the rights of victims, to protect the rights of defendants, which surprises some people. To review and investigate cases and to prosecute cases and seek justice and act ethically. The district attorney's jurisdiction is laid out on this slide. And as you can see from this slide, every single law enforcement agency in this county, and there's a couple that aren't on here. Refer cases to the district attorney's office where we review these cases and make decisions about whether or not to charge cases. And if we charge them, what to charge them with. Last year, the DA's office reviewed over 10,000 cases. And of those 10,000 cases, we've filed approximately 60% of those, 6,000 cases. But the ones that are not filed still need to be reviewed by our office. And what that entails is going through body cam footage, which now exists on virtually every case. Reading the reports and spending a tremendous amount of time on the front end to make determinations about whether or not these cases should be filed. So a lot of our time is spent on cases that never make it to court. But nevertheless, because of our mandate, because of our job and what is expected of us, we still have the duty to go through these cases. Of those 6,000 cases that are actually filed and go to court, those cases are divided among the public defenders. Alternate public defenders as well as private attorneys. The organizational structure and leadership of the DA's office is laid out as follows. And it's funny, when you look at an org chart, it's, it gives you one piece of information, but what it doesn't really talk about are those people in the office. but what it doesn't really talk about are those people in the office that are absolutely committed to a person, to making our community a safe place, and to making sure that victims' voices are heard and that they are represented in the criminal justice system. Our achievements, we're talking about this last year. Neighborhood Courts is one of the things that we are extremely proud of. Neighborhood Courts is a restorative justice program, a model that we started in this county. One of, I think we were the fourth in the state or thereabouts to start this program. Last year, we had 164 cases, and these cases are cases that are diverted from the criminal justice system. They don't go before the judges. Public defenders don't get appointed. It is a tremendous cost savings for the system and for this county in many ways. Of those 164 cases that were referred, we have 114 cases that were successfully completed with volunteer panelists that are, that is, members of the community who act as panelists that will lay out measures to get a person who has committed offenses back on track. 28 of those cases have also been completed on a modified model. That model does not involve panelists. We have 17 from the last year that are still in the process and outstanding in terms of achieving the end goal. And we have had five out of 164 that have been unsuccessful. In the Consumer Protection Unit in our office, we are still continuing in the statewide task force. They're in the process of obtaining judgment, enormous judgment against nursing homes, protecting the elderly, that they have caused new implementations in nursing homes for monitoring and frankly, unique in our state and something that we are extremely proud of. They continue to do outreach to the elderly and try to alert community members about pending fraud, which is, as we know, constantly evolving and changing. Community outreach and early intervention of underserved communities. The D A's offices in many jurisdictions simply focus on cases once they have come to them through law enforcement agencies. But we at the D A's office in Santa Cruz County have always and have really bumped up our efforts to do front end work so that communities have engagement, excuse me, and don't wind up in the court system. And we have done that through a number of activities. Victims Rights March, Drunk or Treat, Adopt a Family. We have touched, by all estimates, about 6,000 people just last year with all of the early intervention and the things that the Santa Cruz County D A's have done. Our third achievement that we are proud of is the forensics. As we've spoken about a moment ago, forensics, phones, computers are now a part of virtually every case that comes our way. And one of the goals that we had listed last year, and I'm pleased to tell you that we have had an 83% success rate in, is getting into digital forensics, getting into phones, finding valuable evidence that enables us to go forward with cases and bring justice to victims. You can see by the 2025 budget request, and I don't need to go through all the numbers that are in front of you, that we have had some changes, and I would submit moderate changes. Most of those involve personnel and benefit costs increases for existing staff. And as stated in the board letter, and it is our goal to intend to avoid reductions and avoid layoffs. Our primary budgetary goals, as laid out, are to improve communication, education, and transparency to the community. Number two, to enhance outreach prevention and early intervention practices. And number three, to augment resources and to assist with digital technologically forensic evidence and collection and analysis. We are in criminal prosecutions requesting a change of one body. This person is to be a full time departmental analyst. It's a limited term of two years. It is initially going to be funded by salary savings. And we are anticipating that this individual will be able to look at grants so that they can become self funded. It ties in not only with the first goal that I mentioned earlier, which was to improve transparency in the community, which an analyst will do, but also the second to enhance outreach and early prevention. Finally, in the consumer environmental protection, we are looking at a status quo. We are not requesting any new asks in, in that. The general fund contribution is the same as it was last year. There is none. And we will report to you that we have a $5.8 million balance that is in a trust fund used to fund consumer protection, outreach, and criminal prosecutions. Finally, the Victim Witness Association Program, and I know there was some questions about this. We are not requesting a change in the personnel for victim witness. We are pleased to say that we have applied for and received about $380,000 in grant funding from the state. But as you may know, the state has been cutting and proposes to cut funds to victims and victim witness. So with that, you can see that the request that the D A's office is making is on this final page. It really includes one full time person, as we said, funded for two years, most of it to come out of salary savings that we have on the front end. And with that, I would be open to any questions that the board may have, and I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for that presentation, and thank you all for the amazing work that you do for our county. With that, I'm going to open up to the public to see if there's any members of the public who would like to speak to us on the district attorney's budget. We're here in person. You will have two minutes to address the board.
Thank you, Becky Steinbrenner. I looked at this budget on the award winning budget site, which does not give very much information. I'm sorry, it won an award, but it's giving less and less information. And I could not find how much Prop 172 Public Safety statewide money you're getting. You've gotten that in the past, and I didn't see any clear reporting of that. So I would like that information. I want to thank you for, especially the consumer advocate that your office has. Mr. Brown is doing a great job. Is his position still self funded by? Yes, okay, so he's, he's got to work hard to get his own paycheck. He's doing a good job. I want to congratulate him on past environmental violations, notably the Aptos Village project, and going after them and getting a adversary amount, albeit, for them pulling out a storage tank, a fuel tank, and hauling it out in the middle of the night. It was the only action that was ever taken, and I really appreciate that. I want to find out what is happening in terms of credit card fraud. It's huge in this county. I've talked with Mr. Brown. I'd like some reporting on that. I'm happy to hear there's some oversight on elder abuse, especially in the nursing homes. I would also like a report about fentanyl and that, that issue, gang involvement in our county. What is the D A doing about that? Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else here in person who'd like to speak to us on items on the district attorney's agenda? Seeing none, we'll go online to see if there's any members of the public online.
We have speakers, Chair. Bernie, your microphone's now available.
Good morning, Chair and Board. Once again, I think I just want to uplift the neighborhood courts, right? I think we've seen amazing, amazing, amazing process, right, of what it looks like to divert people from being involved in the justice system, in the criminal legal system, right, using an alternative, an alternative approach where community members are involved, systems are involved, you know, partnering up to ensure that, you know, we have a restorative justice practice and process, you know, to, to address some of these, so many things that are coming up in our, in our community. I just, yeah, and I just encourage the board to continue to uplift and support the alternative, right, the restorative justice practice. We see successful rates, you know, and I think we can make more success, you know, and create better impact in our communities and folks that are, yeah, you know, just having a hard time making bad choices, you know, but not allowing that those, those choices define their future, you know, and giving them an opportunity to rectify and redeem their mistakes. So you have my time, thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I'll bring it back to the board. But before I do, I just want to see if you maybe could comment on the questions around the Prop 172 funds and the fentanyl and gang prosecutions that were raised by a member of the public.
Good morning, board members. I can address that. We get approximately $3 million in that budget line item.
And with respect to prosecuting cases involving fentanyl, the penalties as they stand right now, the legislature has not seen fit to add serious enhancements for that. My understanding is there's legislation afoot. But as you know, we continue to prosecute cases that are appropriate. We continue to prosecute cases involving fentanyl and other narcotics. And unfortunately, those are the things that we see in our community, and those are extremely dangerous. We've never really faced dangerous drugs like we have at this moment in time when it comes to fentanyl. But rest assured that when the cases come in, those are reviewed as I have indicated, and that we file those cases and we prosecute those cases.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'll go to the board to see if there's any questions for the district attorney's office, to start with supervisor Hernandez. So a few, a few comments and a question. You know, one of the things is that I've been really glad to see the district attorney's office out in the community, doing a lot of community participation, events, and outreach. And I'm glad to see on the, I think the second slide, the amount of, you know, diversion programs that we're participating in. Those are things that are really positive impact for our community. Just for clarification, the full time employee, it's two years on wages, and then after that, they're going to be on grants?
No, well, it's funded for two years, and that funding is coming from salary savings. I guess we're going to reevaluate in two years, but it is our hope that an analyst will be able to, you know, we're also busy. This person will have time to explore grants. As I said, we've gotten two for victim witness already. But we're hoping that this person, as an analyst, will be able to go out, look at grants, and literally bring money, not just to our office, but money to the county as a whole, and sort of self fund. So that, that's the anticipation, along with several other duties that need to be done to achieve our goal of transparency and continue. And thank you for your kind comments about community outreach. So.
All right, supervisor McPherson.
Yeah, first of all, I thank, I want to thank you for reminding us that the California Constitution, and I'll say this to the, those that follow in the sheriff's office, public safety is the first responsibility of local government. If we don't have that, everything else kind of disintegrates. I, on, I want to give congratulations to you and your whole staff, you know, for starting Neighborhood Courts now several years ago. And you had 164 cases, you said, I think.
That's this year. We've had over 300 completed. So that's just this year.
Is that about what you anticipated, or?
That's a very interesting question. When we started it, like I said, there was only about four models or so in the whole entire state out of 58 counties. So I'm not sure we entirely figured out what to expect. We started it, we were expecting to divert significant cases. And as the caller said, people who just need sort of a break to get their life back on track and to have members of the community in a, in a restorative way sort of supervise them. So I would, I would be lying if I said that was exactly the number that we, that we anticipated. But we did think that it was a program that would grow and would evolve as, as we went through it. But it, we knew it would be significant, but I don't know that we knew it would be at the level that it is. But I can tell you, we're absolutely thrilled with it. It is nothing but a positive thing for our community, as supervisor Hernandez mentioned and others. And we are committed wholehearted to going forward with it and expanding it. We've had 14 monolingual Spanish hearings, which we are extremely proud of, and just a lot of community engagement. And like I say, it keeps these folks out of the system. They don't get public defenders appointed. They don't go to court. They, they don't have anything on their record if they successfully complete it.
All right, and I want to thank you again and your whole staff, especially the consumer protection, and the target so often is, is the elderly, and they just get, is Doug Allen still overseeing that?
He is there, ready, willing, and able to go out and speak to any.
And I wanted to say thank you for the outreach, because these people are confused. They don't know what's right or what's wrong. It's really a big problem, and the outreach that you've provided have, I think, saved some serious situations for a lot of people, especially the elderly. So thank you for doing that, and the outreach that he has done. He's been excellent.
He is. Thank you very much, supervisor McPherson, and I echo your comments about Mr. Allen.
Right, supervisor Conick.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, D A Rozell, for the great presentation, all the work by your department. Yeah, I would also want to commend you on the success of the Neighborhood Courts program. And, you know, really just the sheer volume of work that you guys get through every year. I mean, your 6,000 cases is a heck of a lot, and as you said, that's not even the whole amount of work, because you got.
Only the filed ones, the other 4,000 that take plenty of work. Thank you for recognizing.
Yeah, well, I mean, the question I have for you is how many of those 6,000 cases actually get resolved every year?
That's a, it's an interesting question. I, they don't all get resolved in one year's time. A lot of the misdemeanor cases clearly will get resolved within a year. Sometimes you have people who abscond, and those cases, just a warrant gets issued. But most of the felonies that are not the homicides and the, the heavy sexual assault cases that carry punishment, many of those get resolved. The larger cases are the ones that typically will go outside the year, depending upon the volume of, of forensic data that needs to be analyzed and that sort of thing.
Right, right, of course, obviously, some of those cases can take years.
I don't have a specific number, and I apologize. I'll back to you with.
I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is, are we seeing the backlog grow or shrink?
No, I think, yeah, we had it, we definitely talked about this. I think I talked about it a couple of years ago during COVID. So we are working away on the backlog. We've got many cases that are in trial, and the courts are sort of back up and running and spooled up. So we are chipping away at the backlog, but I would, we're not adding, we're not adding to the problem. We are trying to solve it and correct it.
Okay, so it, the backlog is getting smaller.
It's getting smaller.
Well, that's, that's moving in the right direction.
Yes.
Thank you. No further questions.
Supervisor Brenner.
Hey, I don't have any questions, just some, some praise for the team, in particular, those that, that don't necessarily get seen as much. The inspectors, for example, do remarkable work behind the scenes unquestionably, the work that you've done. In fact, you are a leader among the 58 counties in your victim assistance program. It has been consistent with that in particular, dealing with children, victims as well. Doug is an invaluable resource for the broader community and has been in each of our districts, offering up resources. And something else that, since I had chaired for multiple years the Criminal Justice Council, you had helped really lead that with me in many respects. And so you and your office have been very, very forward thinking in how to ensure that, that front end issues are dealt with, but all the back end issues are still also adequately dealt with. Every major issue from a criminal perspective that's happened in our community, your department's had to take, your team's taken a lead on all the high profile ones. I know it takes a toll emotionally and physically on some of these cases, in particular, some of those violent ones. But I think you have a really good culture and good team there, so I just want to thank you for that. And Eric, don't die on us right now, if you don't mind. We need some water. These are things we can provide. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you very much for your kind comments.
All right. Um, I did have a couple of questions. Um, the first was when mentioning neighborhood courts and you were saying that there were five that were unsuccessful, I was wondering if you could kind of speak to, you know, what happened and.
Those, those are folks who frankly haven't followed through with the plan. So they'll, they'll show up at neighborhood courts. They'll, uh, have a panel that speaks to them and lays out goals and, you know, benchmarks for them to, to do. And those are folks who for one reason or another have not accomplished that and typically picked up maybe a new offense or that sort of thing, but haven't really availed themselves of the opportunity.
And so as a result, they kind of get, they go back and.
They'll go, well, a couple of things will happen. Sometimes they will get, you know, depending upon their reasons and, and all that and sort of the group's decision. Uh, they can go back through the program and then others, if they've picked up, uh, rare occurrence, but picked up a new criminal offense, they're going to be dealing with, with that in the court.
Right. Um, so. Great. Well, I just want to, you know, again, congratulate you all as my colleagues have on that program. Um, I remember being on the city council when it was first rolling out and I think a lot of people were excited to see, you know, the county and the DA's office really taking seriously, trying to move forward with, you know, diversion and keeping people out of the criminal justice system. And, you know, I think one thing that we all forget is that, is how much money actually saves the county and the community from not, from having an alternative for people to, you know, not necessarily go in the criminal justice system, get their lives back on track and as a result, save the courts, save the jails and save all of us and save these people a lot of money as well, too. Um, the next question I had was on the twenty million dollar, um.
Task joint task force with the, uh, the other, other county. It's with the attorney generals and it's also attorney general. It's also with other counties. So what we're finding is, uh, nursing homes are literally located in various jurisdictions. So it makes sense to partner up with the counties that they exist in. It also makes sense to partner up with the attorney general. So we have had, uh, some that are just sort of inside the borders of Santa Cruz County. But the one that we're speaking about is statewide and it is in process as we speak. And it looks like it's coming to a resolution.
Yeah, it will be great to hear how much, you know, funding the county receives, um, out of that settlement. So.
Fair enough.
Yeah. Um, to be continued, I guess.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you all for your hard work on that.
Thank you very much.
Um, and then I do also just want to, um, express appreciation for the DA's support of, um, kind of the restorative justice process that was used around the individuals who had done the burnout on the Santa Cruz mural, um, the Black Lives Matter mural. I mean, this was, as we were hearing and as I was in the court proceedings during the kind of final days, you know, this was a new approach to dealing with how we're, you know, how we want to address the situation. And I think many people in the community felt like these are two young individuals that did something that was very harmful, very stupid. But at the same time, did this necessitate them going to jail? And the answer was, you know, resoundingly no. But they did want to have a process that, you know, these individuals could go through to, you know, recognize the harm that was conned and hopefully heal from, um, help the community heal from the trauma that was caused and then help these individuals heal themselves. And I know that your office was very instrumental in helping us resolve and working with the community to resolve what would be most appropriate. And so I just really want to thank you all for that because it's, it's creating a new model of how we can also kind of divert people from the criminal justice system as has been done with neighborhood courts.
Thank you very much for those kind of comments.
Yeah. And then I guess the last thing I'll say that I'd like to, I've, I've been meaning to follow up with you on, and I hope that, that we can, uh, discuss it. But, you know, um, with Santa Cruz being the most expensive rental community in the United States, I've heard on numerous occasion, um, you know, um, people who are victims of predatory landlords, whether that's, you know, if they receive exorbitant rent increases, um, or what have you. You know, housing is something that everybody needs in our community and I would think it would fall under something that is, could fall into, you know, something that we consume as something that we pay into and, and, you know, we're doing our best to try to, you know, fund, um, uh, tenant defends, you know, tenant advocates, people can inform the tenants. But I think we need to, it's a kind of an all-hands-on-deck approach to really deter predatory behavior in our housing market. And so to the extent that we can, you know, explore options there, I think would be really great.
Uh, we are always open to exploring those and, um, to trying to make the community a better place. So, right. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. With that, um, I'll see if there's a, a member of the board who would like to move the.
All of the recommended actions.
Second.
All right. We had a motion by Supervisor Friend, second by Supervisor Hernandez to, uh, move the district attorney's budget as outlined by staff. But that, I'll turn it to the court for roll call.
Supervisor Conick.
Aye.
Friend.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson. And Cummings.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Okay. Before we move on to our next item, I'd just like to see if everybody's comfortable with moving forward. Do we want to take a quick break? Okay. Nope. All right. So with that, we'll move on to the last item under public safety and justice. There's item number eight, consider approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget for the sheriff coroner, including any supplemental materials and take related actions as outlined in the reference budget documents. I'll turn it over to our sheriff, Jim Hart and his staff.
Morning Chair Cummings. Board of Supervisors, Jim Hart, Sheriff Coroner. Is this on?
Yep.
Uh, just to quickly introduce my executive staff that's here. This is my administrative manager, Kathy Sams, under Sheriff Chris Clark, our corrections chief, Dan Freitas, and then our law enforcement chief, Jake Ainsworth. And just real briefly, just the comments is we're very much in a status quo budget. Uh, this year with the county absorbing negotiated salary, uh, in, in labor increases. Um, we really appreciate the work that the CIO, Carlos Placios and his team do all year long on helping us manage this pretty sizable budget. And so just want to reach out and say thank you, Nicole and Carlos, for your, your work. Okay. Much like the DA, we do have a mission statement and you, everybody can, uh, can read that on their own. But really, our, our people are proud to work in this community and we're proud, uh, to serve the community. And this is a great place to live and it's, it's a great place to, to work in law enforcement. It's, it's a supportive community. They ask, people ask a lot of questions. They, they want to know, uh, why things are happening. But at the end of the day, they're very supportive. And so, and I've spent here thirty-six years now. I've really enjoyed, uh, being a law enforcement officer in this community. That's organizational structure we just talked about. And I, I don't want to read all six of these, but I, I do want to touch on a couple of our achievements that are, are really important. And fentanyl has been brought up a number of times today. It's by far the most lethal street drug that I've, I've seen in my career. Uh, some scientists are saying it's a hundred times stronger than heroin. And so as you probably heard last year, we had a hundred and thirty-three of our community members overdose and die. Not just overdose, but overdose and die in Santa Cruz County. And it's so prevalent that you admit year last year, we had to, we had to fund an additional death investigator in our court, coroner's unit because of the workload. And our, our police officers that work in the different city jurisdictions, our deputies, we all carry Narcan. Narcan's in the jail. It's in all the housing units. And there's hundreds of saves every year as well between EMS, fire and law enforcement. And so it's just, it's just been a devastating drug. And so with that, uh, we created a fentanyl crisis response team a few months ago. And the focus is on the drug dealers and it's, and it's a more of a holistic approach. We're working with treatment. We're working with H, uh, with health services. We're working, uh, with, uh, the schools to try to educate kids and stop that first use. I think that's so critical with stopping that first use because this drug is so addictive. It's very, very hard for people to get off it. And so we've, we've, uh, have a five, uh, person, five detectives assigned to this team, a sergeant, a lieutenant, and also a, a detection dog. And they've made some really great cases. We're working closely with the United States Attorney's Office out of San Jose. And they're committed to prosecuting a dealer for either manslaughter or homicide when somebody in our community dies from fentanyl overdose. And so they've already have accepted a couple of cases and we're, we're going to keep working with them. Because as the DA said, the state laws is not that, not that tough right now, whereas federal laws is, is much more serious. Uh, we did open the sobering center a few months ago and we're currently diverting between a hundred and seventy-five and two hundred people a month from the main jail to the sobering center, our partners, Janus, Santa Cruz. And they're doing a, a great job and they're also providing mat services. And so when somebody leaves the main jail, they can walk right over to the sobering center and get started on that and, and getting enrolled in some treatment and some programs. And then our DNA laboratory was just completed and we're really excited about that. We're in the hiring phase now. Uh, these are scientists, so they're, they're, they're very, uh, hard to recruit and, and bring on, but, but we're, we're making progress there. And we're thinking that somewhere in the next eighteen to twenty-four months, we'll be actually, uh, certified and processing DNA. And then the last thing I want to touch on is we are working close, closely with the office of the inspector general. Uh, we meet quarterly with them and then also they call frequently about certain things that come up. And so we're, we have a very good relationship going with them and so far the program's working well. So you, you guys, we, uh, are very aware of our services, but we're basically broken up into four different groups. The law enforcement side, which is under operations, administration, corrections and court security. And I just want to share crime rates with you guys because, uh, I, I know that sometimes there's talk out there that Santa Cruz is a dangerous town or, uh, Santa Cruz County is a dangerous area. But for unincorporated Santa Cruz County, which I think the slides had, said had about a hundred and thirty-two thousand people living in unincorporated Santa Cruz County. You can see our violent crime rate is, is less than half of the state average. Those are, those are crimes per one thousand county residents and one thousand state residents. And so obviously the, the state average is four point six six and we're under two. And then you go over to the overall crime rate and we're about thirty percent of the state average in unincorporated Santa Cruz County. And just to look at it a little bit differently, Kathy, if you can go to the next slide, you can see right before prison realignment, uh, Santa Cruz County, not cities, but unincorporated Santa Cruz was about twenty-seven crimes per one thousand people between violent crime and, uh, and property crime. And so that number has been reduced all the way down to eight point four now. So we're, we're, we're proud of those numbers and we're going to keep working on that crime rate and push it down. And then, uh, lastly, on the data, just sharing our, our homicides in, in the county. Uh, as you can see, we've gone eleven, in the last eleven years, we've only had, uh, two years where there was five or more homicides. And if you go back to the eighties and nineties, uh, particularly the mid-eighties to, to late eighties, uh, there was a lot of double-digit numbers during that time. And, but we brought that, that number, uh, down significantly. And now I'm going to turn it over to Kathy to talk about the budget request.
Um, our department is looking at a three point four million dollar increase. And primarily that's continued, that is continuing the funding for all of our staff, operations and correctional officers. Our current requested changes includes the DNA lab associated costs, including staffing, continuing the contracts and safety equipment that is much needed for our officers. Our revenue key drivers is continued funding from our grants and all the initiatives, including CalAim path funding. Our expenditure key drivers is salaries and benefits. And then the continued, uh, funding for our programs and contracts associated with those.
And Chris, you're going to talk about the funded staffing.
That's right. Good morning, Chair Cummings, morning board. I thought I'd touch on a few things. The first being, uh, our staffing. Uh, when it comes to deputy sheriffs and sergeants, a hundred and forty-eight funded positions is what we have. One vacancy we're sitting on. Uh, we have seven in the police academy right now and then four in field training. And then we have a, a, uh, nine that are on leave. With regards to our correctional staff, a hundred and sixteen total funded positions and then seventeen vacancies. Uh, seven in training right now, nine on leave. In terms of civilian staff, eighty-one funded positions, four vacancies there. And then, uh, two of those on leave. Um, in, important and in, in terms of recruitment strategies, our bonuses that we've been giving out. So I thought I'd touch on that. It's something we've been working with personnel on, uh, right now in terms of our lateral bonus for deputy sheriff. We've given out one over the, over this fiscal year that we're in right now. Uh, we anticipate, we, it, it's really unclear whether or not we're going to see another one, uh, in, in terms of a lateral bonus, but, uh, but that, that program is still there. In terms of hiring bonuses, uh, we have not given one out. We have not given one out to a deputy sheriff position, but we anticipate one in twenty-four, twenty-five. And, uh, and then in terms of correctional officers, no lateral bonuses given out on that program, thirteen hiring bonuses though. That, so that has been successful with anticipated sixteen coming up in the next fiscal year. And then in terms of referral bonuses for folks that get referred by existing correctional officers, we've seen four bonuses as far as just our existing CEOs, uh, recruiting others. Uh, in, just, this is just a snapshot of kind of where our funded positions have been, uh, year over year, going back from fiscal year two thousand and six to seven and moving all the way to, uh, this coming, uh, fiscal year. So that kind of gives you, gives you an idea of that. And then in terms of recruitment strategies, again, I'm not going to read all these. We, we worked with personnel on a number of things to really boost our staffing. Uh, critically, especially, especially for us is our correction staffing where our folks have been on mandatory overtime. And then increasing our numbers of deputy sheriffs. Uh, but two things I wanted to touch on was a combined written, physical and interview test day that we've implemented. Basically, it's a one-stop shop for folks to show up on one day to, to interview, do, uh, or to, rather to take the test, to do a physical agility test and then to interview, uh, taking time, you know, it, it's more convenient for them. It's obviously more convenient for us, but that saves days and weeks, obviously, in the recruiting process. And then importantly, something that we kind of found, uh, was that we, it was our written test. And so looking at equitable, um, testing methods, we, we found that, uh, there was another method out there. It, up until just a few months ago, it was a written test that really allowed for people to come in and apply and, and get, and kind of walk their way through the application process and the hiring process. Uh, but for folks with English as not their primary language, we saw, or folks that aren't just really focused on grammar, that could be an exclusionary factor. And so what we did is we ended up finding a scenario-based testing process, uh, that's accepted by post, accepted by BSCC that we can use for recruiting both correctional staff and deputy sheriffs. And so it's scenario-based. It focuses on common sense answers to questions. And so it kind of gets rid of this whole, if you're not, you know, super familiar with grammar and, and, and English, obviously, it provides an alternative to that. Uh, in terms of future considerations, your board's aware that we're working through CalAim and kind of that's a challenging program, but we're working through that. Uh, we are, we also are, uh, increasing our medical and mental health services to incarcerated folks at the jail. Importantly, what your board's going to hear on June fourth is for the first time in twelve years, we're moving away from Well Path. This is a, a big change for us. It's a welcome change, frankly, uh, and we're hoping for, for better service with NAF Care, which your board will hear more about that come June fourth. Um, and then in terms of, the sheriff touched on it with our DNA lab, that, that lab is built now as the process of staffing it. It is a challenging, uh, recruitment for this, for not only the DNA supervisor, but also for the criminalists that'll end up, uh, running that lab. And then as the sheriff mentioned, we're hoping to, uh, credit the lab within eighteen to twenty-four months. Uh, the sheriff mentioned the recovery center, which was open in February. And then in terms of just two things we're looking at doing over the coming fiscal year is, is updating our main jail locker room. It's, uh, it, it, it is in a state of, of, uh, it's in pretty sad shape, I should say, with, with both correctional officers sharing lockers as well as sewage backing up into the locker room when we have plumbing issues at the main jail. And then, uh, lastly, as far as, um, as far as, uh, future considerations as an outdoor wellness area, we, we surveyed a number of staff and just giving corrections folks who work the main jail an opportunity to kind of get outside the building, to have some fresh air, just taking a break from the, from the, the routine nature of corrections work and giving them an opportunity to get outside and, and have, and take a break and have their lunch. So, uh, those are, those are future considerations and I'll turn it back over to the sheriff.
So our, our request is for your board to approve our proposed budget for the sheriff coroner's office, including any supplemental materials.
All right. Thank you for the presentation, for all the work you provide and service you provide for our community. Okay. So at this time, um, I will open up to the public, um, for any member who's here present, who has not already commented on this item. Like you will be given two minutes and you're, uh, able to approach the podium.
Thank you, Becky Steinbrenner. Um, you had a slide there that mentioned Prop one seventy-two money, but it came and went really fast. Can you please, uh, clarify how much Prop one seventy-two money, uh, your department is going to be getting this year? I also didn't see, um, uh, uh, separation of county service area money that the sheriff's department receives. There is county service area money allocated for the sheriff's department, but I didn't see that clearly included. I would like to ask that, um, your budget includes providing bottled water to the inmates at the Roundtree Detention Center. Their water is contaminated. Their well is contaminated. And, uh, they have no way to go get any water from another place. So the, uh, County Water Advisory Commission received a report from this from Mr. Beaton, the General Services, that confirmed it is contaminated. And the commission wrote a letter to your board to ask that bottled water be provided to the, the people, staff and inmates at Roundtree. So please include that in your budget. They, I would like to ask if the, um, the, if counties, the rape victims in the county are still, whether they can be, have their exams done locally or if they're still having to go over the hill. We've talked about this in the past, but I'd like an update on that if that is related to the DNA forensic lab that is not yet open. I'd also like to ask, um, that there be, uh, mental health, uh, training with these new recruits. Your board has heard from Mr. and Mrs. Arlt, whose son was killed in the city of Santa Cruz, but there was also a case in Corletos where a young man was killed simply because the officers panicked. And we need to have someone like the city has, uh, behind these officers so that they are getting, uh, second eyes and ears. And then my last request is that there be sign language available for, uh, or somehow a rec, training so that officers responding have recognition when someone is deaf and they're not, uh, being able to respond to questioning in a normal way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning. My name is Susan Cohen, a member of Serv Santa Cruz County. And I really hope you think about what truly keeps people safe, considering the forty-seven million dollar sheriff's budget. Um, sheriff said that violent crime rate in our county is half the state average and is, has reduced. Um, and, um, we're wondering why continue with the same staffing numbers when crime numbers are down. What keeps people safe is providing the kinds of things that allow people to live healthy, connected lives. It's not news to you that we need to invest more in housing in our county, but making the connection between the number of people who end up in our jail repeatedly because they are lacking housing and the supportive mental health services needed to hold on to that housing has to be accounted for. What keeps people truly safe to live healthy, connected lives are things like parks and programs for families and children, which are seriously lacking in South County. What keeps people really, truly safe is addressing what causes people to use drugs like ethanol to the extreme that causes harm to themselves and others that leads them to be housed in our jail. Over fifty percent of people in our county jails are suffering from mental health issues. And we know it costs less to provide housing and services than house them in jail. Not saying we don't need to have a place for people who commit violent crimes, but we don't, we need to question what we currently have. When they're released from jail, there's nowhere for them to go in many cases. There are not enough services or they can't connect services because there, we don't know where they end up. And what keeps children safe, you mentioned concern about children, we must restore those contact visits. The board, you voted on them in twenty nineteen. Somebody mentioned the Bill of Rights earlier. And, um, so you've already determined this is crucial. And, um, if, if, if there, you say there aren't funds to pay, again, the reduced numbers have gone from forty percent, reduced numbers of, of thirty-one percent reduced jail beds. Um, and seventy percent, eighty percent are not, are on pre-trial. Some, some of those funds must be able to be used for other purposes. Thank you. And that's also recruiting staff for mental health with mental health training.
Thank you.
Seriously, thank you.
Is there any other member of the public here who'd like to address us on this item? Seeing none in person, I'd like to go to the clerk to see if there's any folks online.
Yes, Chair, we do have speakers online. Call and user two, your microphone is now available.
Excuse me, uh, Marilyn Garrett, I want to express my, um, criticism of so-called wellness checks. As I witnessed one and Supervisor Koenig, I put my complaint form in your hands in person. Uh, so I'll just go through a little bit of this. And what I witnessed was frightening and, um, looked like a military-like assault on my friend in SoCal. Uh, this was on Friday, July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. There were, uh, about three sheriff vehicles, uh, an ambulance in the area where we had celebrated a summer solstice the month earlier. And I came to deliver requested groceries to my friend. And there were two of us and, um, my friend was, uh, held down, injected, uh, taken off in an ambulance and, uh, handcuffed. Went to telecare. Uh, my concluding comment on my report, violent force injection wellness checks in quotes should be prohibited. There should be a full independent investigation of the violation of citizens' health and human rights. And I know there have been complaints about telecare, uh, this, um.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett.
Bernie, your microphone's now available.
Uh, once again, good morning, Chair and Board. Um, yeah, I think my comment around this is going to be, how can the county save money? Uh, I believe Mr. Koenig asked that question yesterday to the public defender's office. Um, then, uh, I would like to see it asked here. Um, I would have loved to see it asked at the DA's office too, right? But approbation, right, and all those things. But one thing that I believe where the county can save some money, especially now during this, uh, budget deficit and crisis and cuts happening everywhere and kind of just the budget overlook, um, seems a little kind of dire, right? Is, uh, really thinking about deactivating, uh, empty units, right? Uh, I've been saying it. Um, and I know yesterday during the probation's office, uh, presentation, right? Uh, there was mention, you know, that we can't, uh, shut down and save money by closing like one or two beds or something. But I think this is a different circumstance, you know, at Roundtree, there is an empty unit. There is a, there's many empty, uh, cells in the complete system of the jail here in this county. But I just want to speak to, uh, Roundtree. Um, one of those units is empty, is closed. Uh, it was reported that because it was lack, the lack of staffing, but I think it's just, uh, the lack of folks, uh, going through the system and being housed in jails, right? So I think that's something that we should consider. Um, you know, if, if at least just for this year, what, how much money, how much, uh, reinvestment, uh, can the county make, you know, by closing and, and, uh, again, what does that formula look like? Um, I'd leave that up to the budget folks, you know, but those are my comments, close down the empty unit at Roundtree.
Kathy, your microphone's now available.
Hello, um, my name's Kathy Last, I'm in Aptos, California. Um, I appreciate the work that the Public Safety Department does here in Santa Cruz. However, I want to, um, push back on the notion that this is the only department that, um, that is, that participates with public safety. Um, I, by the time that things become to policing and punishment, it's, it's a little bit too late. So I want to put as much sacred, um, protection around the health and human services parts of the budget and, um, push back that policing and punishment is not what ultimately keeps us safe. So I wanted to, just to remove any notion of sacredness around policing and, um, and punishment when it comes to considering how to keep us safe and in terms of considering how we should spend our money. Thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board and want to thank members of the public for the comments. And just wondering, um, Chair Part of some of the questions that were brought up by the community, maybe we can touch on. I know there was some mention about Prop one seventy-two funds and the county service area funding and water issues at Roundtree. Maybe we can start there in terms of responses that, that maybe you can give to those questions.
So our Prop one seventy-two funding is somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen million, I think. And then CSA thirty-eight is another two or three million, I believe, but I don't, we don't, I don't have that in front of me right now.
And, and then, uh, and then water issues came up at Roundtree.
Yeah, and then according to general services, based on the letter that I was given, and I, I believe it to be accurate, is that the, the water, it contains a small amount of a certain, whatever it is they're concerned about. But, um, under whatever the governing body is, is still considered potable. So that, that's my best concern.
Right. We've got Michael Beaton here, he might be able to speak to that as well.
Uh, thank you, Board. Michael Beaton, Director of General Services. Uh, we do have a water well tested quarterly at the Roundtree Correctional Facility. The water well testing did, uh, identify prevalence of a chemical called PFAS. It is well below the state's mandatory level for drinking water, so it is safe to drink.
Thank you. Um, and then I, I think what one of the members of the public was trying to get to is the, I think it's the sexual assault response team that I think at one point had been closed down in Santa Cruz County, but then has been reopened. That's my understanding, but maybe you could speak to that as well.
So we, we had a nursing shortage and that program was temporarily taken over to Santa Clara County, but it's been back here locally for at least three years, maybe, maybe four years.
Yeah.
And, uh, they even have a, a, a new facility too. So, um, we, uh, Dr. Lauren Zepro from my office operates and runs that program and, uh, it's, it's going very well.
Great. And then, um, and that was my understanding as well that had been brought back online. And I think it's just helpful to point that out so people understand that that program does exist, uh, here back in Santa Cruz County. Um, the mental health training for officers, I know that there's the Mental Health Liaison Program with the Sheriff's Department, uh, but maybe you could speak to that as well.
Yeah, I think the person might have been talking about two different things, but I, but I think she was talking about the mental health liaisons that, uh, are assigned to the sheriff's office that actually ride with our patrolman people. And I believe Santa Cruz has, uh, Santa Cruz Police has two, I think, Watsonville has one and we have two. And it's a great program, um, but I think the, the county's talking about maybe transitioning to, uh, a different model. And that, that might be more, we might hear about that more down the line.
Right. Um, and then I guess, um, there's been discussion about capacity. And then just, and I also just want to think, think the opportunity when we're talking about jail capacity. Now I've been able to go to visit all the jails with the exception of the juvenile detention center. And so I want to thank Chief Dan Freitas for, and your, your staff for being available. Uh, because visiting the jails really does provide a different perspective and understanding of what the current situation is of. But, um, members of the public have brought capacity at the jail and closing certain units and, and had comments around that. And so I'm just wondering if you could speak to that as well.
So m- most of our costs are in labor. And whether we have twenty people in a housing unit or thirty, the labor costs are about the same. And then medications costs are roughly the same, food services is roughly the same. And those are all big-ticket items in terms of our, our corrections budget. Um, but think about if you were running, let's just say you were running a school and you had, one year you had fifteen kids in class and your costs were a hundred thousand dollars. And the next year you had twenty-five kids in class and your costs were roughly the same. It's, it's very similar like that in corrections. And then we have a whole classification system where we can't put, put certain people with others. And so that kind of dilutes the population sometimes. But I remember just a few years ago when the main jail had like four hundred and eighty people in it and I was getting complaint after complaint about people sleeping on floors and in bunks and, uh, in day rooms. And now that there's ample room, people are complaining that there's too much room, right? So, uh, you know, we, you, you don't want your jail running at a hundred percent all the time. That's how mistakes are made. And so like the industry standard is between eighty and ninety percent so that there's a little bit of breathing room in there for not only the incarcerated population, but also the folks that work there too. And so is our population low right now? Yeah, it is, but it's a, it's an evolving system, so we don't know what's coming tomorrow either.
Right. And I guess that, that also just highlights, um, the fact that a lot of the diversion techniques that the county has implemented are actually helping to keep more people out of the jails, which is, you know, kind of what everybody's been asking for.
Yeah. And I don't think they, uh, a lot of people fully understand, but, but sixty percent of all jail bookings are misdemeanors. So say we book ten thousand people a year, six thousand are misdemeanors and our, our main jail population is ninety-eight percent felonies. So the point is, is those people all, they get, they get fingerprinted, photographed, and then they get released. They're, we're not holding, uh, a person who is doing, doing low-level crime.
Right. And I guess the last question, because it came up a lot, was around the contact visits. I mean, we had a long line of speakers who were here today and I think all of us have been getting emails about that as an issue. And so I'm just wondering if you could maybe speak to that.
Sure. And you, you got to put it in a little bit of context in that in twenty twenty, CDPH, Governor Newsom, everybody shut down all concrete living environments, right? Uh, we, you couldn't have, we couldn't have programming in the jail facilities. We couldn't have, uh, uh, in-person visits in the jail for about two years. And then that was lifted and now we had this fentanyl surge. And so I'm super concerned about that drug getting in the jail. And there's already been a few instances of a getting in the main jail. But in this budget that, that we're talking about today, we do have a body scanner built in for the Roundtree facility, uh, where, where we can, uh, operate that, that body scanner out there. And, um, but the, the, the concern is, it's mostly primarily around staffing. I mean, we have, we're at seventy percent of staff right now. Our people are working five, sometimes six, twelve-hour days a week. And so, uh, we do have a plan to, to begin implementing the program sometime around August or September. And, uh, Chief Freitas has additional information on that if you want to hear it. But it's, uh, the, the, these aren't things we take lightly. I, I, I get it. We, we want our inmates to be healthier. We want them to be, to have family time or kid time. We're all parents ourselves. But when you're, when you're working staff five or six days a week and people are leaving in droves because they can go work in another county and only work three days a week, uh, we, we got to, we have to do some things where we're, we're not only protecting our incarcerated population, but we're protecting our employees as well.
Great, thank you. Um, so I'm going to stop right there with the, the comments that we heard from the public and then I'll bring it to the board, see if there's other, any other questions or comments that board members might have. And I'll start with Supervisor Koenig.
Yeah, thank you, Sheriff Hart and, uh, the entire sheriff's office team. Um, you know, it was mentioned that the sort of law enforcement alone is not the answer. And, um, I think that you guys do a good job of sort of understanding that and representing that within the community and taking a much more holistic view of your role. Um, I mean, I see that in all of the, um, public outreach that you guys do, whether it's events like trunk or treat, which I mean, probably the biggest, uh, trick or treat event in the, the whole county, if, uh, if not beyond. Um, so many smiling faces there. Um, but then also a lot of the, um, just town halls, um, that you guys have hosted and I've been able to, to join both at the summit, uh, in SoCal and Live Oak. Um, and, you know, just really available to the community. Um, and I think, um, you know, offer sort of, uh, support and, uh, role, uh, act as role models in addition to, of course, uh, upholding our laws. So really appreciate, uh, your approach to law enforcement. And, and really, um, you continue to build on that, right? And so I'll just mention, for example, um, uh, working with Chief Ainsworth on a handle with care program, which is really the idea of can we give, um, our, our deputies even more information when approaching a case, uh, where someone with, um, uh, you know, a disability or mental health issue, uh, is involved so that we can further reduce, uh, the risk of a negative interaction there. And I just have to say, so this was an idea brought to me by constituent. Uh, I brought it to Chief Ainsworth and I was just incredibly impressed by, um, his embracing of the program and looking at ways that we can, uh, introduce it quickly. And again, I think it speaks to, um, the fact that your department is always looking for ways to improve. Um, and so, um, now I want to talk a little bit about the correctional officer issue. I'm, I'm really glad to hear, uh, that there's money in this budget to update the main jail locker room. Um, I mean, our working conditions really dictate, uh, how we feel about our job. Um, and of course, we're going to overcome this issue with, um, you know, really a significant amount of turnover among correctional officers. It's a, it's a great place to start, is the working environment, um, to both in, in main jail and of course outdoors at the wellness space. Um, and, you know, of course, we've heard, I've heard a lot about, uh, being able to offer contact visits. And I mean, it sounds like, uh, we're, we're working towards being able to offer that again. And, uh, you know, I think as, as, uh, Sheriff Hart just said, this really is an issue that in many ways cuts both ways because of course we have correctional officers that, uh, many of them can't afford to live in our community. And so they're commuting long distances, whether it's from Salinas or, uh, somewhere in the Central Valley. And so now, uh, they're not going to spend time with their kids because they got to leave before their kids wake up. They get home before or after, long after their kids go to sleep and they're waking up to do it again the next day. And then they get to the weekend when, uh, hey, it's time for the baseball game, but oh, guess what? And then they get to the weekend when, hey, it's time for the baseball game. But oh, guess what? You're called in for mandatory overtime. So, you know, this is, this is just the impact of, I mean, really ultimately our housing crisis in this community and not being able to house the people that work in this community close to their jobs. And, you know, that's then having these cascading effects, of course, on quality of life for inmates. So, you know, I'm glad to hear that personnel has really made some improvements and that we're starting to, you know, even just, you know, basic stuff around testing, I think reaching out to people if they miss a test and trying to offer other times so that we can, we can get more of those positions filled. And I hope that, you know, as a board in the future, we can look at other sort of, you know, maybe it's moving some of those retention bonuses up a little bit sooner, right? I mean, we cycle through, what is it, two thirds of all correctional officers will, will actually leave within the first couple of years and three quarters within the first three years. I mean, that is a huge turnover, which of course has real costs. And I think under Sheriff Clark, he says something like $3 million and.
Three, $3.6 million in training costs between the money that it takes and time it takes to get them through a correctional academy and then the field training once they get back to custody. So $3.6 million investment on essentially 75% loss in terms of those leaving after three years.
Is that like over a certain, like per year or over like a few years or something?
52,000 is the cost to train one correctional officer just to get them as a solo, you know, officer working within custody. So you take that number, multiply it against the folks that leave, that 75% number over three years. And it equates to about 3.6 million on the loss for that, for that investment.
Right. So I think in the future, it would definitely behoove us to look at ways to maybe spend some of that money that we're losing on training, but move up our, our retention bonuses, maybe figure out ways that we can turn that into, you know, some kind of down payment assistance or other ways to make sure that we're getting correctional officers housed. Because what I have heard, you know, working on a, the sort of retention task force with, with you guys is Chief Freitas, you know, I really appreciate all of the concern that you bring to everyone that works in your division and trying to improve the working conditions for correctional officers. What I've heard is people really love the camaraderie and just the overall work culture of our department. And I think that's great. But we are competing against these long commute times and higher salaries in neighboring jurisdictions. And so I think with, with a few tweaks, we can get there. But just, yeah, well, again, we'll, we'll close by just commending your entire department on all the great work. Thanks.
Supervisor Friend.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff Hart and Under Sheriff Clark, in particular for your availability always. You're exceptionally accessible. Your entire department really is. And I think that it's something that is actually more unique in our county than, than we recognize as Supervisor McPherson and I serve both on the CSAC and NACO. It's not necessarily common that the sheriff has a working relationship with their boards of supervisors or their DA. So we have a, we're just used to, I think in this county, a culture where there's a collaborative environment between the electeds and law enforcement and law enforcement and law enforcement. That isn't necessarily the case. But it's a very, I mean, I've watched other budget hearings across the state. This is normally a very contentious moment. This is not a contentious moment. I think we should just take a moment to appreciate the culture that, that your department's created as a result of that. We can continue to praise your department, which I think is deserved, but I think the person that never gets enough praise, but should more is Kathy. Let's be honest. I mean, I've worked with Ms. Samms for over 20 years, if I can admit it, that, that in both of my capacities. And the numbers are always good. The numbers are always clean. You, you're always amazing at helping your team find the, the funding. And, and you know, you've been really one of the unsung heroes of the Sheriff's Department. So I just want you to recognize that you're a huge part of this team. So.
That's nice to say. That's true too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Supervisor McPherson.
Thank you. And I, I just want to repeat again, thank you for implementing what our state constitution says in Article eight, that public safety is our top priority of local government. And thank you for doing that and keeping us safe as we are in Santa Cruz County. I, I really want to thank you too for looking ahead to about the reopening of the Sobering Center, which I was there at the February open house or ribbon cutting. Really, that's a really step forward of some of the issues that people are talking about. And the DNA lab, that's what a year or two away at least, but how much time could that save of you getting results that you want? If it's here and not over there?
So it takes six, about six to 12 months to get DNA returns from the state. And, and those are primarily in homicide cases and sexual assaults. With our own lab, we'll be able to turn it around in 48 to 72 hours.
Phenomenal. That is going to make a huge difference in, you know, we're addressing our public safety issues here. And I know you've been waiting for this for a long time. And, and I was waiting to, for a long time to have some substations in Felton first and now Boulder Creek. I can't tell you how much, how appreciative people are in the San Rosso Valley to have those close at home that they can go to those offices. So thank you very much for doing that. And I knew it started before your time, but you really carried through and expanded it in Boulder Creek. Those people are very, very appreciative of that. On the jail situation, if Proposition 47, which some people want to overturn to make, to result in more felons, do you have any idea of what the impact? We've had a lot of, you know, the jail, there's only half that are being filled or two thirds or whatever the number might be. But if Proposition 47 is overturned, and it might be in November, that would have an impact on the jail, wouldn't it?
It absolutely would. There's, we're going to see an increase, increase in the incarcerated population. We just haven't done the math yet to really look exactly what we're looking at, but there was, there will be a creep going up.
Yeah. As you've heard too, the people are concerned about the jail. And I, there was a statement made that half of the, 50% of the people in jail are suffering from mental illness. Is there any data to substantiate that?
I think what they're talking about is they're, they're on some sort of mental health medication.
Okay. Well, it's, it's just really impressive of what you've been able to do with what you had and the turnover that you have. And to repeat what Supervisor Friend said, you have a, you're, the attitude is really great in the sheriff's office and under some really pressing and, and situations. The, to update the jail facility, what would that take? Or is there any timeline? That's been talked about for a while, but obviously it's a huge multimillion dollar effort.
It is. And so we're, we're out on an RFP for a needs assessment right now. So that a company that does this kind of work will come in and, and, and look at our jail population, look at our mental health needs, look at our female population and really try to drill down and then give us an idea of what kind of facility that would be. And then what the, what the estimated cost would be as well. So we're really not clear on what the cost is. The next step is getting this, this needs assessment completed.
Well, it's a big need. It's a big challenge, I know. And it's something that's going to take a long time to correct, if you will. And I just want to say thank you to everything that you've done to make our law enforcement response efforts to this. We don't know how, five years ago, we weren't even talking about fentanyl. And now you say it's, it's by the biggest immediate crisis that we have. And how you respond to that as quickly as possible, all this, it will help, I think, with the lab situation and all. I'm, I think you're, you're trying to get ahead of the curve as quickly as you can. You should, you, you deserve a lot of credit for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Clark for, I mean, Sheriff Hart for being here and Mr. Clark for being here. First of all, I'd like to commend you on your revised hiring practices with the one-stop mental test, physical and written, and the new hiring practice with the tests as well. I, I seen on the report that we have 16 full-time detention offices for next fiscal year. Is that what I read?
Thought we had 16 vacancies.
Oh, vacancies. Are we, do we have new, new full-time employees that we're getting this fiscal year?
Not for correctional. Seventeen. Yeah. Right. So, yeah, we are constantly in, in hiring mode. But we could hire five and get them trained. In the meantime, another five leave or go to another agency or, or, you know, whatever it is they're going to do. So it's, it's really hard to catch up. Part of that was COVID because we didn't hire for over a year. This, the county wasn't hiring because of, of the pandemic. So we're, we're also kind of playing catch up from that as well.
So it's the, if we're able to hire folks, we'd be able to end this with this new body scanner, which by the way, ID, does IDs fentanyl, the body scanner? It will show other drugs?
It will show an abnormality in the scan, much like an airport scan would.
Okay. So with, if we're able to hire people, we'd be able to get folks at Roundtree Blaine to visitations?
Yeah. If, if we, if we can get even to close to full staffing, even another eight or nine hires without anybody else leaving, then we could probably get there. According to Chief Freitas, it's going to take about four, four overtime shifts per day or four positions a day.
Okay. When are we, we're planning to have those visitations like after school kind of hours, three to five or something?
Mostly weekends.
Weekends. Okay. That's even better. So I, I've heard the figure, I think it was 68 or almost 70% folks in, in the detention are dealing with either behavioral health and/or addiction. The question was asked of officers and, and mental health training. Do detention officers also get that mental health training?
I believe they do.
Given the numbers.
Morning. Dan Freitas, I'm the Chief Deputy of Corrections. Our staff do receive mental health training. They receive ICAT training, which is integrated communications and tactics during a critical incident. We're actually one of the few jails in the, in the nation that are doing that. And we're recently recognized by the Police Executive Research Foundation, PERF, for being one of the, on the forefront of that. A lot of that has to do with Under Sheriff Clark really wanting to, to get our Corrections Bureau involved. But yes, they do receive mental health training.
Thank you. And I guess the last question is, have we looked at, you know, with the forensics department now open, have we looked, looked at the numbers that Watson, Capitola, Santa Cruz and Scotts Valley have in terms of cases where it could create a positive fiscal impact on us?
Yes. And, you know, we've developed a fee schedule that, that we're going to apply for that. And we, we know about roughly what our cases will be. And then we will take in extra work as there's, as there's criminals available to do the work.
Is it limited just to our county or can we?
If, I think our county is going to max this group out because there's, there's only going to be four criminals and supervisor. But if there was, if say we weren't completing the workload that we thought we were, yeah, we could send it out to Monterey or San Benito because neither one of them have a lab as well.
Well, thank you. That gives my comments.
All right. Well, thank you again for, for your service and all your hard work. I do have a few additional questions. And first, I just want to start by really congratulating you all and thanking you on establishing the Fentanyl Crisis Response Team. A lot of folks in the community have been, you know, really concerned with fentanyl and how it's impacting people throughout our community. And I'm just wondering alongside, well, I'll stick with this topic for, for now. I'm just wondering if there was any press release or anything that's gone out about that, or if there's a way for us to be able to amplify that message on our newsletters, because I think a lot of people would really appreciate just knowing that there's this team out there that's doing this work and really trying to reduce the amount of fentanyl coming into our community. So I'm just wondering if there's ways that we can work with you all to help amplify that message.
So about two and a half weeks ago, we put out a press release and then a video on our, our social media. And a number of media outlets responded that did some interviews. So we're, we're trying to push it out to the community so that they're aware of it.
Great. Well, we can, I guess we can contact Jason Hoppin and try to get a, get that press release so that we can put in our newsletters as well and let folks know. So, yeah. But along with that, I also had some folks who were concerned about fentanyl and wondering if there's any kind of data on the county's website about fentanyl related deaths or, you know, fentanyl overdoses. I think some folks are just interested in knowing like, how big of a problem is it in the community? And so I'm wondering if, you know, if there's any information that's available.
I, I know that we've, maybe Chief Ainsworth can answer. We track our death investigations that we put on a public facing website. But do we, are we tracking the fentanyl solely?
Good morning, Chair Cummings and Board. No, we don't produce the, the data for the overdose deaths. We do produce data from our fentanyl response team, the amount of narcotics that they're collecting, the, the weapons associated with that. And now the number of overdose deaths investigations that they're conducting.
Okay, that's helpful. Along those lines, I do just want to also highlight, you know, the reduction in homicides that we're seeing in the community. I think that some folks see, you know, what is, what is actually poverty in terms of people who are experiencing homelessness and kind of commit, like they connect that with criminal activity when the, you know, the reality is that homicides are really low in Santa Cruz County. And when people are suffering, that's, you know, a symptom of change that needs to happen with our community. But I do want to, like, being for somebody who wasn't originally from Santa Cruz, and I just contrast that with, you know, being from Chicago where last year, you know, we had three homicides here. They had 617 and 2,450 shootings. And so if people want to think about Santa Cruz not being a safe community, it's like, there's many other places you could live that are not nowhere near as safe as this place. And I think that's a lot of, you know, the work that you all do to make sure that this is a safe community. And so I just want to thank you so much for ensuring that this is a safe place for people to live. Again, also want to share my appreciation for the Sobering Center and how it's being used as diversion. And the reopening of Blaine Street, which last year at this time of year, there were a lot of people coming to us saying, we want Blaine Street reopen. You all have done a good job with that, even with the limited staffing capacity you have. And, you know, my hope is that we can continue to just see improvements over time that are going to really make people feel like that they're being heard and, and really improving the lives of people who are in, in our jail system. I guess the last question I would have is maybe just to take you up on the offer to have Chief Freitas come up and talk a little bit more about the contact visits. Because, I mean, that's overwhelmingly what, what I'm getting, what I'm hearing about. I'm extremely supportive of wanting to see that happen, but understanding the constraints that you all are faced with around staffing, overtime, and trying to really be able to, you know, reinstitute this in a way that's going to be beneficial for everyone. And so I'm just wondering if you could speak a little bit more to that, since it's been such a big topic for our community.
Yes. Good morning, Chair. Yeah. So we've been, for the last several months, we've been looking at a plan for what that would look like. We've, we're exploring the option right now of one, one day per month per facility. So Blaine Street would have one day per month, as well as Roundtree would have one day per month for that contact visiting. Per facility, we need at least two people on overtime to help cover that and safely monitor those visits. And so that's kind of what we're looking at. And so really, if we do that model, it'll be four days, or I'm sorry, four positions per month, which we believe is a lot more achievable than having it two days per weekend and every week, which would be significantly higher and have a much higher impact on our mandatory overtime shift. Right now, we have shifts or correctional officers that are working anywhere from five to six mandatory overtime shifts every six weeks. So on average, they're working at least one mandatory overtime shift. That number varies from shift to shift. And it's dependent upon like sick vacation time, training, people at the academy, things like that. So, and the Sheriff Hart touched on, we're also trying to do it safely. Before, when we had contact visiting, we didn't have fentanyl as much. We didn't have the epidemic that we have right now. And so really trying to prevent fentanyl from coming into the jail is a significant concern, which is why we've requested the, the body scanner down at Roundtree. We're hoping to get two additional detection canines to assist with that. And we're revamping a lot of our procedures as Supervisor Conick touched on. We've had significant turnover. So a lot of our staff has never had contact visiting. So we're, we need to train our staff to adequately monitor that and try to keep all of our inmates safe. It only takes a little bit of fentanyl getting into our, to our facilities to really have a dangerous impact on our, on our sentenced population.
Right. Well, you know, I think that many of us here on the board are supportive of, you know, all the efforts that you're making towards trying to, you know, the contact visits reestablished. And to the extent that we can be helpful, I mean, even if it's revisiting this at the mid-year budget, you know, depending on what happens with Measure K. You know, I think that many people in the community see this as, you know, a really important thing when it comes to health and wellness of not just the people who are in the jail system, but for their families, for their children. And, and so to the extent that we can be supportive of that, you know, I just want to let you all know that, that I want to be a help player in this and a team player in this. And, and really just thank you all for responding to the community concerns around this issue. I guess the, I do have one more question on that. Is there any role for nonprofit partners to play? We've kind of worked within this, this.
Inside the correctional facility itself.
Okay. Great. And I guess the last thing I'll say, because this is. And I guess the last thing I'll say, because this is not just with the sheriff's department, I think more broadly, when it comes to recruitment and retention. You know, I think as we we start exploring, you know, workforce housing and some of these other issues around housing that we're really taking into account, what are the needs from different departments in terms of what can help retain people in this community? I know recently at the state level, there was some first time home buyer assistance programs. And I was actually looking into it for myself personally. But in those conversations, learned that Alameda County has some first time home buyer programs for their employees. And, you know, to the extent that we can continue to explore what Santa Cruz County has done in the past or what we may be able to do moving forward around, um, you know, housing assistance for whether it's renting or buying to really keep people here for a longer period of time. I think it's something that we should all start thinking about together. So with that, um, I don't have any further questions or comments. And so I'll turn to the boards for an action on this item.
I'll move the recommended actions.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor Friend, second by Supervisor Pearson. And with that, I'll have a roll call vote on the item. I told you guys we'll say the same thing.
Supervisor Koenig.
Hi.
Friend.
Hernandez.
Hi.
McPherson and Cummings.
Hi, that passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Very much.
All right, so we'll take a five minute break, actually. Actually, we'll take a quick break and, uh, we'll come back in about five minutes.
Recording in progress.
Hey, next item on our agenda, item number nine. Consider approval of the twenty twenty four twenty five proposed budget for parks, open space and cultural services, including any supplemental materials and take related actions as outlined in the reference budget documents. And with that, I'll turn over to Jeff Gaffney, Director of Parks and the Park Staff.
Thank you, Chair Cummings and fellow fellow board members. Glad to be here today and we're going to quickly go through the first couple of slides so we can get into the good stuff. There we go. Uh, so for today, we're going to go over our mission, vision, some of the achievements we've had over the last year, eighteen months, some of our budget goals and some of the budget details. And then we'll have, of course, some questions at the end. Our mission and vision. And then, um, and we included into this are also our strategic plan, which was completed in two thousand and eighteen. And then we just updated it with a five year update last fall. And we added the goal of equity. So those goals were reaffirmed and adding the goal of equity was something we all knew we needed to do. I want to talk about our organization a little bit. Our department is a diverse, is very diverse with many different types of programs and sections covering a wide way of front way, array of functions within all areas of our department. We have continued to develop, maintain a mosaic of open space, parks, arts, cultural and heritage sites, as well as recreation programs across our entire county. Whether these places are physical land or just moments in time, they serve as refuge for the community we serve and places for us to educate them about and how we can better coexist together in places for people to find physical and mental health. On the forefront of developing these spaces and programming is our diverse and dedicated management team, led by our Deputy Director Rebecca Hurley, sitting next to me, who is by far the longest serving county parks manager on our team. She has also taken on the role of managing the natural resource management program. And now she is going to share some of her recent achievements.
Good morning, Chair Cummings and fellow supervisors. We, over the past fiscal year, we have completed a number of achievements, one of them being at the reimagining project at Willbrook County Park in honor of Sergeant Damon Gutsweiler. That was a three component project where we enhanced the entry at Baseline Drive with a flagpole installation. We renovated the play area with new playground features and a porn place surfacing. We also included a new newly constructed memorial seating area in honor of the fallen deputy. We were able to unveil this feature on March thirteenth with support of the Deputy Sheriff's Association, as well as County Park Friends who helped fundraise for it. Uh, we've also completed many non infrastructure projects, including updating the park strategic plan, as mentioned earlier, updating the monarch habitat butterfly habitat management plan at Moran Lake. And also presented to the board of supervisors on April thirtieth, completion of the multi agency collaborative North Coast facilities management plan. Parks is also fortunate enough to receive discretionary funding this past fiscal year to support the complete overhaul renovations of baseball field B at Polo Grounds County Park. Around parks programming, we are excited to state that we have reinstated and continued many new and previously established adult programs, including dance classes as seen here at Uptown Village Park. And also and and also now provide new Tai Chi classes that are actually run by our own staff that on their own accord went out and got certified to teach that for the county. We've also returned to our previously outstanding enrollment numbers in our aquatic and youth programs, with youth program being specifically supported through the Paharo Valley Unified School District's Extended Learning Opportunity Program that provides after school programs and summer camp programs, as well as youth volunteer programs, one of which I am an alma mater of.
Thank you, Deputy Director Hurley. Throughout my career, I've been witness to volunteers providing hope and energy. They are the long term investment in our community and they are the people who keep us grounded in the needs of the community. I am thrilled. We have fully recovered from the loss of volunteers and volunteer program and we endured as a result of the pandemic. As you can see, as of right now, the last year, we had over seven hundred and sixty four volunteers and eleven thousand six hundred plus hours of volunteer work. That equates to about four hundred and thirty four thousand dollars worth of resources that have been contributed to this county on behalf of people who just want to be contributors to their community. These numbers do not reflect the amount of impact that our nonprofit partner, County Park Friends, has made with their staff and volunteers as well. As we look towards what the budget request we're looking for is, it is also a status quo. We're looking at an anticipated contribution increase as status quo, four hundred and seventy one thousand dollars from the general fund with a fifty three thousand dollar increase from revenue that will be generating within the department. As you can see, we are actually at just about forty eight percent of our department is using general fund money. So the rest of it, the remainder of fifty two percent is non general fund. Want to talk about for a minute just some of the budget goals. From a budget perspective, we strive for fiscal sustainability as well as natural resource sustainability. We continue to create new programs while working with partners, all with equity as our core value. We know that resilience does not only exist in the lands we care for, but also within the way we approach our budget. So I'll go over those numbers again, just to be clear. The first thing we'll be asking for is one refunded park maintenance worker three. That was an unfunded position that we're asking to refund without general fund money. We want to eliminate a pilot program for program budgeting. We also want to increase our extra help staffing that will be funded by the increase in revenues we discussed. So that would be a total of fifty five fully funded positions going from the fifty four. I want to take a moment and just illustrate one thing for you. I know that we've talked about a lot of different stats this morning in different departments. Over the last twenty years, our our maintenance staff, the people who you see in the field the most, who get the most work done for people to see, have gone from twenty nine positions back in two thousand and four to if approved today, will have twenty eight positions. So we've taken quite the ride up and down, as you can see, over the years. And I think it's a great moment that we are actually getting almost back to where we were twenty years ago. The only downside to that, of course, is that we've increased the number of areas that we're responsible for and the number of parks. So we've gone from sixty of those to now seventy four. That's over the last twenty years. And I think we have done a great job of incorporating, as I've said, some of the volunteer work to supplement it, as well as some of the other activities we've incorporated, plus our nonprofit partnerships. I'm sorry, I was going to just say one thing before we get into this. I know that, uh, C O Palacios had mentioned, um, measure K being embargoed. And despite those that embargo, we do still have some restricted funds. I think, uh, Budget Manager Pimental also mentioned that as well. So what you're going to see here, um, that I'm going to turn over to Deputy Director Hurley, are some of the areas that we're going to still be able to use for a handful of projects. This is also in partnership with some of our nonprofit partners and also some of the restricted funding. Deputy Director Hurley.
Thank you. So some of the upcoming projects that we have for this fiscal year is looking at what type of interim amenities we can put in at the South County Park located at Whiting Road. We recently conducted a survey and we're now analyzing the results of what the public would like to see put out there as just one component. And we are hoping that we can open it to the public for use in the next six to twelve months. We're also working with the Santa Cruz Resource Conservation District on creating a natural resource management plan for Anna Jean Cummings County Park. Staff is going to use that as a template to then take it and make create natural resource management plans for other regional and large open spaces. We are very fortunate to have received a Habitat Conservation Fund grant to construct the connection trail from Quail Hollow County Park to the Pace Family Wilderness. This is going to allow the public to finally access public space that they were no, they were previously inaccessible to. We're also putting in a plumbed restroom at Hidden Beach County Park adjacent to the playground. We will be renovating Floral Floral Park Playground, um, putting in a new play feature, additional landscaping and new inclusive porn place play servicing. We will continue to work towards, um, the work on final design and right away for the rail trail segments ten and eleven that are under the county's jurisdiction. We are planning on bringing to this board on June twenty fifth, the M O U with California Department of Fish and Wildlife to be the first step in, um, the process of transferring that parcel from state ownership to the county, as well as we continue to work with the Santa Cruz Mountain Trail Stewards on what this board approved back in December is the understanding with them to fundraise, design and construct a pump track at Dalton Covered Bridge County Park. I will give it to Director Gaffney to finish up the presentation.
Thank you. So where are we right now? Currently, we are facing increased costs operating and developing parks while climate disasters and their impacts continue to increase as well. We are balancing the need to act as a dedicated land manager and we also balance urban interface with our habitat protection. The mosaic of green space we mentioned earlier is very real and often provides the only safe space for our residents and wildlife, a connected web of resilient corridors and parks for all. This was never more apparent than during the pandemic, as we saw record numbers of people going outside to embrace nature in the outdoor space. As a result, people have become accustomed to having these spaces and the numbers using them have not diminished. We will continue to plan and develop how to maintain and connect our web of green spaces, watersheds and corridors using the latest science and nature based solutions, developing systems that provide for a robust and healthy environment for our community and natural spaces we are trusted to steward and protect. Wanted to just take a quick slide to thank all of the partners that we regularly work with and we continue to find others all the time, trying to accomplish these high goals and standards that we are always wanting to achieve. The last slide for everybody is the overview. Our department's requested twenty four twenty five budget, approve the county parks budget and refund the one unfunded worker three, eliminate the pilot program for program budgeting and increase our extra help staffing, but we'll fund it with the revenues that we bring in. And we're ready for any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much for the presentation and all your hard work. Okay, at this time, we'll open up to the public to see if there's any members of the public who would like to comment on the parks budget who are here in person. Okay, seeing none, we'll go online and see if there's any members of the public online who'd like to comment on the parks budget.
We do have a speaker online. Bernie, your microphone is now available.
Uh, good afternoon, Chair and Board. Honestly, I I I messed up presentation. I had to step out real quick. But if I'm thinking about parks and open spaces, the only comment I'm going to make is thinking about South County. There is a great irrefutable disparity between access to open spaces and parks between North and South County. So, um, I think in South County, we have what the county park. Proximity, there is Scott's Park. There might be another one here and there. um, proximity, there is Scott's Park, um, there might be another one here and there. But, um, yeah, uh, we would like to see, I would like to see, and I think my family and folks in South County would want to see the county invest in developing, creating, maintaining just, uh, county, um, county land, right, um, opened up for, for people to have access. You know, it's just interesting that we, we live, South County only has one access to the beach, right? Uh, and it's surrounded by, by, uh, uh, farm fields, right? It's surrounded by mountains, yet there's, there's no, yeah, there's just a very, there's a lack of, um, open space that can be accessed and utilized. Yeah, and just thinking about equity again, you know, uh, so we need to start implementing the equitable participation and creation of open spaces and parks and all that stuff. So I do appreciate all the work that the, this department does. Uh, thank you.
Very much.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
Okay, well, with that, uh, I'll bring it back to the board for any questions, comments and action. We'll start with Supervisor Friend.
Well, thank you. I, I believe that some of the greatest investments in parks occurred in my district because of our partnership and to me, it just shows, um, that small amounts of county contribution can go a really long way and they also help seed public-private partnerships and public nonprofit partnerships that really brought us over the finish line of unquestionably the largest investments in parks in our, our district in a, in a generation. And so, uh, the Measure K component is, is, uh, really personal because of the commitments we've made to our district for additional improvements. And we're hopeful, um, that we can get this, this issue resolved as quickly as possible because as the caller noted and, and others have noted, it's an essential space for the community to utilize. Uh, it came out of the, coming out of the pandemic, it was clear how much these open spaces are used. Um, a lot of these areas need modernization. It's been quite some time since they've been touched. And again, because of your team's willingness to also do a lot of the labor around it, which really has reduced the cost. I mean, these polo grounds fields are, remain the baseball fields unbelievable and your team deserves so much credit out there. I was glad I was able to go out there while they were doing some of the work. But these are small investments. If you actually think about the discretionary funding, the fifty thousand redo an entire field, uh, the same with the work that we're doing in the bathrooms, these are small county investments that go a long way. So, um, something that Supervisor and Cummings and I, Chair Cummings and I was talking about behind the scenes, it does feel like in bad budget times, parks were always sort of the first that people look at, um, in, in terms of discretionary funding, but, but ironically also during those exact same times, because it doesn't cost anything to use them. Those are the times that people want to use them the most. So I want to make sure that we do everything we can to preserve, uh, the funding and access for, that you provide. So thank you for your work.
To Supervisor Hernandez.
You know, with the, uh, the caller that mentioned about equity in parks and open space, uh, I just wanted to ask if, you know, we could potentially get a plan, not, not affecting to the, the county budgets as much, but get a plan to get more public-private partnership, uh, together so we can move forward with that park. Uh, just the way Supervisor Friend had described, um, hoping that with partners like Land Trust, the, the Park Friends of the Parks and we can get something established there. Is that a possibility?
Oh, for sure. Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, we absolutely have actually signed an agreement with the County Park Friends to help us get more funding for that, specifically the South County Park that we purchased last year, actually. Um, and so that has been a huge lift for us and we're working together with them. We've also met with the Land Trust and we are also talking with the Pajaro Valley Water Resources Management Agency, um, and also with the Fairgrounds. Um, and also as I highlighted in, in my overview, um, how we look at land and open spaces and how we look at parks, um, is three-dimensional nowadays. And how can we tie in potential easements or private land holdings and some of the other things out there to develop and continue to create that mosaic for connected corridors of travel where somebody can step outside their door and be on a, a trail or an open space area within five or 10 minutes. Um, and it's absolutely something we're also working with as far as, um, we're, we're working on a state of the trails plan where we're working with several other partners to, to develop that and what our state of the trails are for our entire county. That takes into account all jurisdictions and then also some of our natural resource management plan. So very much trying to get that park open as quickly as possible because people need it.
And now that you mentioned trails, um, I think me and Supervisor Friend said on a, on a perfma and they had mentioned, the, uh, Army Corps of Engineers had mentioned that we're the first, uh, project that has design with nature program and so about creating trails and making those places accessible. Um, so hopefully we can work together with them as well. I think that's the final phase for the levy project though.
Absolutely. Um, we are, we are working right now. We actually just got a grant from the Coastal Conservancy working on nature-based solutions for mid-county here. And as sea level rise comes in and it affects these lagoons, so it's similar to that project down there. And we absolutely are looking for ways to help in South County in regards to that. And that might be an area that we have to look to in the future for acceptance and or looking at how we might accept maintenance or operations of that trail system once the levy goes in. Thank you. That's it.
Supervisor McPherson.
Yeah, thank you. And when, what you're doing, uh, with what you have is remarkable. And thank you for just using for, uh, forty-eight percent of your budget as general fund. We appreciate that very much. Uh, and what you have done, uh, with what you have, uh, increasing from sixty to seventy-four, uh, parks over twenty years, uh, is really amazing. And, and I would like to, I don't know how we can reach out and say thank you to the volunteers. And you said how many hours? And I was at the annual get-together at Quail Hollow and I think they alone had thirty-five hundred hours up there. That's a, a diamond in the rough in the park system in my estimation. But, uh, it's, uh, just tell those volunteers how much this County Board of Supervisors appreciates their efforts because I know that's why you're able to do more with less or not much more. Uh, it's much appreciated and I know that you're well aware of my office working with you, uh, and the parks team, uh, to explore the pump track in Felton and downtown gathering place in Boulder Creek. And what I am really impressed by though is your out, the outreach that you have, not just in my district and up in the center of the valley, but what you had mentioned, uh, the, the pace properties connecting Quail Hollow, uh, the Whiting Road issue in Watsonville. I know you've got your eye on that target. Um, and the Polo Grounds and, in, uh, in, in Aptos and the Willbrook County Parks in honor of Sergeant Damon Gutsweiler. What a tremendous, uh, event that was not too long ago, um, in the North Coast Management Plan. I mean, you've, you've spread yourself, well, I don't, I probably pretty thin, but you've spread it throughout the county. And that's, I really appreciate that. And I know there's a lot more that you want to do and that you have on the, uh, on your, on your, uh, list. But, um, the legal challenges of Measure K is holding us up from doing some of the things that you really want to do, that we want to do to provide more park services for people of Santa Cruz County. So, um, hopefully that'll be resolved soon. And, uh, what you're doing, uh, with what you have is really impressive. So I appreciate everything that you've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Conick.
Thank you Chair. Thank you, uh, Director Gaffney and Deputy Director Hurley. Um, we, we, we talk a lot about, um, all the wonderful parks. I mean, the first district does have quite a number of those parks given that we're centrally located and so accessible, uh, to, um, really folks in both, um, North and, and South County. Yeah, the Parks Department definitely benefits, as has been mentioned, from a lot of public-private partnerships, all the work that County Parks Friends has done, uh, to help raise money for parks. Um, and of course we have them to thank in a big way for, uh, Floral Park renovation, which I'm really excited about, uh, having a ribbon, well, I guess a groundbreaking soon. Um, but ribbon cutting not far behind, given that, um, it doesn't take too long to put some of these, uh, play structures together. I have to get out there with a, you know, Ikea ranch if I can help. Um, and, and I mean, that's the other point, right? Volunteers, Parks Department really benefits from both of those. You know, but as Supervisor Friend says, it also tends to be the first place people look to, you know, when we're in a, in a bad budget year, um, to cut. So I'm glad to see we're not cutting the department at all this year. That's a, that's a win. Um, you know, how, but this sort of, I mean, you, you pointed out, there's twenty-nine positions in two thousand and four, twenty-eight positions in twenty twenty-four. We've added fourteen parks during that time. Um, by my calculations, we used to have roughly, uh, uh, one to two ratio, one staff person for every two parks. And now, um, if we were going to get back there, we'd need thirty-seven maintenance staff. So we'd need like an additional nine, um, maintenance staff. In your estimation, would that be the best way to bring a better level of maintenance to parks? Would it be increased staffing or is it, um, you know, how? I don't make sure our parks are in better condition because I'll be honest, I mean, I, I think our parks are heavily used and I get a lot of concerns from people saying like, why is it my park looks so shabby? And I'm not blaming you. I think it's a budget question. Um, but how do we, how could we ultimately improve the quality uh, and maintenance of our parks?
I, I don't think it's any secret that I've worked for a couple of jurisdictions in my career and, um, some of those are very well-funded jurisdictions. And, um, in those jurisdictions, you would have one maintenance worker assigned to each park unit. And so if you're comparing to other jurisdictions, it can be a, a little bit of a, um, a morale buster at, at best. Um, we, I am absolutely stunned and impressed by the amount of work that our maintenance workers do get done. Um, but I absolutely guarantee you for every, every position you bring on, the people will see improvements in our, in our parks, our signs, our landscaping, our resource protection, our facilities. Um, they take pride in those facilities. But when you're asking, um, you know, you've heard it from other departments, when you're asking a single maintenance worker to drive all over Santa Cruz County in and out of traffic to cover seven parks in one day, um, you can imagine, do the math on how much time they get spent there. So I think moving forward, it is continuing to develop alternate resources for funding and how we, how we fund our maintenance workers and how we fund our staffing, um, continuing to build on the partnerships and collaboration. Um, I think it's a momentous occasion just to be back to where we were in two thousand and four with staffing. Um, it was different fee structures then. Um, but yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not to pick on anybody, but you could go to the city and county of San Francisco where they have an overall overlay of both city taxes and county taxes. Um, and it's a, it's a, it's a far cry from where we are. And, um, I'm very proud of where our, our, our staff get us, um, with the limited resources we have.
Yeah, but you, you, you listed other funding sources and of course, uh, hopefully Measure K will be freed up here soon. And the board has already said that we want to spend another million dollars on parks, uh, per year. Um, and then of course, earlier at this meeting, um, you know, the, um, measured by the Land Trust, which would ultimately fund open space and, and parks, um, you know, received, uh, enough signatures to be qualified for the ballot. So, um, I think, you know, we all, every supervisor here endorsed it because we are hopeful that we can, uh, get more money for parks and open space that way. So, you know, I think a larger conversation, uh, around how we get more funding for two parks is, is coming soon as we have more clarity around those funding sources. Um, I just want to, one last question for you, which is what's the, where are we with the state of the trails plan? Um, and you know, you, you brought up that it's, it's not just parks play structures. I mean, it is all this open space that you manage and really our parks serve a dual role that way. And to that extent, really eager to see, uh, trails plan done for our parks. Um, is that something that can be accomplished this year with this budget and something that, you know, or is further out?
I'm going to defer to Deputy Director Hurley on that one.
Um, thank you. So we are working, um, with multiple agencies on a collaborative state of the trails project. As you know, we are anticipating getting a final version of that, um, by the end of this year at the latest. Um, in that measure, then we could be able to work on our own, um, trails master plan for county parks, um, within the county park system. So, um, that endeavor could take, um, a, a year or more, but using that state of the trails plan that we're getting, um, here very, very soon, and we would be able to put something together that's specific to the trails master plan for county parks.
Right. The state of the trails plan is collaboration with Santa Clara County and I mean, I think maybe even like San Mateo County.
Yeah, San Mateo, Santa Clara, um, there's a couple of nonprofits involved and, um, a consultant that does this full-time all the time. Mm-hmm. So it's, it's a, it's definitely how do we connect? As I talked about, sort of that web of, of corridors and wildlife space and also for humans to use that same space.
Right. So we could, the, the state of trails could be completed this calendar year. And then potentially, you know, given appropriate funding, we could, uh, embark on a trails master plan for our county, maybe next calendar year.
Yes, we're only about, um, twenty-five or thirty years behind on it, but we, we would be able to do it.
Great.
We're, we're trying to catch up.
Well, I'm glad it's at least, uh, on the horizon.
Absolutely. Yeah. All the surrounding counties have theirs in place already. So we are a little behind.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Well, just want to, um, express my appreciation for your department and all the work, um, that you've all been doing across the county, but in particular with the third district. It's just been, um, real pleasure over the past year, being able to work with Parks Department, especially with the amount of effort that they put into, um, kind of coordinating and corralling folks for the North Coast Facilities Master Plan, which is a multi-year effort they culminated, um, with a plan by this board a few, uh, weeks ago. I just want to touch on, um, kind of the, the projects that are underway. And was just wondering if you could speak to, you know, it seems like the projects that have been proposed are ones that are likely going to start kind of breaking ground and moving forward. But I know in the North Coast Facilities Master Plan, there are a number of projects that community members are really kind of eager to see move forward as relates to safety improvements at Greyhound Rock and also Cement Plant Road. So I'm just wondering if you could speak to kind of, you know, um, how we're going to be able to move forward with those as well.
Um, so I'm happy to say this so that you've, you've denoted the top three prioritized projects for the North Coast Facilities Management Plan. And we are moving forward, as I noted in my presentation, that will be, we're going to finalize an MOU with California Department of Fish and Wildlife, which will be the first step in unfortunately many steps, but a very optimistic outlook on transferring that property to county parks, where then we would work on the low-cost accommodation, um, project there. So that's one of those, um, projects and the conservancy has already, um, denoted that they have retained funding for the planning component of that. So we are planning on in, we're going to attach the MOU to our planning application and we're, um, anticipating that to go to the conservancy board in August, I believe. We have to submit it by July. Um, and then in regards to the cement plant road and, um, I, I think you said Sharkfin Cove parking area, um, those items, we are continuing to work on the application to submit to the conservancy, who previously had stated they could look into funding those. Um, most recently, they've, um, noted that because of the state's budget, they're not anticipating being able to fund those currently. However, we are going to move forward with continuing to in, you know, provide the application to them. So it's kind of in the lineup.
Great. Appreciate. Um, also just wanted, you know, touch on the fact that our parks in open space, when we think about health and wellbeing of our community, like that is one of the number one assets that our county has in terms of making sure people can not only connect with nature, but they're able to be in a healthy, um, safe environment in the outdoors. As we saw during COVID, um, many people, uh, were trying to figure out where they could go to get out of, you know, the concrete jungles of, of some of our larger cities in the Bay Area. And, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, depending on how you want to look at it, you know, the, the beaches, especially the beaches on the North Coast became a safe haven for folks to visit. And so I just really want to, um, you know, we don't have many quote unquote parks in, in my district, but we do have some of the most amazing, well, I'm just going to like highlight my district, but we have some of the most amazing beaches in Santa Cruz County. And I think that, um, the work that you all have been able to accomplish over the past year, with trying to, you know, uh, with, especially in regards to our North Coast Facilities Plan, is really going to make those places more welcoming. Um, it's going to make them more ecologically friendly with, you know, improved bathrooms and trash. And so really just want to, um, thank you all for that and, you know, let the community know that we're going to see some great improvements coming to the North Coast. And then I guess I'd just touch on county parks and the Whiting Road purchase, which happened a year ago and this desire for public part, private partnership. I've been talking to some folks who are interested in rugby and I was able to have them beat with Supervisor Hernandez, but they, you know, UCSE, for example, they can, they'll have rugby and soccer use the same fields at different times of the year. But there's funding from the rugby community that's interested in helping with that. So I'll continue conversations with Supervisor Hernandez to see if that's something that they'd be interested in. But just an example of another group that could help support that effort. So, um, that, I don't have any other questions or comments. And so I'm just wondering if anybody on the board would be willing to make a motion.
I'll make the motion to move. Yes, that's cool. I got a real quick comment too, if you want to. Second.
Okay. So motion to move the parks budget by Supervisor McPherson, second by Supervisor Hernandez. Supervisor Hernandez has another question.
So, yeah, I can have more of a comment, right? So I'm hoping that we can move this, uh, Measure K, um, forward. Um, you know, District One, we're really looking forward to having complaints about shabby parks. And, uh, I think District One also really looks forward to groundbreaking ceremonies and ribbon cuttings that other supervisors are commenting on. So I want to gladly support this motion.
Okay, well, with that, I'll turn it to the clerk for a roll call vote on this item.
Supervisor Conick.
Aye.
Friend.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson and Cummings.
Aye, that passes unanimously. Okay, so with that, we're going to move on to Community Development and Infrastructure's presentation, which is next on our agenda, after which we will take a break for lunch. But and depending on what time, we'll see how much time we'll take for lunch, probably about a half an hour before we finish up with the rest of the items on our agenda. So welcome Matt Machado, Director of CDI.
All right, good afternoon. Thank you Chair Cummins and members of the board. Great to be here today and really great to present a combined budget this morning. Pretty here. Sure we get everything working. I'm always worried about this to make sure it's going to work for me. Looks like it's going to, so thank you. Good afternoon, Matt Machado, Deputy CAO and Director of CDI. I'm leading off with a photo here that's very exemplary of, of our year, our past year, and I think our future. Road failures and natural disasters seem to be a part of our everyday life here in Santa Cruz County. You know, these road failures affect how we live, where we live and our economy. Access is critical to all members of our community and this picture really shows that. This is a failed culvert at Main Street at Bates Creek. This road is the only access for about 500 homes in the SoCal area. And it really shows the integrated and critical nature of land use planning and our built environment. So today I plan to cover these items. And I want to start by thanking our CDI leadership team. They really provided all the content for this presentation and for all the hard work. You know, I want to thank them for that. They, they do it day in and day out. They make our department effective and successful. And just to let you all know that our assistant directors are all here today and they are available if we want to get into some of the details of their work, details of the numbers. But we will cover this agenda. I'm going to start with the, the mission of our department. And I'm going to read it because it's really going to, you're going to hear more about it throughout the presentation, but it's to improve customer services, streamline projects and to align public infrastructure and private development to further county goals and attainable housing, reliable transportation and sustainable environment. And today, I'm, sorry, excuse me. I do plan to cover accomplishments this past year, which were quite amazing actually. And you'll see based upon these accomplishments that we're on the right target for this mission. We've achieved this mission. But as we go forward with our current financial crisis, which you're going to hear a lot about today, this will be much more difficult in the future. So this slide is our leadership structure. I do want to note a change in this is, you'll hear more about this and you heard it this morning from Budget Manager Pimentel, that our Capital Projects Division is being moved into General Services. And so, and so the Director of Capital Projects is not on our leadership team, but they're moving and you're going to hear more about some of those changes here briefly. Okay, let's dig into some of our achievements and they're, they're worthy and noteworthy. And, and I think you'll appreciate them. So these are the larger achievements that, that we saw this past year on our planning side. We saw the sixth cycle housing element approved by the state just last month. And this housing element is projecting 5,000 new housing units over the next eight years. Our sustainability update, our general plan update was certified this past March and it included code modernization and streamlining, also with increased densities to provide critical housing, really large milestones. And then a few other achievements in the planning side of our, our house, the expedited housing development. This is really driven by state law, but it really is going to result in some expedited plan check services for new single-family homes. Our vacation rental enforcement saw 90 citations this past year. And we are currently developing a new program and dashboard for reporting that action. Our new website went live on May 1st, very exciting. If you haven't seen it, check it out. And then we've really started a new, a new focus on equity and public participation. This is really important to hear from people that we don't typically hear from. And so we're really focused on bilingual outreach and focused on, on other barriers such as economic barriers, trying to encourage more participation from people that typically don't participate in our processes. On the public work side, and we all have seen this and we'll see more about this today, but we had a really Herculean amazing response to our 2023 emergency response. It did result in 122 repaired sites. And I got to, I've got to share with you right here that, that responding in an emergency fashion not only saves time for the permanent repair, but it also saves costs. We estimate it saves about 30% cost by making repairs in an emergency fashion, which is a real benefit to the community and to, into our agency. We did see 26 miles of resurfacing done. This was the largest single year of resurfacing in the history of our department. So major milestone. And our sanitation groups, our small, our small districts saw vast improvements to improve resiliency and environmental protections bolstered by numerous grants. We've been really successful with securing grants for many of our small sanitation agencies. Our Big Basin wastewater effort saw some great success with a recent vote of the people, the community there that said yes, transition this from a private wastewater facility into a public system for longevity and for better service. And then our SoCal buffered bike lane project, this is such a critical safety and congestion project. It's really, I think, the largest single construction project our agency is undertaking in, in, in our history. And it also includes one of the largest grants we've ever received. The Green Valley Bike Path Project, that's a $5 million grant for greatly needed safety and mobility in South County. And then our Buena Vista EIR, the Notice of Preparation hit the street this spring and that will lead to some really critical needed projects, the construction of new transfer stations, organics facilities and the closure of our, of our, our aging landfill. So let's look into some of the numbers. This slide is a combined budget of both planning and public works. I will show you each of those individually as well. I just want to make a couple of notes here. To begin with, you see a dramatic reduction in revenue and expenditures. That's really driven by the public work side, the disaster projects. And I'll, I'll show you the specific numbers of why that is, but there's going to be a dramatic decrease in what we can do for repairing storm damage road sites. The other thing that this slide shows, and I, I just want to show some clarity on this. It's on the, the planning side of it and we'll get into details here in a minute. But last year's final budget for planning included a prior grant revenue carryover, which has yet to be adjusted. And absent this adjustment, the general fund contribution is shown as a significant change. And that's just, that's not really the case in actual spending. The actual general fund contribution is near status quo from last year to this year. And I'll show you those actual numbers here in a bit. So I'm going to also speak to the, the funding change here. You can see that minus 6.75. Budget Manager Pimentel shared this this morning, but I'll share a bit more about it on this next slide. And so here's the breakdown of that 6.75 reduction. This is really driven by the shift of Capital Projects Division into General Services. And you can see in the footnotes, the real details of this number. And so Capital Projects has 10 positions that will be shifted to General Services. And in Public Works, we're proposing to add three new positions. And that would be a co-compliance investigator for recycling and solid waste, which they're, one of their primary missions is going to be to address illegal dumping, which is important to all of us. There's also a new accounting tech proposed for recycling solid waste to manage all the workload being generated by some of the new state legislation. And then one accounting tech being added into administration to help do the federal disaster invoicing for reimbursement. So that's the, the details there. So I want to look at a next couple of slides, the details of each of the budgets for planning and for public works. And even though we're presenting combined, they really are separate budgets because they're on a different basis, a bit different financial basis. This is the public works one, so you can actually see the, the overall reduced expenditures and revenues due to reduced level of investment for storm damage roadway repair. We'll further detail this in some coming slides. And, but this is all due to a combination of excessive storm damage repairs and, and a bit of reduced overall revenues, which I'll brief, brief you on in a minute. One note I want to make here is that there's a gen, zero general fund contribution. The negative general fund contribution they can see on this chart is really a part of the capital projects division. It will be going to General Services. So I know it's a bit hard to see and I just want to use this as a graphic really. But looking at the, still looking at the public works budget, looking at revenues and expenditures, the pie charts. On the left-hand side, the revenue is really generated from projects. And so the bottom left of that pie chart, the 50, it's almost 54% is job cost billings. And so that's us doing work and, and billing for the, billing for that work. And then the top right, the 38% is really state and federal reimbursement, mostly in the disaster arena. And so that's what's really driving the revenue side of our public works division. And then on the expenditures, the bottom left, the services and supplies, 57% is really the cost that we spend with contractors actually doing the work. And then the top right, 22% is really our staff cost. Shifting gears a little bit into the planning budget. I mentioned earlier about the, about the carryover that's, that really didn't materialize. And I'm going to show that in actual numbers. But, but the point I want to make here is that from a staffing perspective, it's a status quo. We're, we're not adding any positions to the planning side. Let's look at the details of what's really driving the, the numbers here. And I know this is a little bit hard to see, I just going to point out a couple of numbers. And so if we look down to the, to the bottom right, and if you look at the year-to-date actuals and the estimated actuals, the general fund contribution is somewhere between six and seven million for this current year fiscal year 2324. And our projected general fund contribution is, is about six million. So it's really a status quo budget. And so I just wanted to point that out. If you really wanted to look closely, you can actually see in the 2324 adopted budget, a fairly significant grant that just didn't materialize. And that's that $5 million number on the second column on the line of intergovernmental revenues. The other thing I want to point out in this slide is that the majority of planning is driven by land use permitting. And you can see in the top right that the vast majority of our revenue comes from our permit center, our permit revenue. And it's about nine and a half million dollars. And the permit center, the interaction that we have with the, the community, with our customers is about 8.8 million. And I'll show you a little more of that here in a second. And there's also need of support, obviously, to, to complete that pie. But this really defines our customer service level. And so the direct interaction that we have with our community providing direct services is about 90% of our revenue. The cost to provide our service is about 90% of their revenue. That's really, that really defines our customer service model. And I want to compare that and contrast that to our RPC, our contract with four leaf. And so the service they provide, which is exceptional and very happy to have them a part of our, our team. But the cost to provide that service is approximately six million, while the revenue they generate is about four million. And so their customer service model is closer to 150% model. In addition, we provide additional support, which, which I'll show you here in a second. So I just, I want to show that because as we talk about the transition from the RPC four-leaf model up to our fourth floor model, I want us all to understand the customer service model that, that we live under. So here's a little more detail of, of how we spend that revenue and the general fund contribution. And so you can see the direct interaction of the permit center is about 50, almost 55% of the budget. You can also see that we provide significant support to the RPC in addition to the contract amount with, with four leaf. And so just to point those items out. Okay, let's move into some budget goals. So I'm going to start with the public work side of it. And you can see our goals. And as I mentioned, moving into this new year, new fiscal year, we will be seeing some challenges due to the fiscal crisis. But I can tell you that, that we will still strive to achieve these goals. And so while striving to achieve our goals, we also try to manage expectations within our available resources, fiscal responsibility. Excuse me, I should have brought some water up today. Fiscal responsibility with our current financial outlook will result in a more metered approach to responding to road failures and natural disasters and grant funding opportunities will be focused on critical safety and road failures within the limitations of our local match. Some of our goals for our planning group, we are finalizing the fourth floor remodel plans in an effort to provide a more customer-friendly UPC lobby. And also during this coming year, you'll see a significant steps forward to implementing our housing element program. This is pretty exciting. A part of this implementation will be the rezoning of a number of parcels and then also the completion of a, a new nexus study looking at our housing fees and program, including the inclusionary housing percentages for new development. And for goals three and four, I'm going to move to the next slide to, to describe, describe those efforts. So some of the changes that, that we're anticipating and that we're requesting as part of this budget include expanded consultants, expanded use of consultants. And this is to maintain level of service in some of the new requirements that were, that were mandated by. It also includes this transition of the RPC from the four-leaf contract up to our staffing. Thank you for extending that contract through to December. And then will be transitioned into, into mainstream services for those customers. We also are looking at, due to status quo for staffing, we'll be looking at using extra help interns and consultants to provide gaps in service due to lack of staffing. And, and our digitation, digitization project is on hold for now, but we hope to continue that in the future. On the public work side, we've, we've discussed a bit about the move of Capital Projects to GSD. We discussed the, the change in staffing levels. The next item there is some equipment investment. That entire 2.1 million is in the solid waste division to meet the needs of, of managing our landfill. And then that bottom right is really kind of a summary in it. And even though we are going to face financial challenges this year, we're still delivering a lot of great work. That $66 million of investment includes transportation, sanitation and flood control. So we don't want to ever lose sight that we still will be delivering some great community benefits and great projects, even though it maybe doesn't meet the total need of people's expectations and to be honest, needs. So some of those benefits, just a little bit more about on the planning side. We're really focused from a policy and a funding standpoint to increase affordable housing. We're really focused on permit streamlining, which will include some of the consultant work that we propose. We're looking at promoting infill development with our general plan update and our housing element. The ADU incentive program includes reduced fees and also pre-approved plan sets that are available today. And then we discussed the improved outreach that we are using and we can, we'll plan to continue to, to use on the public work side. Safe, reliable road network. And that's going to be a challenge, of course. Responsible collection and treatment of wastewater. We've seen great success in our sanitation group. And then of course, on our solid waste, continue the diversion of materials to reduce generation greenhouse gases. So I'm going to shift gears into a very focused next half or dozen slides or so. And I want to talk about storm damage and what we've done and what we have yet to do. So in 2023, we had a very major disaster. In fact, in the past eight years, we've had eight federally declared disasters. And so it's put us in the situation we're in today. 2023 was really one for the record books. You can see the, the, the significant damage we saw in our roadways. I'm going to go through the ones that we've completed and the ones that are budgeted and the ones that we really don't have a plan for yet. So in total, we had 208 sites with damage at a total cost of $135 million. Keep in mind, this is just on county maintained roads. So it was a very, very significant impact to our county. Here are the projects that we were able to complete, all of these under emergency contract, which had some advantages. I can tell you that in an effort to implement all these projects, we did use criteria, prioritization criteria that we did share with your board back near the time of the disaster. And I want to share with you right now, that criteria still holds true to today. We may be looking at additional criteria, but but for today, that that prioritization criteria was developed based upon road classes, whether it was a collector, major collector, whether the road was a one way in or not, whether the road lost an entire lane and whether it was compromising utilities or culverts. And then whether the project was ready or not to go to construction. And so that was a criteria, we gave every project a score. These projects are the ones that we completed based upon that that criteria. And you can see the coverage, it really covered the entire county from the furthest south to nearly the furthest north. Everyone was affected by by this damage, but also by these repairs. So the hundred and twenty two sites of repair had a cost of nearly seventy million. Plus, we had about ten million in debris removal, which is cat A, cat B, as part of the initial disaster. And, you know, this is still on the on the desire to highlight some of the good work we did because we really did do some good work. Our staff worked tirelessly to to see these through. So the next few slides are going to be examples of this repair. So here's Glenwood Drive post mile two point six. This was a one point six million dollar project. Here's this next slide is the same site. And look at the effort that had to go into that repair. That road completely collapsed and requires significant repairs to get it back open. Here's Highland Drive post mile four point five five. This is a one point five million dollar project, critical road. Here's Redwood Drive, the Redwood Road, sorry, post mile zero point four. This was about a half a million dollar project. And then I'm going to end on on the really the big one. And this is how we started the presentation, but this is mainstream. This is at Bates Creek. This is a culvert that washed out and the repair on this was four and a half million dollars. And so significant damage. And here's another great picture of the completed work. You can really see the connection between roads and where people live. You can see the homes in the in the background there. And all we spent right at seventy million dollars to make all these repairs. But due to slow federal reimbursement and lacking a federal match, we had to finance much of this work. And your board has heard a lot about this and you you supported this bond effort. Just to fund these repairs alone, we had to secure debt of about fifty six million dollars just for the repair work alone, not to mention all the other disasters, but for the twenty three repairs, fifty six million dollars goes into this initial response. And with debt comes debt service. And so the point I want to make here is that is that a significant portion of our fuel taxes is now going into debt service. You can see that two point seven million, that's kind of a combination debt service payment for the twenty three disasters, the debt service is just a little over two million. But that accounts for about sixteen percent of our total fuel tax revenue is now going to debt service. And so clearly that's going to impact our ability to not just continue repairs, but also do other good work for our community. The conclusion here is that new funding sources will definitely be needed. And I'll I'll speak more to that here in a minute, but there's really no other viable solution to see this through, considering the debt and the and the needs, the unfunded needs going forward. So speaking of unfunded needs, this slide is showing fifty four projects just from the twenty twenty three disaster that is not currently budgeted or funded for repairs. And you can see it really does cover the the vast majority of our county from the south to the north. It's really everywhere. The next slide is is going to be a little more detail about that, about about these projects and more. And so the purpose of this slide is to summarize all of the unfinished work from major disasters in recent times. So twenty seventeen, we've completed one hundred and sixty sites worth almost a hundred million dollars. But there's still thirty one to do. And those are valued at about twenty four million. And our vision for the twenty seventeen completion is over the next three to four budget cycles, we'll complete those thirty one sites. Twenty seventeen has an advantage over other disasters. It has federal obligations, so it has the best chance of getting federal reimbursement. So twenty seventeen, even though it's going to take three to four more years to complete, is probably is hopefully in good standing. For twenty twenty three, we have very little federal obligation, which makes it a riskier proposition. But we did complete one hundred and twenty two sites worth almost seventy million. You saw some examples just a minute ago. But what's proposed to be done over the next three to four budget cycles is just thirty two more sites valued at about twenty seven million. Seven of that million is funded from debt service or debt debt financing. And what's remaining in twenty twenty three is fifty four sites worth about thirty million that we don't have budgeted and we don't yet have a plan for. And I'll speak to that here in a second. In twenty twenty four, we had more damage. We had thirty four sites valued at about twenty million. We we don't yet have a plan for that either. So in total, we have eighty eight sites without a plan to fix worth about fifty million. And some of this work that's not being funded today, and and I'll speak to this a bit, but it includes its its real sites and it has real risks. And so some of those sites include Trout Gulch with eight sites of damage. Mount Charlie with seven sites of damage. Eureka Canyon with four sites of damage. North Rodeo Gulch, four sites of damage. Vienna Drive, three sites of damage. Hazel Dell, three sites of damage and dozens more just like that. And I bring that up because when a road has multiple sites of damage, if one or more those fail during the next winter, we have a serious problem on our hands. We have people that cannot access their homes at that point. So it becomes another local emergency. And so there's real risk with not having a financial plan. But that said, we're committed to figuring this out in the coming years. And the way we see it going forward is developing new funding sources, working very closely with the CAO's office and with your board. I think the only viable solution here is finding new revenue sources. The need is great, the funding is not, and we need to solve that problem. And we're committed to doing that. We will be bringing ideas, solutions, strategies back to your board in the coming months with a hope to come back with a solution in the near future. So I hate to show you this picture, but I'm going to anyways. This is two of our road closures. What we have here is Mount Charlie with a major mountain slide. And we have Paulson Road, hard closures on both of these. These are two examples of unfunded road closures and we have six more, six more across the county that are closed. Some of those will be repaired in the in the near, in the future few years, but some will not. And these two do not yet have a plan for repair. So I'm going to shift out of the twenty twenty three specifics and just highlight a bit of the change from this current fiscal year to the proposed fiscal year. And I mentioned the dramatic decrease in expenditures and revenues due to reduced work and disasters due to federal reimbursement and lack of local match. You can see it here that in this current fiscal year, we had significant disaster relief revenue, both in the form of of actual reimbursement and actual debt proceeds. And so that won't be occurring this next year. Also, I wanted to highlight here about a six hundred thousand dollar reduction in fuel taxes. And this is just from the state's perspective. They give us projections and this is one of them that's going to dramatically affect us. So not only are we spending a significant portion of about sixteen percent on debt service, we're also seeing a reduction in fuel taxes, which will impact our general maintenance and our road system in general. Next, I'm going to shift gears on you and highlight some of the budget details of our of our planning budget and and I'll finish on touching it even a little more on the public work side. So in our planning side, we are projecting some increased revenues from construction cost multiplier increases. We are expecting increased residential permit applications will, which will increase revenues. Another area of note is the ADU reduced fee program that'll actually reduce incomes. And then we also are projecting, this is more on the housing side, but a decrease in state grant revenue, which I'll speak more to in detail in a minute. We are pursuing fee studies in in multiple areas. The first one would be looking at our fee program, our entire planning fee program to see if it's covering our costs and then also looking at our housing program, the Nexus Study, which will look at impact fees and include inclusionary rates. I mentioned earlier about the the need and use of increased consultants for plan check services. We'll also be using extra help and interns. We're looking at ways to solve some of our staffing struggles, in particular, our chief building official. We've been our our last true full time building official was a year and a half ago. We haven't had not great success with filling that position. We're looking at continuing recruitment and also contracting that service out. And and the struggles continue there, but that's, we're finding alternate ways to to fill those positions. On the on our housing front, mostly our housing funds are passed through. And in an effort to, it's mainly to increase affordable housing. I do want to comment that in general, these sources of funds are being depleted. And so in the future, we will have to deal with that. And that will affect some of our affordable housing delivery. Here's a few projects and our that we're funding with our housing funds. And so you can see those three projects listed. The home grant listed is from twenty nineteen. We do not expect a future home grant to be on this one. So we we expect that in the future. And then, and then as I wrap up here, some of the details of our public works division, and I think this is an effort to try to show some of the some of the other work besides just the disaster work. And so you can see in the top right, a significant a dollar amount for salaries and benefits. This funds two hundred and seventy seven full time positions. In special services, the but the proposed budget is forty eight point six million dollars. This is, this includes budgets for solid waste, sanitation and flood control. It also includes revenue for for the staff that do that work. The eighty three and a half million for transportation is is budgeted for some storm damage from the twenty seventeen and twenty twenty three, as I described earlier. It also includes great projects like SoCal buffered bike lanes, the Green Valley Pathway Project and some resurfacing projects. And then, of course, road operations. The four point six million in fleet operations includes the labor and the fuel costs and also some of the equipment notes that I I said I mentioned earlier. Some equipment, equipment replacement for solid waste. And then lastly, the the overhead costs, which really, you know, we talk a lot about this, but overhead's real. It covers things like risk management and the county cost allocation plan, which is the county's overhead. Some of the, some of the state budget impacts, the housing side of it. We are seeing a reduction of the REAP two grants by about fifty percent. I mentioned the reduced fuel tax and the downward trend. And then just quickly on the unfunded mandates, stormwater permitting, the carb zero emission vehicles, that's the Air Resource Board, thirteen eighty three solid waste requirements and AB two two three four. I want to mention, though, that all of these state mandates, or most of them, are are probably critical to us, that we probably do support them. The struggle is, is that these new requirements come without money. And so it spreads our existing resources very, very thin and it really impacts other services. And so even all of it, even though all of us would agree that cleaning our water, moving to a zero emission vehicle, taking more waste out of our landfill, expediting building plan checks, all that is really good things to do, but it comes without money. And so we're having to use our existing resources to do these expanded services and it impacts the other services that we provide. So some future considerations, we talked a little about recruitment challenges like with our CBO. We talked about some declining revenues and housing. Those funds will be running out in the near future, the RDA funds and some other state grants. And then we, I did mention a bit about the permit center and the service model. And we will, we will see this as we transition the four leaf contract upstairs into our our front counter permit center. On the public work side, we've discussed the fuel tax decline. And on this slide, you can see that deferred maintenance is still a very, very large number. And it will continue to impact us in with regard to magnitude of damage when we're faced with climate change. And so together, it's really a a massive challenge. And it's going to require new funding sources, I, as I mentioned, and we will all be working together with alternatives and strategies to try to solve that problem. My last slide is our staff recommendations today. And as I share this on the slide, I would also like to thank our CAO Carlos Palacios and the entire CAO team for the support and leadership. We couldn't, we couldn't be here today without their help. And we hope that we'll continue that relationship in such a positive way as we did this past year, with getting through these hurdles and finding new solutions that we can bring back to your board. And with that, we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you so much for that presentation, for the work of your department. I'm going to open it up to questions from the public to see if there's any member of the public here in chambers would like to speak to us on the community. Department of Community Development and Infrastructure's budget for twenty twenty four, twenty five. Saying none, we'll go online and see if there's anyone online who'd like to speak to us on CDS budget.
Yes, Chair, we do have speakers online. Call in user two, your microphone's now available.
Wow, sounds like arranging the chairs on the deck of the Titanic. Is the county sinking? Doesn't sound good. I think maybe the county could declare we're like Ukraine or Israel and we must have funds for real self-defense here. Regarding climate change, I urge you to listen to Dane Wiggington of Geo Engineering Lodge about climate, weather, intervention, engineering and get educated and speak out against that. Let's see what else here. I think of how corporations privatize the profit and they socialize the cost. We're paying for corporate pollution like with plastic, which you referred to. And I'm looking at your zero waste publication for summer twenty twenty three. The cost of waste and how during the, I call it a plandemic lockdown, all of this plastic additional use production was required, filling up our landfills even more. And a figure here, four hundred and thirty million tons of plastic are produced each year, according to Dane Wiggington. Why isn't the pollution stopped at its source? Instead of us good Samaritans trying to deal with it. In turn, anyway, those are, and it sounds disastrous financially. I, you want more money to monitor illegal dumping? Get the corporations to stop producing the plastics and other toxins in the first place. Public work.
Nancy, your microphone's now available. Nancy's put her hand down. Watsonville Yoga, your microphone is now available.
Good afternoon to the County Board of Supervisors. Good afternoon to the County Board of Supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Linda Aaron. I'm a resident and homeowner on Paulson Road since twenty ten and have seen our road lay unrecovered from yearly flood damage each winter. Other than repaving once during the fourteen years we've lived here, this road has been left as an unsafe mess. This winter, two levees on privately held land broke and caused sustained flooding that rendered Paulson completely broken and impassable. Not sure if these are levees that serve leasing to private ag production, but it is likely. If two levees that were on private land failed and caused this extensive damage this winter, isn't that grounds for the county to sue for damages and recuperate some of the cost of repairing our road? After many months of closure, two weeks ago, an eight thousand pound cement barrier suddenly appeared and blocked our road indefinitely. It has angered. It has angered our community. Our road is used by a large percentage of 900 students and staff twice a day at Watsonville Charter and Alianza Charter School. Is a byway also for a Mestee school. Hundreds of people drive it across town to get to 152 and 129 and downtown from Eastern Watsonville. Our charter schools do not have buses for emergency evacuation of students. It would be a nightmare of frightened chaos for families to all converge on Whiting Road in case of emergency to get their children. There are or countless others who use the road for varied reasons and work crossing from one side of town to the other. We parents and working folks currently have to use Casserly Road at a cost of significant extra driving time each way. And the hundreds of extra cars are impacting potful ridden narrower Casserly Road now as well. Blocking Paulson with a large cement barrier is not a solution. In addition, there are unbelievable amounts of illegal dumping of immense amounts of trash, refrigerators, toilets, a dozen cars just this year. Hundreds of garbage bags appear nearly every day while the road has been broken. Aesthetically, ignoring the damaged Paulson Road is inviting the crime dumping to flourish. It's a cycle of reinforcement that says our neighborhood doesn't matter. This did not happen to residents at Main Street when SoCal Creek flooded. Those repairs came very quickly to that region of the county. People worked 24 hours at a time to get Main Street open.
Very much.
User iPhone, your microphone is now available.
Yes, hello. My name is Olivia Flores. I'm from District Four. I am a parent of two students out at WCSA. I am also a trustee on the school board for Parker Valley Unified School District. I'm calling to petition you to make, um, action for Paulson Road. That road being closed not only affects the two schools out there, it has also wreaked a lot of havoc on Lakeview and, um, St. Francis with creating just excess traffic coming down 152 and East Lake. I just petition that those, that you do put make Paulson Road a priority. Thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
Okay, just want to thank members of the comment, members of the public for their comments. And I'll bring it back to the board for questions, comments and action. I'll go with Supervisor Friend.
This is the most challenging budget facing public works in recent memory. We fought a lot of hard fights at the local, state and federal level to increase funding, just to see it in many respects, taken away from things outside of our control. I think that your team has done, um, pretty remarkable work with the storm damage work from starting in 17 to today. But I think that it's very sobering what, what the reality is going to be on road maintenance in an already challenging environment in the next one to three years at least. So I appreciate your team. I appreciate this report. I hope that it, it also is, is fully internalized and understood about, um, there isn't a magic pot of money. There's a massive desire. I mean, your entire team wants to go out and build stuff. That's what they want to do. They want to fix it. They want to maintain it. They want to have new things for the community and it's just not possible right now. So, um, we'll keep our advocacy at the federal level, which is where the largest money can really shake free from the FEMA. But Mr. Machado, you and your entire team, planning and public works. Good to see them sitting together too, to kind of show that they're one department over there, um, are doing really remarkable things, even with very limited resources. So appreciate that.
Supervisor Koenig.
Thank you, Chair. Well, Director Machado, I just want to start by highlighting again, uh, all the great work that your department is doing. And of course, it's really sort of a double header here, um, you know, both planning and public works. There's a lot to be proud of. I mean, on the planning side, the getting sustainability update approved and getting our housing element approved, uh, are massive. I mean, this is setting the stage for a transformation in our community. I'm already, we're starting to see, uh, projects of a really significantly different type in the first district. And I'm sure we'll see a lot more soon. Um, and then of course, on the public work side, I mean, you showed Main Street before and after, um, that was huge. At four, 500 residents, the really their lifeline to, uh, the entire community, to, to food, to schools, to, um, I mean, to life. I mean, and that highlights that roads are the one county service that everyone uses every day. I'm, I'm really excited about, um, some of the proactive work we're doing. I mean, in addition to thank you for the 122 storm damage sites that have been completed. I mean, SoCal Drive, that project is going to be transformational as well. Really excited to see where that goes. You know, I, I want to highlight a couple of things that you said. So on the planning side, um, around the permit center, you know, I consistently hear from constituents saying like, why is it taking so long? Not feeling like they've gotten the level of service that they should. And I think what you highlighted is, well, that's because they're literally not getting the service that they're paying for. We're siphoning funds away from the permit center, away from people paying those permit fees to pay for, you know, other larger planning level stuff that yes, we need to do. But should we be compromising, uh, our permitting process in order to do that? And if we funded permitting better, maybe we would actually solve this problem. I mean, you had two positions that I believe they're under that, uh, umbrella, um, the chief building official. Which we can't really effectively build anything. But a chief building official, I mean, sooner or later, he, he's got to come in and make sure that, uh, you know, there's someone going out to inspect what's built. These 5,000 units that we're going to build, bring online here within the next eight years, in theory. If we have someone to inspect them and say that they're move-in ready, right? So it's critical that we hire this position. And I know that we've, uh, allocated a little bit more for a hiring bonus over the next few years. Hopefully that does the trick, but I mean, we got beat out by 40% for a building official that we had before, 40%. I mean, we need to be ready to allocate the necessary resource to make sure that we fill this position. And of course, it's not only this position, but the one right under that, the senior building inspector, right? That, I understand that's unfunded at the moment and you're not asking for it in this, is that right? That's correct. Yeah. I mean, we've got to fund that position. I mean, that's the only way that we're going to build the internal team to approve these 5,000 new units. And even if you're, you know, someone frustrated with, uh, you know, the permitting review process and plan check and everything. Well, the answer to that is more robust building inspections on the other end of the permitting cycle. So, I mean, this is critical. I mean, I think one basic place we could start here, say, all right, all the money that we get from permit fees are going to stay with permitting. And we're going to put another, it's about a million dollars of general fund revenue towards planning to cover the larger umbrella services. And of course, as you said, that the four-leaf service that everyone's so thrilled with, I mean, we're spending 150% of, you know, what we, we, $6 million is spent, we're receiving $4 million in permit revenues from that. So, yeah, people are delighted with the service at that point. We should get a little bit closer to that. So that's on the planning side. I mean, and if we don't appropriately fund housing, I mean, all the rest of the services we've talked about or for not, I mean, right? We cannot hire behavioral health workers. We cannot hire, uh, you know, attorneys and, and the district attorney or for the public defender's office. Like we're just, we can't hire correctional officers. If we don't solve housing, we're, we're, we're can't go anywhere, right? We're not going to have any momentum into a better future. Look, now let's talk about roads, right? I mean, that's really, um, you know, I want to, I think you brought up a slide that talked about how much general fund money we spend on roads. Could you just repeat how much general fund revenue we're spending on roads?
Uh, in, it's zero in general. I mean, sometimes the general fund bails out emergencies, but it's to zero, about zero budget.
Well, I want to, I want to point out that we did spend $5 million last year. $5 million general fund last year. We, we funded SoCal Avenue with general fund. We've made a significant contribution there. Right. There's, but like I said, there's zero all general fund this year in all capital. And that that's how we're balancing our budget. I mean, again, the alternative, I mean, $5 million, $7 million is a general fund contribution to parks.
Right. I hear you, but you know, so, so we contributed $5 million to a special project. Great. Super important project. Totally agree. Uh, great use of funds. But ongoing road maintenance, we're spending $0. As a property owner, paying property taxes, you'd kind of think the first thing your property tax money was going to go to was maintaining the road to your house. Zero? You know, maybe I could see like, okay, 50%. I understand there's other things in, in the county to spend money on. 30%? All right. I don't love it, but, but zero. I mean, yes, the climate crisis is exacerbating the condition of our roads and leading to hundreds of storm damage sites with every significant event. But it's also the consistent lack of investment in our road network that we've made over the last 40 years. We can't go on like this. First of all, I don't, I tell you, as one who is closest to an election cycle, I've just been out there talking to voters on the other side of it now. They want their roads funded. It's the number one thing I hear about every single day. I mean, I could give you a list of the regulars right here, um, you know, the, and it's not just like the failure of our roads in the mountain areas. It's the safety of our roads in the urban area too. And of course, we have, we're, we're one of the, you know, worst, uh, counties in the whole state as far as bike and pedestrian collisions for safety. We're not going to change that. We're never going to achieve our vision zero goals if we're not making consistent investments in our road infrastructure. Even, you know, we're talking about new, you mentioned new, new funding sources, but we just passed a new funding source. And in fact, we advertise it to voters by saying we are going to spend money on roads. We also passed a funding measure pack in 2018 called Measure G, a sales tax, where roads was one of the things we'd spend that money on. But apparently we're not because zero, that goes into the general fund budget and we're spending $0 from our general fund budget, inconsistent road maintenance. That Measure G expires in 2030. And we're going to have to go back out to voters and ask them for another measure. How are we going to do that with a straight face if we don't do what we're, say we're going to do? And if we don't uphold the most basic service that people expect us to uphold? So this is the biggest problem I see, uh, in our county budget. Frankly, I don't know if, I mean, we're, even if we choose not to allocate another dollar here, other than what's asked for, uh, which, which is not enough. I mean, we're not even taking advantage of, you know, some of the potential FEMA money for these remaining store, storm damage sites. We always say, oh, we should invest in health and human services because that's where the matching dollars are. We can get a four to one match on that. But here, we've got a, we've got a four to one match that we're going to leave on the table. So, um, we, we've got to make a larger investment in roads. Even just to have the money on hand to respond to these disasters. I mean, we are razor thin right now. I mean, between the contingency fund going down, not having, I mean, what happens with another storm? If like three or four roads go out, we're going to be facing lawsuits is what we're, it's going to happen. And whether we like it or not, we're going to have to start spending money to now be on the defensive. I mean, and frankly, I'm, I'm worried about my own liability, right? As a fiduciary, uh, make sure that we maintain the integrity of county infrastructure. How can I sit here and not allocate a single dollar of general fund money to county roads? And honestly say that I'm fulfilling my duties as a county supervisor. So I think it's got to be 10 million bucks as a starting place. In this budget, we thought, okay, fine. Let's say 6 million of that will come out of Measure K when, uh, that's finally made available. We'll carve out four from the rest of the general fund budget. And if that sounds like a lot to you, consider that $80 million is coming from poverty tax money. And 40 million is coming from vehicle license fees. And guess what vehicles need people? Roads. So it's a drop in the bucket, but at least it would be a starting place. So all my comments for now, and when emotion's ready, I'm happy to make it.
All right, Supervisor McChryston.
Yeah, I can't disagree with what Supervisor Koenig said. And it's through no fault of the staff that we have or what we have, it's just the, the financial resources aren't there. And we realize and how do we get there? And I have some extended comments too about, uh, first of all, a couple of thank yous. I want to thank the CDI, uh, staff once again for its work in getting the sustainable, uh, plan, uh, over the finish line with the Coastal Commission. And, uh, getting our housing element certified, uh, that was a big lift, uh, under the crises that we're facing. And, um, that's, that's great. We've identified, uh, additional opportunities that is related to housing, uh, along the rail corridor. And that's, uh, that I think we're going to be looking at more of that too, as we go along on the Regional Transportation Commission. And we've made some recent progress though, too, I think, in the area of housing with, uh, enabling third-party plan checks. I think that's, that's important, seeing the unified permit center become functional and permitting tiny homes, accepting more permit applications. And I think it's, it's interesting to know, we say, people say they, they haven't, you know, not much has been built up there. And there's a reason, I think, that the, the criteria, the, the numbers that I saw as, I think, up to last, the first of the year was that 100 in my district had not even applied for a permit. What's the reason? I don't know, uh, is it cost of housing? They don't want to deal with this anymore. There's a lot of trauma involved. Uh, there's new, uh, road, uh, requirements and fire requirements that are being made. Septic systems are costing more and more and the state requirements over there. So I, I think that, um, uh, you know, there, there hasn't been enough done. And I get it. We, we need a chief building official to start with. And I know you've been trying to get one, but it's really not an easy task. And I think we need a, a vision to show how the community, the county is truly doing its part and being active to build more housing. Under the circumstances, it's going to be very, very difficult for us to, to meet the new arena standards that the state has put down on Santa Cruz County and the unincorporated area, you know, over triple what it was the previous eight-year cycle. So I think, um, the, we also have a great deal of work to do on our roads. And I think one warning I want to say is, um, the Measure D of 2016, there's been some talk about putting a sense. Well, first of all, it's one of those who, uh, put together that, that measure back then. The top priority was local roads, 30% of that. And there's some talk about some folks saying, let's take a little from that and put it somewhere else. Boy, I'll tell you, we better, we were not getting enough, we're far short of that. So we should not mess with Measure D of 2016 and its obligation to put seven, uh, what, uh, 30% of its revenues into, uh, roads. And I think that, it's that amount to about 3 million, six, what is it? How many?
It's about three and a half.
Three and a half million. That's it. So, yeah, we, we just shouldn't mess with that. And I, I just, uh, think we ought to stand up and talk about that with somebody who suggests that. And with the, um, the outstanding federal requirements, we, uh, we see a very, very modest improvement or vision for the future. And I, I think, uh, we've, and then we've had some things like, um, really severe things. Paulson Road, we've heard about that. I was up at Mount Charlie with, and I want to tell you that Steve Weisner is phenomenal, what he's done. And I went up with him just earlier this week and talked to these folks. And there's nothing in line for them immediately in the next few years, probably. But boy, that thing is going to take a lot of effort and money. And Congressman Panetta was there and he's going to see what he can do. But boy, it's going to take a lot of cooperative effort to get our, those types of, uh, really substantial, uh, really, uh, dilapidation of roads, uh, any money go to that. But, um, I just think that, um, that you're right. I think your supervisor Koenig's right. More than anything else I hear probably is that do something on my road, say in front of my house or on, on the way to my working place or to the grocery store or whatever the case may be. That is the number one thing I hear day in and day out, up in the San Antonio Valley in particular, but in the fifth district in general. I know that, I, I think this should not be viewed as criticism of our CDI. It's just a situation where we don't have enough to do with what's before us. And, um, we'll do the best we can. We have to move toward a better process if we can to speed things through. And I know that we're going to have a change with the, uh, with, uh, four-leaf moving up to the fourth floor. I think that's going to be some improvement so we can get permits moving as quickly as possible. But, um, I, as downcast it is, there's very good things. 20, what you say, 26 miles of road have been approved, uh, since those disasters. The big basin water situation, which is a small number of parcels, but it was absolutely essential that these people have a lifeline that, that they can, uh, stay in their homes. There's been a lot of things that have been accomplished under some very tight restrictions. But, um, we're going to just have to keep trying as you are. And I appreciate what you're doing. I can't tell you how much I do appreciate some of the work that your public work staff and getting out there and getting as much roadwork done as possible under the limited resources that we have. Thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez.
Supervisor Hernandez. So I, I'd like to say, you know, first of all, I would also support Supervisor Manu Koenig's you know, is the, the need for more, more supporting permitting and funding roads. But first I want to commend CDI on the housing element. Of course, we need more housing in our county. Green Valley Road, Holahan. But, you know, back to roads, you know, since the heart closure of Paulson, we've had a uptick in both District Four and District Two of complaints about Paulson, both by phone, email. And I, I served for the RTC for about two years with my predecessor. And I know he talked about Paulson Road for the last twelve years. You know, I think Paulson Road is situated in a more of a suburban area of unincorporated Santa Cruz County. It serves as a vital route for thousands of individuals daily, as people heard today. You know, including farmers, farm workers, parents dropping off their children at Alianza Charter School and Charter School of the Arts, as well as teachers, school administrators and local residents. And in the near future, access from the southeast to one eighty-one Whiting Park. I think among the current eight fully closed roads that we have in the county, Paulson does stand out with significant traffic counts. On May first, two thousand and nineteen, the average daily traffic counts were recorded at three thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight. And since then, traffic has likely increased. Funding for Paulson Road would address critical infrastructure needs in South County, benefiting a large Latino population and limited income populations. Additionally, with the county's largest new park in the vicinity, Paulson Road's closure would impede access to the park. Now, I want to mention about the traffic counts. If you keep in mind, the traffic counts were, were in May first of two thousand and nineteen. Keep in mind that it was in the middle of the pandemic and schools were actually closed. In our county, the schools closed on March sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. And many people who work had to telecommute. And we still had nearly four thousand vehicles daily on that road. You know, I fully support that we do fund roads. But I think it's time that we, I'd like to see direct staff to allocate two million as a budget addition for Paulson Road to repair it, but to, to repair the damage caused in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four storms, but also to provide for the planning of long-term solution to the flooding of Paulson Road. So we begin the planning process to actually find a solution to Paulson Road.
Okay. Well, I will just start by thanking CDI for, you know, all the, thanking Director McChryston for the work that you've been doing over the past few years and for your staff. And I guess I'm just gonna start with just highlighting you know, as, as someone who comes from biological, biological sciences, as someone who spent an extensive amount of my life studying climate change and what the future impacts of climate change would look like. For a long time, people have been saying that it's gonna get, things are gonna get worse. Things are gonna get bad. And we're gonna start seeing, you know, increased impacts around floods, fires, drought, sea level rise, et cetera. And Santa Cruz is in a very challenging place because we have impacts from fire. We have erosion and landslides and we have impacts to our coast through sea level rise. We're in a very geologically unstable area. And, you know, I think that in many communities, what was anticipated was that when we would be faced with these disasters that, you know, there would be a support coming from the federal government to help us when we're in need. And, you know, during COVID, for example, just to remind folks in the community, we were told that if we go and stand up all these shelters for people experiencing homelessness, we'll make you whole. And that didn't happen. And maybe Carlos, you could speak maybe briefly about, you know, that situation and scenario when we were told that we'd be reimbursed by the federal government, what actually happened?
Yes, this was Project Room Key during the pandemic. The state of California asked us to shelter vulnerable unhoused persons to prevent what they were very worried about was a massive amount of deaths in that community. There was a lot of people in fragile health in among the unhoused population. The fear was that in some of these encampments, the virus was very potent and would result in massive amounts of death, death in that community. So the governor came to local counties, asked us to house as many of these folks as they, as we could in local, in hotels. Hotels were empty at that time because of COVID, right? So this was seen also as a, a way to fill up the hotels. So we did that. We had over ten sites. We ended up housing more than thirteen hundred people. At that time, both the governor and then FEMA also assured us that we would be reimbursed one hundred percent for those costs. And then two years, three years later, FEMA made a ruling saying that no, those reimbursements were limited to twenty days. Many of the individuals who stayed in Project Room Key stayed as long as a year, maybe some even longer. So FEMA, three years later says, no, it's just twenty days. That's what the ruling is. Despite the assurances we're given. So we're on the hook for almost ten million dollars of lost general fund money. So again, you look at why, why are we not putting any general fund money into that? Well, there it is. That's general fund money. And the state of California as a whole is three hundred million dollars. So anyway, that's just one example. There's many other examples where the general fund is left holding the bag on emergency response. CZU Fire, there's other cases as well. That's, there's an example of a debris removal that we made in emergency response. We've appealed that. We lost the appeal to FEMA. It's another eight or nine million dollars. Again, the general fund be on the hook for that. There's other COVID costs also that are not covered besides Project Room Key. So right now, we still have twenty-some million, twenty-six million, I believe, of COVID costs still outstanding. So anyway, just examples of the general funds under a lot of pressure right now.
Thank you. And I just also, you know, bringing it back to the comments that were just made. You know, it's not for a lack of trying on behalf of our, our community development and infrastructure. And the fact that they went out and repaired SoCal Road as quickly as they did demonstrated their, you know, dedication to ensuring that people had roads fixed when they're damaged. But the reality is that we have a hundred and forty-three million dollars worth of FEMA claims that are still sitting at the federal level going back to twenty seventeen. We have exhausted our resources to the point where we, we're now bonding, issuing bonds for money so we can keep up with the projects that are in the queue. So it's not for a lack of trying on behalf of the county and the Department of Community Development and Infrastructure. It's the fact that we are being now hit with disasters at a rate that's happening so quickly and so intensely that we are unable to keep up with it as best as we're trying. And if we had all the money in the world, that would be great. But partly why when we issued these bonds and I asked for the support of the board to send a letter, which, which I'll still be working with CEO's office on to our federal partners, is to let them know how hard we're trying on this front and to get them to expedite refining the FEMA process and getting our, our claims filed and our claims and reimbursements settled. Because I think we can all talk about, you know, wanting to see ten million here, two million there, like millions of dollars to go towards this. At the same time, when we come back, it might result in, for example, more positions in CDI getting cut that we need or for folks to get their permits to get the permits reviewed and approved. It's gonna, it will likely lead to cuts in many of the other departments. And then I think that we're gonna open a Pandora's box of, you know, who gets funding for what. And I think when, when it comes to smaller amounts of funding, that can help go a long way. That's one thing. But if we're saying ten million dollars to roads in, for example, District One, then I would imagine that everybody's gonna start asking for millions of dollars across all the districts. And I'm just, you know, if that's the direction folks are gonna go in, it'll be interesting to see how that plays out. But I personally, I think that, you know, we need to, I think it would be important that we're coming up with plans. And so if folks can identify the roads that are of greatest concern, if they're not already on that list, seeing if we can reprioritize them, that might be a way that we can try to see how we can get some of these road repairs done more efficiently and, and more quickly. But the, the lift that you all have provided to help support us during times of great uncertainty and the safety issues that have come along with that to help prepare our roads, I think has been, has been great. And I just want to thank your department for all the work that they've done during these tremendously unanticipated and unexpected times. As it with, with planning and with the planning department. So I'll, I'll end there on roads. But when it comes to the planning department, I'm, I'm happy that we got our housing element certified. I know that there was a lot of, you know, back and forth and confusion around, you know, when to get started, when needed to happen, I guess. But when the next housing element cycle comes around, I hope we can be on top of it a little bit more quickly. The fact that we have builders remedy projects underway that are coming into the county and that we likely can't stop them is concerning because I have been hearing, I mean, it's not my district, but I have been hearing complaints. And I would hate to see that happen in my district at, if during the next cycle and us not be able to do anything about it. The one thing that I will point out with, that I've heard after, after meeting with staff in CDI is that these projects will be twenty percent inclusionary for the builder's remedy. And if that's the case, I think that that demonstrates that we are able to have a twenty percent inclusionary rate for affordable housing in new developments. If the state has language that says in builders remedy projects, you're gonna have twenty percent inclusionary. I don't see why we're continuing to have that conversation. I also want to say, I want to ensure that if this NEXA study is going forward, that we are still considering Section Eight vouchers to help increase the amount of affordable housing in new developments to twenty percent at a minimum. Because when I, when, prior to me being on the city council, a NEXA study was done to see if we can do fifteen percent. And the NEXA study came back and said, no, you can't even do fifteen percent. We imposed twenty percent back in twenty twenty, I believe, and we didn't have any objection from developers. And it has not stopped development from happening in the community. So I would just say that, you know, at a minimum, we should be considering moving the inclusionary percentage up to twenty percent and trying to figure out how we can make it happen rather than saying it can't happen because to Supervisor Koenig's point, you know, we're gonna need affordable housing in this community if we want to have the workforce that we need. I think he said housing, but I'm, I'm gonna say that we, we're gonna need affordable housing because with the market rate units that are going in, in the city of Santa Cruz, four hundred and twenty-five square foot studio, starting at three thousand dollars a month, that's not gonna help anybody who, like, that's not gonna help county workers, right? Maybe some department heads, but not your average worker here in this community. So I think it's really critical that we're trying to maximize affordable housing to the greatest extent possible, that we're trying to, you know, push the envelope on what can be done in terms of affordable housing. And I think we need to be innovative thinkers on how we're gonna actually provide the housing that our community needs, not just build housing and hope that it's gonna drop prices. And so you know, with that, I do share the concerns. I hear the concerns from my colleagues about roads and the need for us to get our roads repaired. And at the same time, I think that we really need to do what we can to put pressure to get our money back from the federal government that they owe us in order for us to make that happen. And so with that, somebody's gotta make a motion here.
I'll entertain the motion to move the staff recommendation. But, you know, I'm gonna change my little direction here that I have. I want to make sure that we do have a planning, a plan for Paulson Road. You know, I'm not putting a monetary number on it, but I'd like to see a real plan that we have for a long-term solution for the flooding of Paulson Road.
But does that, with the criteria that you have, that you mentioned, there was four or five points. I mean, doesn't that include the importance of how many people that Paulson Road serves comparatively to some of those other eight, what was it, eight major projects? So I'm just trying to think, I, I, I understand your, your concern, but I, I just don't know are we gonna change what we have? And I think what you have done and to try and put those criteria together to say what's first, is that gonna help or how can, is that gonna confuse it more?
Well, it's a good question. And I think I mentioned earlier that that criteria that we use for prior disasters, twenty seventeen and twenty twenty-three, we are looking to modify that criteria to add additional important elements. And so I do think to Supervisor Hernandez's point and Supervisor Cummings' point, looking at the prioritization of roads, we'll continue to do that. And I think if, as we develop modified criteria, we'll see how that results. And I think it could change the chain, the, the lineup a little bit.
When do you think that might be done?
We're hoping to develop this criteria more in this coming calendar year. And I would say by the end of the calendar year, we'll have some ideas.
End of twenty-five or this year?
Twenty, this year.
Okay. I, I mean, I think that's, I think that's the way we should just go. What you're doing, I think, is, is right on. And I, I just don't want to specify anything. And believe me, I know we've all got roads in our area that, and Paulson's one of the top on the list. But I'd like to see that before I specify anything else at this point, you know? It'll be included in what?
Yeah, I'm saying to be included in, but you know, also just to have a plan for it, you know, a real plan for it. That's all I'm saying is, you know, there's, I know there's different sources of funding, you know, you got the SB one funding. Measure D, you've got the county roads funds that we could find for this, you know? And so I think I'd still like to move in that direction.
Chair, if I could offer an alternate motion. So I'd, I'd move the recommended actions with additional direction that at the June fourth budget hearing, we see options to A, keep all permit fee revenue within the permitting division of CDI and allocate additional general fund money to the department to cover planning, zoning and administration divisions. And then B, allocate an additional ten million dollars of general fund revenue to road maintenance, including four million dollars of current general fund revenues and six million dollars from Measure K. And including in that, look at how those additional revenues could lead to an expedited project plan for Paulson Road. Second.
If I could just comment on that, I appreciate the desire and your frustration of not having enough funding. We can certainly bring back revenue options. That's one thing. We could certainly bring back budget cut options. But all of those will be very painful. And would it, if we do that, this June fourth meeting is gonna have three hundred people here. Cause there's no magic here. This is a zero-sum game. And I get it. You folks set the priorities. And you guys, you folks are the ones who do this direction. But that direction, at this point in the budget process, is gonna cause three hundred people to come out here. All, you saw how many people were fighting. We had testimony about various programs here today, contact visits. You've core the different priorities that for parks. And those aren't not with, those aren't even taken into consideration massive cuts. Cause what that is talking about is pretty massive cuts. So before you do that, if I, I can come back, I can balance a budget. And that's my fiduciary responsibility is to give you a balanced budget. And Edith Triscoll, in her capacity, have to certify that it's a balanced budget. But it will be painful. And I've tried to present to you a budget that, you know, is as balanced as can be. That continues to make progress in all the areas that are a priority to the, to the county. But if we're gonna blow up the budget, we can do that. I can do that. And we can have three hundred people here and we can have a massive, you know, food fight here. And I don't think anything's gonna change. Now, if long-term you want to make those changes, then I think that's the direction to go. And the direction would be with Measure K. That's That's, that's an example that this, you know, the board can allocate those funds and that's future funds, right? That would be, I think, where to do it, not with the existing budget other than, and if you want to do existing budget, then I would give me, give me six months to work on that and start coming back with options, not two weeks. So would SB one be a source or? Everything is allocated. Every cent of our funds is allocated to SB one, Measure D, gas tax, everything's allocated. And that's how we're doing these projects, right? That we're, you know, we have, you know, just next year, we have multimillion dollar projects for storm damage report as well as road repair. All of that has been allocated. So there's no new funding, at least right now. Now, in terms of prioritizing for future, that's something different, but right now everything, every cent's allocated.
Well, I think that's what I was asking for is that we prioritize, but you know, make a plan because we're not going to get funding for, we don't even have a plan for Paulson Road.
Sure. If I may, I, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, CEO Placios. And yeah, it certainly would be a big, a big fight and a long, long day. I don't know if there's an easier way to do this. I mean, it's like, do you have that fight on June 4th? Do you have it in September? Do you, I mean, whenever these kinds of shifts in budget are discussed, there's going to, I mean, we have scarce resources, we're an underfunded county. And, you know, to the chair's point, yeah, we're dealing with two major issues. We're not getting our FEMA reimbursements in a timely way and we don't get the property tax percentages that we should. But there is one thing that is in our control and that is how much money we allocate to our critical, basic infrastructure. And right now, zero dollars is just not enough. I mean, I can tell you, we could probably just as easily have 300 on the roadside as the human services side. I mean, we've already seen plenty of folks here, you know, asking that Mount Charlie get, get fixed. I mean, like I said, we, and like Supervisor McPherson said, we hear about it every day. If you have a suggestion for a different timeline, fine, but I don't think it can be Measure K funds alone. I mean, we have to look at, I mean, otherwise we need a plan for, I mean, what, what's, what's the next 20 years look like, right? I mean, again, this is the largest source of our general fund revenues being property taxes and easily half of those properties are, you know, we know that they're in the wildland urban interface, which means they're probably in a more rural area or at least close to it. So maybe, you know, at least 25 to 30% of our property tax base is on one of these roads that could wash out. I mean, that's the issue that we're going to have to deal with sooner or later. If there's a different timeline that you suggest, I'm, I'm open to hearing it, but we're going to have to have that fight and that, make that change sooner or later.
Supervisor McPherson.
You know, I think if we could, if additional direction to provide more clarity about the criteria on road repairs, which is underway now and policy initiatives for planning once the bud, budget picture improves, and maybe no later than the adoption in September, the final adoption, once Measure K and the state budget are more certain. I mean, the state budget is, is a mess too, as we know, and I don't think we're going to get a lot of help from the, the state, but so maybe we'll know if there's going to be more federal reimbursement then. I just think we need to, we're, we're at a crisis now, but I think we need to get more information as stabilization. Once we know, you know, what, if maybe Measure K, what that situation is, and then what the state budget is as well. And if there's any federal movement as well, I, I think we ought to wait until September before we start moving, you know, down the road, excuse the pun.
Supervisor Nettles.
No, I think CEO wanted to.
Yeah, you, so there's two things. One is you do have a motion on the table right now and you had a second, so that was the motion. So that has to be dealt with. The other thing I would suggest is along the lines of what Supervisor McPherson said is Measure K, we hope to have it resolved for sure by September. That's a good test of your theory. If, if you think that is the priority of this board to put $6 million on Measure K. Now, right now, a million is for affordable housing, a million dollars for homeless services, a million dollars for parks. So if you can get three votes to say, put it all towards roads, that's a good test, right? And then that shows that, okay, that would be, and that would be relatively painless because it's new money, right? So I think that's the start. And then if the board wants to do that, then I think in September, we would have more information about how we've been, how we're doing financially, what the state cuts are, and then you could give us further direction to start looking for other funds in the general fund. Again, if there's three votes to want to do that. But I, I don't think trying to blow up the budget right now is the right thing to do. So I would hope that we withdraw your motion and put one on the table that says, let's look at, let's approve this budget. Let's come back in September with, hopefully by then we would have Measure K allocated. It may be sooner, whenever we get information on Measure K. And then take, at that point, allocate Measure K funds towards roads or other, right now, the existing direction is $1 million to roads out of Measure K. And out of the seven and a half that we're anticipating, one million. The other three, again, affordable housing, homeless services and parks. So, and then there's three and a half that's going into our contingencies, which is trying to help us balance the budget basically. So I would, I would hope that you would do something along those lines.
So I wasn't, you know, necessarily saying that we need to, I seconded the motion, but I wasn't saying that I'm full supporter of that, right? But for me, it's about making sure that we have in the budget that we're going to begin a planning process for Paulson, that's all I wanted.
So are you going to withdraw your second to the motion?
Well, can I, I'll make a, I guess a substitute motion.
Or wait, I think in terms of process, you can withdraw your motion and then make a new motion.
I'll withdraw my previous motion and make a new motion, which is to move the recommended actions with the additional direction that at the September, I'm not sure the exact date, but September budget hearing, we hear options to keep all permit fee revenue within the permitting division and allocate additional general fund money to the CDI department to cover planning, zoning and administration and allocate an additional $4 million of general fund revenue to road maintenance out of current general fund revenues. And of course, this would assume that we'd have a separate discussion about Measure K.
I'll second that. Now, when you say current, I mean, we don't have anything to spend now. You mean with, when we find out more in September?
Well, this is in September to consider this, not, not in June.
Well, let me, let me get some clarification on this as well.
Still, I mean, I get it, we'll come back in September, but you're still asking me to come back with options to make massive cuts in other departments. So just to be clear, the only way I can do that is to cut other departments. So if you want to do that, have that debate at that time, that's fine.
I'm trying to think. And maybe, what, what would be, what would meet, you know where, where we're trying to go, trying to get a clearer picture in September of what we should do. So should we just make a motion that we move this discussion on what we should do regarding roads and Measure K revenues if it should come to pass at the September meeting? Would that be pretty cut and dried?
Yeah, I think the, the best thing would be to do is to talk about Measure K funds because those are exist, those will be new funds. And right now, the direction of the board is to allocate only $1 million to roads. So if you want to change that, that would be the point. By then we'll know what their lawsuit is resolved, we should be getting ready to implement Measure K. And then that's a good test to see if we're going to have the votes to change the allocation of Measure K from the existing direction. And so that's what I'm suggesting, come back with Measure K. As far as going into the existing budget, I think you can do that, but it's a messy, it'll be messy and again, there will be 300 people out here, all advocating for the public defender, all advocating for core, all advocating for homeless services. And I'll be suggesting cutting, which I don't think you want to do at this point.
So can I bring back, and since I was a new motion, can I do an alternate motion to do staff recommendation? But just make sure that we have a presentation on a plan for, for Paulson on September.
Yeah, there, there's a motion that Supervisor Koenig made, there's not a second yet.
Okay.
Unless you need a second.
Oh, there wasn't.
There wasn't, but I mean, I, I think it's, I would support, you know, except removing the $4 million figure to sit more funding is based on circumstances in September.
I mean, we're, we're not committing one way or another right now to allocate funds, right? We're simply asking, I mean, yes, it is a plan that would ultimately require cuts in other departments in order to provide some funding for roads out of the general fund budget instead of zero and to increase our support of the planning division in order to build another 5,000 units in eight, in the next eight years. I mean, but ultimately that's what, you know, budget discussions are for. They're not easy, especially on a limited budget like this. And so all we're asking, I mean, as you said, we could, you know, it could take six months, could take a year, but I mean, this is a way to consider, you know, some of the very real needs of our community. And I hear you, 300 people could show up. I got 300 people in my inbox every day asking me to fix their roads. So, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be a, being a good representative if I didn't say at this, that we better start planning for just that.
Now, is that, excuse me for interrupting, Chair. Is that going to put you in a bind to say, to propose cuts if we're talking, it's just dependent on Measure K becoming workable? I just want to make that clear. I don't want to.
There's two issues. One is the allocation of Measure K funds, which are new funds, right? So that's one discussion. And again, that, the board direction at this point is to allocate 4 million, 1 million for affordable housing, 1 million for homeless services, 1 million for parks, 1 million for roads. The remainder, 3 and a half million is going to be allocated into contingency funds. So that's the existing direction of the board. So I would come back in September, by then hopefully we, otherwise we could be having the discussion right now, but Measure K is frozen, right? So by September, we would know it. So that's one issue. The second issue that Supervisor Koenig is bringing up is actually reallocating the existing budget to provide more resources to planning and to roads. So that's taking money from other, it's a zero-sum game. There's only so much general fund money. And so you're talking about an additional 4 million of, what as I understood, $4 million to an additional 4 million reallocated from the general fund to roads plus an unknown number for planning staff.
But if we do that, excuse me, but if we do that, we don't know where the 4 million we're going to take from.
No, that's going to be budget cuts.
I don't think we should go there.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, core is $5.5 million. So I can propose, here's $4 million of cuts, cut core. I mean, again, that's a discussion.
We've gone through, you know, two days, full days of budget discussions and approved every one of them, but this one, the end here. So I, I just don't think we should pinpoint where you should have to go to cut it. I just think we ought to get the criteria and then just with the indication that should Measure K be sustained, that, that $4 million be allocated to roads of that. Would that work?
Yeah, well, that's up to the board, right? If you, I mean, yeah, we can come back and Measure K, but that will be the discussion that the board have.
Make you have to come back and say that we're going to cut 4 million someplace else.
Right. Cause there was two issues. One is how to allocate Measure K and the other is taking more general fund money from other departments and giving it to roads and to planning. That's, it's a reallocation. So that means that you have to cut somewhere, right? From the general fund. And I, that's the part I don't think it's a good idea to do. I think if you want to talk about Measure K, that's fine. And that's the board's direction. And if you want to talk about reallocating general fund, I think you should start that in September and work towards the next year's budget and make sure that there's three votes to, with that direction, right? Cause it's going to be painful. And like you said, that's what you folks are here to set priorities. But, you know, in the past, the board has made those priorities and we have funded core, we have funded the public defender, we had funded parks, you know, we've done all those things. It's a tough, tough discussion, but certainly we could have that. But I would say you should build, give us more time to work on that part.
So to get there, what, do we have to take a motion away then? Or is there anything on, what's on the table? That's a motion that I would like to make, that you come back in September using the criteria, the base of criteria that we have, that should Measure K be substantiated, that we, we commit $4 million to road repairs in Santa Cruz County.
That's, I'm trying to. So, so hang on a second. Motion, hang on a second, as the chair is stepping. So there's a motion by Supervisor Koenig, there's a second by Supervisor McPherson. If Supervisor McPherson, if you'd like to make a, if you'd like to change the motion, I would say that I'd recommend you withdraw your second. If no one's willing to second, maybe the maker of the motion, if they'd be willing to withdraw their motion, you would be able to make your motion. If the maker of the motion doesn't wish to withdraw their motion, we would see if there's a second, if there's no second, the motion fails and then you would have the opportunity.
Can you repeat the motion?
I would, oh, I would withdraw my second. Let's make a straightforward scan.
Yeah. Okay, so there's no motion on the floor, Supervisor McPherson. And then I have some comments that I want to make as it relates to Measure K. But I'll go ahead if you'd like to make your motion, or I can make my comments first.
Yeah, if it's going to be not messing with, if it's going to be bringing Measure K funding into place.
It's, it's not necessarily because I do want to speak to Measure K as well. And so.
Well, I'd like just to make the motion that we accept this budget with additional direction for CAO and CDI to come back in September with, assuming that Measure K is substantiated, that $4 million be committed to road improvements.
So a second.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Supervisor McPherson, second by Supervisor Koenig. I just want to make some brief remarks on this. Of the members of the board, I was the one who led the effort of all the supervisors on Measure K. I met weekly with the consultants. We came up with the plan, met with community members, went out and did the bulk of the fundraising along with some other folks from county. And we were able to get the word out to voters and have this be a successful sales tax measure. And I will say that that measure was not equally supported by this board. We had four out of five board members who endorsed it. And now we have people who wanted, who weren't supportive of the tax measure, wanting to take the funds from that measure and allocate it to things that we did not outline within the sales tax measure. And that for me is really concerning because one of the things that I worked hard to do was to really see how we could convince the voters that if they allocated and wanted to move forward with the sales tax, that we would do our responsibility to spend that funding correctly and spend the money on what we said we're going to spend our money on. I understand the roads are really important, but that wasn't the number one thing that we went after. When we did our polling and we looked at what people wanted to see in terms of how they wanted their sales tax money passed or spent, you know, we saw a variety of these different items that have been brought up by the CAO, homelessness, affordable housing, yes, roads and infrastructure, parks and environment. And I do believe that there was one other one around workforce and workforce retention. I'll have to go back and look at what we had, but there was definitely, if I remember correctly, there was a million dollars was supposed to be dedicated towards supporting county workers. And I just want to put it out there that if we come back in September, we're allocating 4 million to roads, we just have to remember that we have labor negotiations that are going to start in June. And the number one asset that we have here in our county is our workers. I understand that people want to get in other houses and that people want to have access to their roads, but if we don't have the workers here to actually go out and do that work, then it doesn't matter how much money we put towards roads. And I would imagine that, you know, if they can't get their, their, their raises and there's the potential, and then they want to push for a strike, then we have, we have to, but the money's going to have to come from somewhere. If we've already allocated the majority towards roads, we're going to have to make cuts to the general fund and that might mean we have to do layoffs. So this is a very complex situation that we're in, given that we're not getting the money back from FEMA, Measure K is tied up, we're doing the best to allocate the resources right now. And so, and the voters just passed this and now we're, we have a number of other initiatives that are going to be on the ballot, asking voters to tax themselves once again. And so I think that if we start moving in this direction, that, you know, we're going to start undermining our ability to have the voters feel like they're supportive and investing in their local government. And so I think that maybe what, what we could do is have, have this conversation come back, approve the staff recommendation and then revisit this conversation with, in September, when we vote on the final budget. And, and then that way we can start talking about plans for moving forward with roads.
In other words, withdraw the $4 million figure from the motion. Yeah. I could be, that's fine. I mean, that just gives us. I could be, that's fine. I mean, that just gives us time. We're going to have to make that decision one way or the other anyway, come September. So I, I would, to make her the motion, I would be willing to not include the 4 million dollar figure in the motion, but just to have the C O and CDI come back or the county come back with updated review of our county budget, general fund budget.
Excellent. I'm not going to second that. I want you, let one of you guys second.
I'll second. And, and I would just add as a friendly amendment, it sounds like there was interest in understanding the costs around filling some positions in the planning department around building inspectors, what have you. There's been some expressive want to come back and have some information on coming up with plans for higher priority roads, which includes Paulson Road, and I would imagine Mountain Charlie as well. But, but I think that you get the overview is that people want to see a plan moving forward with some of these big disaster roads and how we're going to be able to approve housing in the planning department.
So is that additional?
I mean, it's just a recommendation.
Why don't we just leave it? We're going to get the overall picture of what we're facing if we have the extra 10 million dollars. We're 7 and 1/2 million for this, the next fiscal year anyway. So I just, I'd just like to leave it as simple as possible.
Sounds good.
Not designate anything for anybody.
Sounds good.
Before we vote, can I just make one comment? So measure K rad, a yes vote supported increasing the Santa Cruz County sales tax by 0.5% with revenue going to wildfire response and prevention, affordable housing, mental health and substance use programs, public safety, roads, parks, recreation programs to reduce homelessness. Now wildfire response, because my understanding is that in this budget, we're actually reducing our mowing budget on county roads. Is that correct?
Uh, we will see, we, we will see a slight reduction in road maintenance.
That's correct. I mean, roads are wildfire maintenance. They are wildfire prevention. Anyway, I'll be voting no on the motion. I think we've discussed this enough.
I think I won't be supporting it either.
Well, so I would like to see if there's any recommendations on moving forward because what will happen now is that if there's two yes and two no, that means the motion fails. And if there's impasse here, I mean, I guess we would come back on June 4th to specifically vote on CDI's budget, but since we wouldn't have a finalized budget, then we'd have to come back again in June to vote on a different budget.
I would actually support it with your additional input. Chair Cummings.
Wait, so what, what are you saying then? I mean, aside from, I just want to give us some flexibility. I think we're really, like I said, we spent two full days looking at a budget and you have to think you're going to cut something that we're going to start this whole thing all over again.
Let me see if I can.
If you wanted to leave out 4 million dollar figure, I, like I said, that'd be fine with me, but I think we just need to have that come back in June.
I, I just had to say, I also agree with the background on measure K as well, you know, I think we talked with people that supported this, this measure and both nonprofits and everybody that worked on it and you know, my, even, even my staff at 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM, they would go out there and go to the meetings, but I think that, um, I think that, that we have to find a middle ground is what we have to do.
So let me see if I can try to get us moving forward. So I think like I'm comfortable with what Supervisor McPherson has recommended. And I, I think that what Supervisor Hernandez is wanting to see is as we have this discussion in September that we're able to talk about a variety of things general, but it sounds like Paulson Road might be an example of something that would be brought up. Permit Center might be something that could be brought up. And so rather than identify specifics, I think you all have heard from the board, kind of, what are some of the things that they want to hear come back at that meeting? So would that be sufficient for you all to be able to help address some of the concerns that are being mentioned right now?
Yeah. So with regard to the like revised prioritization, we could certainly bring that back as part of the discussion. We could also bring back the, the desire to look at those, that unfilled position in the permit center. So we could absolutely bring those back in full context to, to see how it fares, say with a Paulson or with a permit center service level. Absolutely.
I'm thinking I would like to see more options provided actually for Paulson, right?
So like funding options is what you're saying, right?
Well, not funding, but just for the planning process. To begin, yes.
Sure. So we could certainly provide scoping options because we have been looking at that and talking about it. So we could bring some options for scope. I don't know that we could come in with a, a funding plan, but definitely scope of improvements. Yes.
Is that sufficient for you to be able to move forward today?
Yes.
All right. Any further comments or questions? Okay, seeing that, I'll turn to the clerk for roll call vote.
If I may, Chair, just for the, the good of the record, could we please have the motion on the floor currently restated?
Sure.
Thank you.
My recommendation is for the C O and CDI to come back in September with an overall viewpoint of where the allocations of measure K may be spent.
In addition to moving the staff recommendation on the budget.
Correct, correct.
Thank you so much.
Is there anything missing?
And the, and the prioritization of projects around roads and, or discussion about.
Scope of alternatives for Paulson.
Right, yeah. And, and the planning.
Right.
Right. Okay. All right. With that, let's have a roll call vote.
One moment, Chair.
No problem.
If you get it right, God bless you.
Doing my best. Okay, Supervisor Koenig.
No.
Hernandez.
Yes.
McPherson.
Hi.
Cummings.
Hi.
With friend absent.
Yes, so that passes with Cummings, McPherson, Hernandez voting in favor, Koenig voting in opposition and friend absent. Okay, I was going to break for lunch, but you know, we have one more item, which is capital projects. So I figure we can just go get through that one and then, and we can be done for the day. All right, welcome, Elisa Benson.
Thank you. I am thinking we will try and keep this brief. We will probably not cover all of the slides. But for the record, Elisa Benson, Assistant C O, and I am the Chair of our Capital Projects Review Committee. So let's see. We have Damon, Ryan, Michael and Rebecca here to be part of this presentation. We have the standard agenda that you have been seeing throughout these. I will sort of jump to the punchline. As you've, as you've heard earlier, there is no new general fund funding for capital projects this year. So, so what we're presenting is really that overview of achievements and a little bit about where we're going from here. But as part of the financial situation we're in, there's no additional funding for capital projects this year. As you all know, this is really around improvements to our physical plant, whether it's buildings, parks. It, it's, that's what a capital project is. And we're covering county facilities and parks and open space. You had quite a longer discussion in the last item around public works related capital. Again, Capital Projects Review Committee, this is the, our organizing, organizing structure for both the capital projects budget process and also we monitor the, the delivery of capital projects along the way. And one of the key things that we've introduced is a scoring mechanism, a criteria, as you guys were talking about with our CDI projects. These are the criteria we use in capital projects funding that are requested for general fund funding. So we have a score around equity and how it is addressing inequity in our community. County financial impact, health and safety, the community benefits are associated with it. And then how does it align with our environmental or strategic plans? I'm not going to go over this list. You've heard a lot about them in various, in various operating budget discussions. Two that we're very, very proud of are, well, proud of all of these, but excited for the June 11th opening of the South County Government Center. A lot of people on this team have been involved in that and making it get to where it is finally today. And then the acquisition of 150 Westridge, we will actually be completing escrow on that in June. And then of course, really pushing forward and at the most accelerated pace we can on that children crisis and residential center in mid-county, critical, critical projects. With that, I'm going to turn it to Ryan to briefly go over the, the non-budget of this year, but really the, the magnitude of the, the portfolio moving forward.
Right. Thanks, Elisa. I'm Ryan Friedrich. I'm a senior, senior analyst in, in the C O's office and I work on the capital budget. What you see before a year today is a snapshot of our capital budget, which operates very differently than the operating departments that you see throughout these budget hearings. You see a really a dramatic difference between the current year budget and our current next year. And this because it's, this is the incremental additional value added to the portfolio versus the entire portfolio itself. So it's a bit of an apples to oranges comparison. A better way to look at our capital project budget is to look at, through the lens of an entire portfolio. You see, in our previous year, we had 97 or 97.3 million dollars in total project value. We've completed over 43 million dollars in projects this past year, which has been incredible. That number is going to rise as we get towards the end of this fiscal year here coming up. Just a modest amount that is being proposed to be in addition to, into our capital portfolio. That's related to parks dedication funds, which I was thinking about is one of the few dedicated capital funding sources that is reoccurring. Just kind of an interesting fact, an observation there. So we have a projected total portfolio going into fiscal year 25 of about 53 million dollars. So while no new projects are being recommended in this budget, we still have a pretty robust portfolio that we are rolling forward into the next year. And then briefly, just wanted to highlight some of the community benefits of our capital program, you know, related to bringing more services and equitable geographic distribution, you know, in South County in particular. Investing in our, our state of the art, you know, DNA lab. Really looking at places where we are facilitating better community learning and gathering. And I think most importantly is we're, we maintain and are creating self-safe welcoming spaces for the public and for our county workforce to operate and deliver their best services. As customary with the capital budget, budget presentation, we bring a whole host of us up here as a team. I want to introduce, next up is Michael Beaton, who's the Director of General Services to talk more about our project management and delivery changes that we have coming up.
Excellent. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Board. Again, Michael Beaton, Director of General Services for the county of Santa Cruz. How's that?
Yeah, good.
I'll just get closer. One of the process improvements implemented with this budget is the consolidation of capital projects and rural properties to the Department of General Services. The consolidation as discussed in part yesterday and today. Today really operationalizes and streamlines property management, construction and maintenance throughout the county's portfolio buildings. This also establishes a single point of accountability for anything facilities related. With the vision of a single entity responsible for construction, maintenance and management of the county properties makes it a single point of contact for anything facilities related. This consolidation will also help standardize project management throughout the county to ensure compliance with federal, state and local requirements. Over the past few years, the county has made some programmatic changes to start addressing deferred maintenance throughout our county buildings. With the limited financial and personnel resources available to the county, the first was to establish of which buildings we should start investing into first and what projects we should start prioritizing. This was accomplished through the completion of a facilities condition assessment of the majority of the county buildings owned and operated by the county. This assessment highlighted some of the significant deferred maintenance that exists within our county buildings. The report identified over 70 million dollars of current deferred maintenance throughout our buildings. As such, this board has been gracious over the last few years to help fund some of those critical needs based on that report. Since we don't have the funding to fully address the deferred maintenance, we need to ensure what we do is a little bit smarter. And what we do to our buildings will help them last longer. About eight months ago, with the new county facility superintendent Zach Hagler, we have begun implementing a preventative maintenance program throughout our county buildings, which we have not seen in over 20 years in our county. This is considered the best practice in the industry because it will not only save our money, save money in the long run, it'll actually help extend the life of our assets that we currently do have in our county. So with that, I'd like to pass it over to Director of Capital Projects, Damon Adlow.
All right, thank you, Michael. Yeah, as Michael mentioned, Damon Adlow, Director of Capital Projects. Currently, the, the capital project section is managing numerous projects in various stages of development. Typically, our group will shepherd projects from early conception and planning through design, permitting, bidding, and then through construction. After construction, the closeout process occurs and then we hand off the projects to our county departmental partners and then GSD maintenance teams for maintenance. The project types that we are primarily involved in are vertical projects, primarily building projects that range from major maintenance, infrastructure, support buildings, large tenant improvements and new facilities. Currently, the capital project section, section is managing well over 32 different projects. Some of those highlighted projects, I think we've mentioned them before, but I'm going to go ahead and mention them again, are the Children's Crisis Center with first and second floors, the Juvenile Hall renovation project, the Behavioral Health Bridge Housing Project, which is 32 units in mid-county. And three different large CDI projects, including the Load Street building for the Sanitation District, the Buena Vista and Ben Lomond Transfer Stations. Some of the recent accomplishments and milestones include, as mentioned, the South County Government Center, which currently is having staff move-ins and is opening to the public. Numerous libraries opening, completing the Measure S portfolio of projects. Acquisition and analysis of, of acquiring new buildings, including 150 Westridge and design and permitting for multiple small and complex facilities for the county. Some specific milestones, I know this sounds a little bit repetitive, but getting into a little bit more detailed, Children's Crisis Center is currently on track to have the first floor open in late spring 2025 with the residential program opening in fall 2025. The Bridge Housing Project, we're on track to be operational in early 2025. We'll be breaking ground on the Juvenile Hall Project this fall, pending final state approvals, which we're, we're optimistic about. And permitting for the CDI, permitting and design for the CDI projects that were mentioned earlier. A few of the challenges that our group is encountering, which we're all well aware of, are the in continued construction cost escalation, as we're aware of since 2009, we've been on a pretty steady increase of about 7%. Now, none of us have crystal balls, but we're still essentially planning for that type of escalation. In, in addition, we're working on long-term capital planning and figuring out how phasing and sequencing of individual projects in our portfolio and how large capital projects relate to large major maintenance projects. We're also encountering, still encountering material lead times that actually affects projects directly. And also, as you're all were well aware, the unique bidding climate for construction in the county, which ultimately means a limited number of bidders for projects. I'll just get into a few of the solutions. So some of the solutions that my team's working on is alternative project delivery methods. We're already utilizing JOC, which is job order contracting. We've already utilized in two projects over the last six years, design, build. And then I'm interested in looking, we're interested in looking into potential CM at risk and private, public partnerships for larger developments. In addition to that, we're also developing standards so we can have flexible designs that stand the test of time, that are essentially trying to future-proof our buildings. We know how the costs for buildings and we want to make sure that they're flexible spaces that can be reused differently in the future. These buildings are all going to outlive all of us and we're going to make sure that we, we leave our future selves with a good product. And then also just using sanitizing processes and using software. So we are more flexible and efficient within our group. So with that, I'd like to hand it back to Michael.
Yeah, thank you, Damon. The projects and slides that Damon just went over before. The projects in slides that Damon just went over before are reflective of projects that were managed previously by uh CDI or under the direction of CDI. This slide for uh represents projects that were managed by the General Services Department. Through all, and uh through the consolidation, both departments get to combine their project management resources uh for vertical projects. Over the past year, millions have been invested to address various projects with the majority driven by the facilities condition assessments. Some of those projects accomplishments were examples of the new boilers here at 701 Ocean Street. Uh, replacement of boilers at the M line campus, replacement of the lighting controls. So when you guys drive by at night, you'll actually see the lights are actually off here at 701. Uh, they've been broken for the last few years, and so we've had the lights on 24/7 at the government center for many, many years. So that's a, that's a small happy accomplishment uh for the General Services Department. Uh, we've replaced the water line uh to our main jail. We've replaced the boilers to our main jail. Uh, we also did the substantial completion for the Sheriff's DNA lab, uh, which you heard today from uh our sheriff. As well, we have a brand new uh generator at the main jail that powers 100% of the jail. Uh, previous to this generator being installed, we only powered about 50% of the jail operations. So to ensure that the jail can operate uh 24/7, even in times of a power outage. Some of the continuing projects that we continue to manage that will be ultimately moved over uh under Damon's direction uh with our consolidated project management team uh are the new generators for the Roundtree Correctional Facility that's included in the budget or previous budget that will roll over. Also, the M line campus, creation of the Roundtree Correctional Dental Room and renovation of their shower facilities uh due to age and decay and replacement of the HVAC system, complete HVAC system replacement at 1400 M line um and 1430 Freedom Suite D. So it's just a little bit of a flavor of some of the projects that we have uh that we're going to have the benefit of consolidating uh with project management to accomplish. With that said, I'm sorry, go one sec. This slide basically depicts a lot of the upcoming milestones that we already talked about, so I'm not going to spend too much time uh discussing it. Some of the challenges that we do have, uh, we have already mentioned that we have over $70 million of deferred maintenance throughout our county facilities. That, that's significant and that number just continues to grow. But I'm excited with the work that we've been doing uh to do things a little bit smarter, uh, to start prioritizing our financial resources that through our preventive maintenance program that will be able to extend the life of our assets a little bit longer and do things a little bit smarter. So with that, uh, I'd like to transition over to Rebecca Hurley, Assistant Director for Parks, uh, to hear about some of the parks and open spaces programs.
Good afternoon, Chair Cummings and Board. Nice to be back here again. So I'm going to quickly talk about some of the projects that I wasn't able to highlight earlier. So these slides should go by quickly. Overall, Parks has about 22 active projects in our capital projects per view. It's funded by multi, a, a different multitude, um, lines of streaming means, grants, um, park dedication fees, as we already stated, a little bit over $6 million there. Some of the projects I didn't mention is that we are for uh currently about to move forward with the storm damage repairs to the um bank beneath SoCal Creek, um beneath SoCal Lyons County Park adjacent to SoCal Creek. So this is a project that's funded by FEMA. An additional program, project that we're looking forward to trying to move forward on is Phase Two of the renovations at Simkins Family Swim Center. This is specific to um replacing the currently closed and inadequate uh water slide. And we're currently looking to go out for new plans and specs and cost estimates as the previous ones were from 2019. Next slide. So I always like to end on a positive, as most of you know. So some of the challenges have already been spoken about, um, you know, by my colleagues here is that we are anticipating increasing construction costs. We also at Parks have staffing restraints as our um park staff that manage projects also manage some of the non-infrastructure projects and endeavors that the Parks Department undertakes that I spoke about earlier in the Parks presentation. Um, some of the upcoming milestones that we like to look at is we are anticipating in the July or August, we will do the groundbreaking ceremony for floral park run of playground renovation as well as we are about to reopen the Simkins Family Community Center um meeting rooms as that was a um component that Parks funded as a part of the capital projects, Live Oak Library Annex Build. Um, and so we're about to open those back to the public for reservations. I will now pass it back to Elisa Benson to wrap up the presentation.
So the team's pretty much covered what's on this slide, so I don't need to cover it for you all again. But I would just summarize that in the last, you know, four to five years, even through COVID, some significant sort of best practices have been implemented around facilities management, including the long-range facility plan, including the facility condition assessment work. This is where you start using data to really drive the limited decision, funding, spending decisions we can make around facilities. In the long term, you know, we do hope that through the Internal Service Fund transition for general services, we will be able to develop a, a more strategic approach to funding facilities in the long run. With that, we would go to the last slide and just ask your approval of our no new money, 24, 25 uh, uh, parks and uh general county facilities budget.
If I could just add real quick, um, although we're not asking for any new general fund um allocations in this budget, because again, this is a very difficult budget year. We're in the middle of a major uh budget cuts at the state as well as all the issues we're facing locally. But many of those projects that were funded um that were listed, many of them did come out of the general fund. Many of the sheriff projects were from the general fund and some of the parks project also were funded on Measure G. We've talked about Measure G earlier, a lot of it was used for parks. So anyway, in the past, we have used quite a bit of general fund. This year, we are not allocating any because we're trying to balance the budget.
All right. Thank you very much. And thanks for the presentation and, you know, investing in our facilities is always critical. And so with that, um, I'm going to open it up to the public to see if there's any member of the public here today who would like to speak to us on this item in chambers. Seeing none, I'm going to move it to online to if there's any member of the public who would like to speak to us on capital projects.
No speakers online, Chair.
Okay. I'll bring it back to the board. Um, brand new questions, comments, actions. Supervisor, can I give any questions or comments?
Sure. Yeah. Well, a lot, a lot of great projects in the works here to look forward to. Looking forward to the opening of the Live Oak Library Annex in the community room at Simkins. The uh groundbreaking and then ribbon cutting at Floral Street Park. Um, you know, even the repairs at SoCal Lyons Park are going to be great. You did mention that we've got about 70 million in deferred maintenance today, Director Beaton. How much is that growing by a year?
Uh, sorry, say it again.
You said we have 70 million in deferred maintenance today on county facilities and that that grows every year by about how much?
Yeah. So they uh, the facility condition assessment really looks at all the systems throughout the different county buildings and some systems have a lifetime, uh, life, a lifespan. Uh, some of the systems are changed because of building code changes and the building may not be updated, such as fire, life safety. Uh, so it's not like a linear uh projection. But I do know, looking at the graph over the next five years, I believe it does increase by about 15 million uh at a five-year picture.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. That's uh, we'd like to take better care of our facilities. I know you really uh within general services, try mightily to, to keep up um with those maintenance requests. And um, yeah, at least we have the lights working here at 701. It's great. Thanks.
All right. Supervisor Hernandez.
You know, I'm excited about the uh several things from, you know, the Sheriff's DNA Center. The fact that it could bring possible positive impacts, fiscal impacts for them and resolve crimes for victims and their families. And uh, you know, to expedite that process and the Children's Crisis Center, of course, it's very much needed in our communities and it's absolutely right thing to do. Of course, I'm excited about 500 West Ridge, the South County Government Center and 150 West Ridge as well. You know, there's a large number of uh South County employees and hopefully this will reduce the vehicle miles traveled and increase the quality of life for our county employees as well. And uh, of course, you know, the cost savings that we get from the West, West Beach uh lease that we had. And of course, the 150 West Ridge lease that we had will also be a cost savings. The purchase will be a cost savings from the lease. And you know, I'm glad that we got Roundtree improvements lined up in the future. And so we, um, and of course, 181 Wedding Park, 181 Wedding Road Park. I'm excited about that project. So uh, you know, I would be supporting that recommendation.
Thank you. Worth it.
Well, I'll make the, I'll move uh staff recommendation for proposed budget to 25 for capital projects.
Second. We're motion by Supervisor Hernandez, um, second by Supervisor McPherson. Supervisor McPherson, do you have any further comments on this item? Okay. Um, I just want to appreciate you all for your work. I actually, for whatever reason, thought that because the lights are energy efficient that are used in this building, that was part of why maybe you guys were keeping in mind. I was, I was also confused because when I first got on the board, there was, you know, our, our, um, you could go in and kind of use your ideas to go to different parts of the building. And so, but I had been getting a lot of questions from members of the community about why are the lights on all the time? And you know, uh, it's good, good to hear that that issue has been solved. So with that, I'll take it to the clerk for a roll call vote on this item.
Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Cummings. Sorry. Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson. Incoming.
Aye. That passes with Supervisor Friend Absent and concludes our uh 2024, 25 budget hearings. Looking forward to seeing you all on June 4th to conclude our budget.